In our community and our schools. We have a schooling youth program, after school and summer program for ninth through 12th grade girls. And our endeavors to contribute, not to only tradition, to continue the tradition, but to contribute to the culture was inspired by our late great matriarch, Ms. Miriam Baptiste Reed. Her family has the longest running history of doll masking, spanning from 1930 to 2020. She is our hero, the unsung hero, the one that all the dolls over the last three or four decades have called upon for her mentorship, her guidance, and her inspiration. She was a custodian at one of the schools in Ninth Ward, in the Ninth Ward, and she would read to the children and, you know, be of a support to them, social emotional learning, one of the earliest forms of social emotional learning. And so that is the form of contribution that we continue within our schools through enrichment and arts integrated programs, and we owe that to her. The baby doll tradition is a much better practice because she passed through it. This season, the Baby Doll Ladies theme for our annual Mardi Gras Day Parade, which is positioned right in front of Zulu, is Passing of the Torch. And we owe the passing of the torch to her. Now, not only are we passing of the torch from Ms. Baptiste, but we gonna continue to keep that flame burning in her name and in her honor. And so we just would like to give thanks to you all for, I'll say, the belated acknowledgement of the practice of women's contributions to masking in general. Our company, our organization, our Carnival Association, dance is at the root of what this tradition is. It's doll masking, but it's jazz dancing at the forefront. And that is what we aim to also help bring back to the forefront of this entire tradition. So all hail the baby dolls and the baby doll ladies, and we continue, as we continue this journey prayerfully, the next hundred years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Gilda Lewis?
Oh, wait.
Yoda?
Ain't no doll like a baby doll. For real. My Aunt Geraldine Brucie was one of them.
Good morning. The Baby Dolls today would like to give honor to T. Eva and to Antoinette Cato, who had the forethought to bring the baby doll tradition back in action, even though the baby doll history comes from a place of disadvantage. The story is in 1912, a group of women who were dismissed, disrespected, and considered some of the lowest class in our city, decided to dress as the most expensive thing at the time. Where all, all our industry was moving toward the war effort, and baby dolls were a rare thing. And when they found out that their counterparts in legalized Storyville was gonna mask, they decided to dress themselves as something more valuable than anything else. And so they decided to dress in satin. Shamelessly, these workers, these sex workers, hit the streets without any permission from anybody to make sure that they were seen and that they were respected in, 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 uh, in what they chose to do to make a living. It was considered a shameful thing at some point, and many of our ladies in the city, their families would not allow them to dress, even though it had lost that shameful status. Today, we have baby dolls with PhDs and MDs and baby dolls who have businesses. And so we come together. We come together as a group of women, and I like to call this our newest social aid and pleasure club. We bring the party. And so today, we come together in thanks that finally our city, who we love, has taken the time to recognize us. And we give thanks for you all for your cultural contribution. And so all together, we would like to say, Baby Dolls Bring the Party!
Baby Dolls Bring the Party! Gilda, before you speak, the reason why I wanted to do this today is a lot of folk know I lost my mom not too long ago, and she would tell the stories. My Aunt Geraldine Brucie was one of those original baby dolls. And she would tell the story about how my mom wasn't a baby doll, but her sister was. And they would dress up and put on their best clothing, and the baby dolls would dress up the way they would dress up, and they would make sure everybody saw them.
That's right.
They would make sure the carnival crews knew they were there. And she would tell me in one of her stories that they would get in front of certain parades and walk very slow to disrupt, to disrupt. So it was, it was more than just what you said, dressing up. It was, it was a ritual.
Oh, yes.
It was about, you're gonna see us.
That's right.
Right? And, and we're here. And for everyone who knew my late mom, you know, we told the story, she was a sass and out, proud black woman, but, but her sister, Auntie Jerry, Auntie Geraldine, their mission was, was more than just Mardi Gras.
Oh, yes.
You know, their, their mission was about what we are able to see right now. Gilda Lewis?
Good morning. I'd like to just thank the New Orleans City Council and the City of New Orleans Administrative Staff, along with the New Orleans Tourism and Culture Fund, and all of the funders that helped keep us dressed, suited, and looking progressively wonderful on the streets. We're, we're available for community service work. We're not just about Mardi Gras Day. We are year-long baby dolls, and it's in our hearts, it's in our spirits to help bring smiles and joy and the spirit of Mardi Gras all year long to people who cannot afford to because of health issues or financial obligations come to a parade or come to a bar. Thank you once again.
Well, Gilda, you know, if people in the city looking good, you usually have something to do with it.
I do represent Gilda Shoe Suite, and I do have Mardi Gras wear and Afrocentric wear that every day is Black History Day. I say.
Thank you.
I say.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I represent T. Eva, Ernie Cato, Baby Dolls. We've been baby darling since 2005 with the blessing of T. Eva and Antoinette, Ernie Cato's wife. We want to just thank everyone, much like this Gilda spoke about. Denise? Our culture is diverse. When we baby doll, we, we didn't have the Storyville. We came from our ancestry, our ancestry began back with the working women. You know, we came out of the maids and the cooks and the washers. These are the people who taught the dress, the style, the, the way we present ourselves.
Well, we, 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 we got the background music now. Guys, we're gonna call out the names of... Thank you. When we call your name, just please line up. The doll don't go anywhere yet. The first proclamation is for Le Bontin Baby Dolls, Ms. Gilda Lewis. Yoda, stay there. The second proclamation is for the Tremé Baby Dolls, the founder, Ms. Janice Kimbo. Gilda, Gilda, don't go anywhere. We're gonna line everybody up inside here. The next one is the Gold Diggers Baby Dolls, the founder, Ms. Merlyn Kimbo. Next, we have from the Tremé Million Dollar Baby Dolls, everybody want to meet the Million Dollar Baby Dolls, Ms. Cinnamon Black. The T. Eva, Ernie Cato Baby Dolls, Vanessa Thornton. The Mahogany Blue Baby Dolls, Anita Oubre. The Southern Belle Baby Dolls, Trinette Pichon. The New Orleans Baby Dolls, Carol Harris. The Black Seminoles Baby Dolls, Joelle Lee. Vintage Inherited Baby Dolls, Constance Jacobs. The Thelma Douglas Baby Dolls, Euro Jones. Olivia's Bloodline Baby Dolls, Jocelyn Askew. Creole Belle Baby Dolls, Alan Elaine Harris. The True Arlene's Baby Dolls, Darian Nearly. The eloquent baby, five, no, the 504 eloquent baby dolls, Denise Trapegné. Oh, and everybody's, the Renegade Rebel Baby Dolls, Cadrelle Baptiste. The Nussetts Noir Baby Dolls, Laurita Harrison. Our Sacred Stories Baby Dolls, the great Denise Augustine. Creole Gem Baby Dolls, Melanie Walker. The Mbakatown Baby Dolls, Karen Williams. The Queen Mercy Baby Dolls, Cheryl Johnson. The Black Storyville Baby Dolls, Diane Anare. The Wow Chapatus Baby Dolls, Shannon Paxton. The Creole Cutie Baby Dolls, Tanise Williams. Big Chief Monk Rudow Baboudros Golden Eagle Baby Dolls, Michelle Longino. And I want to thank Lena Stewart, Andrea Monfort, Deidra, Dominique, and all of our staff. Guys, y'all, if y'all can line up so we can take a picture of everybody. Council members, join the baby doll. And Elena, what's happening, baby? Miss Culture. Where are our New Orleans Baby Doll Ladies? Where are, oh, okay, wow. We should have a proclamation for them. Of course, we can't forget the New Orleans Baby Doll, there's no doubt about it. And yeah, yeah. And you know, I'm reading from what they gave me.
No, this, we have the nine fifty. That's one person.
I thought there was nine forty.
We did this at nine forty. This was supposed to be nine fifty. This one at nine forty did a little wrong, but the guy was here.
Okay.
So it just started with. After the next one, yeah.
And what about the, what about the queen?
Boss, we need you to move a little bit quick on your pictures.
If we could get everybody's attention. If we could get, Darrell, if we could get everybody's attention. Hello? Hello? We, hello? Give me, y'all, give me some help. Where's, where's security at? Can we have everyone's attention? Can we have everyone's attention? Before we get to the coup de grace, I want to take this opportunity to acknowledge one of the finest young men in this community. He captures many of the moments, whether it's baby dolls, Azulu, Mardi Gras occasions. We'd like him to come sit at the table, none other than one of the great famed photographers, John Delosa. Uh, no, no, nah, this, this ain't, nah, this about you, not Papa. Sit down. Excuse me respectfully, please. Whereas John, whereas John Delosa is a famed photographer in New Orleans and a native son of Algiers, husband of the great Kimberly Delosa, father of the late John A. Delosa, father of Kaja, John A. Jahari, and Jai Delosa. And whereas he is a 1992 graduate of O'Periwalker High School, 2001 graduate of Delgado Community College, and a 2011 graduate of Southern University at New Orleans, a Mason, a Shriner, and a lifetime member of Omega Phi Psi Phi Fraternity. And whereas he is the owner of Ace Solid Photography, serves as chief contractor photographer for iHeart Media of New Orleans, Southern University System campuses in New Orleans, Baton Rouge, Shreveport, the O.J. Dunn Masonic Lodge, Louisiana Shriner's Women's Foundation of the South, NOCCI, the Algiers Mardi Gras Festival. And whereas because of his legendary photography work and the Mardi Gras culture, John is one of the most requested photographers of Mardi Gras crews and during carnival season by anyone who wants to capture those moments in the world. Whereas he is one of the lead photographers in Zulu Social Aid and Pleasure Club, whereas he renamed his Zulu media team, the Everett Briscoe Media Team, in honor of his photography protege and Zulu brother who was sensually killed in 2021. And whereas John has been capturing history through photography for over 30 years and is celebrated, and is a celebrated historian and culture bearer in our community, now therefore be proclaimed by this council and many of the people in here, that we acknowledge one of the sons, one of the keepers of the culture of New Orleans by this, by all of our council members. And the City Council wishes you a fabulous birthday and an incredible year. And Kim Delosa say, bruh, you all right. And it's signed by all of our council members, Happy Birthday, John! Where's your brother? Your wife is here. He did not expect this, Mr. President, Judge. He did not expect this at all. He thought he was just here doing his job, but anybody I watched grew up in my basement, playing dominoes to see what you have accomplished, man, John. Happy birthday. Kim, did you want to say something to your brother? I know your brother's... Absolutely. I guess you can say he your old man now, huh?
Oh, they want me to move down. Well, surprise, honey. He is not just my husband, he's my best friend, and I'm so appreciative of everything you've done for the culture of New Orleans. And what a phenomenal day to celebrate your 50th birthday on Mardi Gras Day. So we had to infuse your celebration in all of the pomp and circumstances of Mardi Gras. And today of all days, we are reminded to give people their flowers while they can still smell them. We love you. Happy birthday, and I think your, oh, your brother's there. He say he's not, don't want to say nothing, but you know, you want to...
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Uh, John, we had to do it this way, bruh, because knowing you from a little kid, you, you don't accept gifts. You know, the only times Kim was ever able to do something for you, or we do, was to surprise you.
Yes.
So we just wanted you to know, especially when you talk about our culture, how important you are. Now, you can say a few words, bruh.
Well, his mentor wants to say something.
Oh, no, absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Tim.
So me and John were fraternity brothers first. We came together during Hurricane Katrina, when I think we both needed each other.
Sure did.
And he asked me, he said, Gus, could you hire me? Could you give me a job? And I told him, just show up, and I will give you a job. I think the request came, can you give me, loan me some money? And I said, I will provide you with a job. And ever since then, he's been one of the most amazing friends. He's, I want him to stop calling me mentor. We're equal footing now. I think he's evolved to a point where, man, you the one, you the man.
I received that. Thank you, thank you.
And, and that's the same story that we have. And he'll know it was me, him, and about six or seven kids in our basement from Boyce Men Mentoring, yeah.
I was seventeen.
Yeah, 17 years old, and I don't consider you a mentee anymore. I, I consider you a friend. I consider you a brother, and you've earned that. You know, you're, you're a young man now who in many cases ways have surpassed what we expected and surpassed where we are in our life, so you're our brother, brother. Happy birthday, John.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Your turn, Bruh.
Well, I don't have anything to say. I just want to say thank you, but I, I speak through my camera and my passion for art. Um, like I said, I'm a artist trapped in the photographer's body, and I just want to humbly serve Zulu, all the organization I'm a part of. Whatever I need to get done, I just do it.
Yeah, yeah, as well as any of the council members, if they want to join in, and I just hope you learned how to play dominoes now. Councilmember Green.
Well, thank you for all the work that you do, and with your photography, you are certainly really encapsulating a lot of what our city is about. And your service and your work with the Zulu Social Aid and Social Club is, um, Social Aid and Pleasure Club is so special in our city as that organization is special. But thank you for your commitment to our city, for doing a great thing. Brother James, come forward for a second and sit next to this gentleman for a second. Yes, I'm putting you on the spot to say something on behalf of the Zulu Social Aid and Pleasure Club about this gentleman and the work that he does. But we're so proud and we appreciate your patience today, members. Um, but this is a special day, as you can see. Mardi Gras was compacted into just a few weeks, and as you all know, with all the events that you are attending, including six last weekend. This is a very busy time of the year. But we are so pleased to be able to recognize those who are so important to our city in terms of promoting our culture in our city. Mr. James.
Yeah, thank you, Councilman Green. Um, as I sat next to John, he said he was so sorry. There's no need to be sorry. Today is an honor for you as you celebrate your 50th birthday. But on behalf of the Zulu Associated Pleasure Club, I can tell you that Mr. Delosa has come into the organization and has hit the ground running, has certainly caused us to think about the way we display our carnival activities, and he's always challenging me to do a little bit more. Uh, and so I, I appreciate his passion, and we are, we excited to have him there, and he's causing us to constantly think about the way Zulu Associated Pleasure Club is to peak to doing Mardi Gras. So thank you for all of that, and happy birthday, enjoy yourself.
Thank you, Judge, thank you, Judge. Councilmember Morell.
Honestly, I'm just impressed with all the people here. They kept this a secret from you this long. I mean, that speaks to some foreign identity, James Bond level of secrecy. Obviously, all your accolades are well deserved. I've seen you over the years in the thick of things, and I mean, not just in this nice calm environment, I'm talking about on the route in the thick. And I think when you look at the ability for people for generations to appreciate how things began and how things ended up, your photography, your history is so important to preserving the rich legacy, and happy birthday, and we appreciate you.
Councilmember Moreno.
Thank you. As Vice President Morell talked about, you, you were everywhere, everywhere. I mean, it, events, on the street, wherever a cultural event, celebration is occurring, you're always there, and you really are a true historian of the city of New Orleans. And I look forward to one day seeing a great exhibition of all your photographs. I think that that would be a truly fantastic thing and a treasure for the city of New Orleans to have. And once again, for real, I don't know how it was kept like such a secret, but, uh, I mean, even for some of us council members, when, when we knew Councilmember Thomas was going to do a celebration for someone's birthday, it was even, even, even kept so tightly wrapped that some of us council members didn't know who the birthday celebration was for, so I'm so glad that it's for you. Very, very happy birthday to you.
Thank you. Councilmember King.
Hey, brother Delosa, happy birthday. We see you everywhere, and that's always, uh, you're like a superhero, man. You're everywhere with that camera, multiple events and multiple, and one day, seemed like at the same time, you're there. But most importantly, for me, I want to thank you for being a good representative of Algiers. Um, not many men from our community have reached the heights that you've reached, um, own business and being a good representation of our community. So, um, thank you for doing that, I appreciate it.
Councilmember Harris.
Well, absolutely, happy birthday, and like everyone said, you're everywhere all at once, like the paparazzi, so everybody needs to watch out. Um, but I just want to say happy birthday, congratulations. And when we talk about an exhibit like the council president just did, look around this chamber, look around City Hall, we need some art, we need some inspiring culturally based art, and I look forward to having your artwork within the walls of this city, so thank you, and thank you for all you do.
Councilmember Jeruso.
Good morning. Um, you know, this is what we love to do in council chambers, right? I mean, we get yelled at most of the time, but, but today we get to celebrate, which is what we ought to be doing more of, and I'm just so proud to have so many people here today and to celebrate you. What a great day to be born, to have your birthday fall on Mardi Gras Day itself this year. So it will be a double celebration of both what is best about the city and what you've provided for it for such a long time. Thank you for all your hard work, and I know Freddie and Leslie just said it, but you are literally everywhere, and, and it's good to see you so often and to see how many people recognize not only how hard you work, but the quality of your work, too.
And Councilman Jeruso, you're right, I want to build on that because earlier before everyone got here, uh, we did a moment of silence for three iconic figures and families in our community. And like we said earlier, I think Kim said earlier, give us our people their flowers while we're here. But yesterday, we lost Gina Brown. Right, when you talk about the culture, when you talk about the music. Uh, yesterday, we lost Dan Packer. Uh, the first African American, one of the few in this country to ascend to the position of president and CEO of a major energy company, and a brother that was involved in our community, our culture. And yesterday, Shalonda Bush, uh, of Ninth Ward fame, if you know the Bush family, in the Ninth Ward, there were some of the great entrepreneurs in our family. So what would it have been if we had maybe had a chance to have them here? But we, but we took advantage of have a chance to have you here and all the great people who are here today. So in their honor, if their families are watching or listening, President, Judge, we also, John, we share this moment, we share these baby doll moments with them. Let 2024 be a year of care, consideration. Let's love people in spite of themselves. Let's honor them because of themselves, and let's care for each other because our children need to know that we love ourselves. Happy birthday, John. Put your camera down, man, we got you, huh?
We are now about to begin our council meeting. Roll call, Councilmember Thomas. Oh. Wait.
Here.
Okay.
H-E-R-E.
Yes, here, brother.
Here, I'm here for, Eugene's here, too. He's H-E-R-E.
I'm waiting for my staff person to be able to sit down to run the system.
They're here. Well, look at all these beautiful people in the audience, what a blessing, what a blessing.
You ready? All right, once again, Councilmember Thomas.
H-E-R-E, here.
Councilmember Green. Councilmember Morell.
Here, here.
Councilmember Moreno.
Present.
Councilmember King. Councilmember Harris. Councilmember Jeruso.
Here.
We have six members, we have a core.
All right, Madam Clerk, thank you. Good morning to everyone. We're going to start our meeting now. We begin with our invocation, if everyone can please rise. Pastor Jamal Weathersby from New Hope Baptist Church will lead us in the prayer.
Grateful for this opportunity. Let us bow our heads as we look to God. Gracious God, how we thank you for this day that you've given to us, and we pray that it will be productive, and pray, Lord, for families and communities of the great city of New Orleans. We ask you, God, that you will give this council wisdom and guide them as they make decisions to better, so that we can be better suited in our great city. Father, we pray that everything that is done today will be done to your glory, and we pray this in your name and all of God's people's said, amen.
Amen. Our pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilmember Green.
We have approval of the minutes, January 4th, 2024, and January 18th, 2024.
So moved, Green.
Been moved by Councilmember Green.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Thomas. Just waiting on the machines here real quick. Councilmember Thomas, can you second on the machine? Thank you.
King got it.
Oh, King got it.
King day anyway.
All right, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All right, hearing no opposition, Madam Clerk, it's unanimous.
The first order of business, a presentation celebrating the United Way of Southeast Louisiana's Centennial Anniversary. Michael Williamson, President and CEO, Charmaine Cap- Capacity P?
Cassiope.
Okay, Cassiope, Executive Vice President, Chief Operating Officer, recognizing the United Way of Southeast Louisiana's Centennial Anniversary and calling upon all residents to join in celebrating the momentous impact has on our community.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, to the, to the audience that we have here, we're going to get to our major Mardi Gras celebration in just a, just a second, but first we wanted to take a quick opportunity to recognize a great nonprofit that we have here in, in our city of New Orleans and working throughout our region, and that's United Way of Southeast Louisiana. For a century, for a century, United Way of Southeast Louisiana has been at the forefront of addressing critical issues, creating opportunities, and fostering positive change in our community. I personally, myself, have worked very closely with United Way. Back when I was in the Louisiana Legislature as they fought and helped victims of domestic violence and sexual assault, and really created amazing policy changes within the state to create additional assistance for victims. But also, anytime that there is a disaster, whether we were looking at the aftermath of a storm or hurricane or, or even during COVID, United Way was always there to help and assist the city, and we very much appreciate that. So I wanted to turn it over to you all as you celebrate your 100th anniversary, and also, of course, we are here to thank you for all the work that you have provided throughout our region. If you can introduce yourself, Michael.
Thank you, Michael Williamson, President and CEO, United Way of Southeast Louisiana.
Charmaine Cassiope. I am the Chief Operating Officer and Executive Vice President of United Way of Southeast Louisiana.
And I am Ronnie Sloan, I am the Board Chair, so representing the Board of Trustees for the United Way of Southeast Louisiana.
Uh, Council, uh, Councilman Moreno, sorry. Um, members of council, thank you for the opportunity to be with you today. I feel like we're among many, many friends, and so, um, but I'm here on behalf today of our, of our team who are behind me, many of our donors who are in this room, and our partners, um, which I'm so grateful for joining us today, with a strong sense of gratitude, um, and pride as we celebrate this significant milestone, the Centennial Anniversary of United Way of Southeast Louisiana. Now, thank you for your honor again of being here to celebrate 100 years of positive change throughout Southeast Louisiana. I've said this many times, but our centennial is a testament to the legacy of our donors, volunteers, advocates, and partners that built over the, over the years. It's a celebration of collective impact, the collective impact we've had on the lives of countless individuals in Orleans Parish specifically. And over the last 100 years, we've been a force for good throughout the region, leading initiatives to improve outcomes in education, income, and health for every person everywhere. The dedication of our community, United Way, is the reason more families have stable homes. Children have received quality education, and people can afford a quality of life. In Orleans Parish, your commitment and support have been instrumental in our ability to make a positive change right here at home. I'm delighted to be here with you today to present our latest impact report detailing our local investments, including disaster response, financial capability services, youth education and programming, and more. Your investments have directly contributed to the well-being and prosperity of our community. And I once again want to express our heartfelt appreciation for the ongoing support from the Orleans Parish Council, particularly your recent contribution in support of the work we're going to be doing throughout the parish and targeting our friends in New Orleans East, leveraging our Prosperity Center model, which I know many of you have had a chance to visit and experience. Your commitment to United Way in helping us address local challenges and building a stronger community aligns completely with the values of our organization. But the harsh reality is 57% of households either live in poverty or they're considered ALIS. ALIS, as you can see, is an acronym for Asset Limited Income Constrained Employed. In short, it's a study of financial hardship, and the report shows us that a staggering 57% can't afford to meet their basic needs right here in Orleans Parish. And the reality of that is it leaves our entire city vulnerable to disaster and crisis as we've witnessed in recent years, and I thank you, Councilwoman Moreno, for recognizing the work that we do in response. See, United Way is focused on stabilizing households living under the ALIS threshold to create stronger, more equitable and resilient New Orleans. And we have a plan to do that. We're on a mission to eradicate poverty in New Orleans, and we have a plan to get that done. Driven by our Blueprint for Prosperity, which you see right here, which is our strategic plan in poverty, United Way tackles poverty head on, taking a holistic approach to addressing its root causes and residents' emerging needs.
Michael, let me pause you for one quick second, so I need to make a quick announcement. Whoever has a black Equinox that's loading, that's on the loading dock, you need to move it because it's about to get towed. So anyone here with a black Equinox? Thank you.
Absolutely. So the blueprint provides the foundation for our collective impact model in which we serve as a backbone organization that drives work forward. We help the community and the nonprofit ecosystem solve problems that no individual organization can do alone. And the sustained success of United Way-led programming like our Individual Development Account Project, the K Finley Literacy Institute, and our Prosperity Centers demonstrates our ability to develop and execute high-quality programs. We also provide critical support in times of disaster, responding at the speed and need to help neighbors recover. Our responsive grant-making, rooted in equity, community voice, and data provides direct financial support to trusted organizations and collaborations aligned with our blueprint. At the local, state, and federal levels, we work collaboratively to advocate for systemic change on the issues that matter most in Southeast Louisiana. The bottom lines, investments, the bottom line is investments in our approach go further, further our ability to see the bigger picture and understand the realities of those living at or near poverty. And you can see here, we like to demonstrate that when you support United Way, there is a significant return on investment. And for every dollar that you contribute, we deliver $7.67 in community impact, which recently means that we created over $93 million in community impact throughout our region. I'm proud to show you our J. Wayne Leonard Prosperity Center for folks in the room that haven't been there, which opened in late- I'm proud to show you our J. Wayne Leonard Prosperity Center for folks in the room that haven't been there, which opened in late December of 2022, Councilwoman Harris was there at our ribbon cutting. Our Prosperity Center's employ a one-stop-model approach, offering a suite of free financial capability-building programming, programs to address the household's complete financial future, services include free tax prep, right now, you can get your taxes done for free at United Way, financial education, coaching, counseling, match savings program, asset ownership programs, and soft skill development, and more. In just six months, our expertly-trained staff helped clients save an average of $1,500 and reduce their debt by $300. Over the last five years, the Individual Development Account Project has helped participants purchase over $15 million in wealth-generating assets, including homes, vehicles, small businesses, and education degrees, higher education degrees. Our new, thriving African-American Small Business Initiative generated over $150,000 in immediate business capital for participants, injecting life into their growing enterprises after they completed seven months of concentrated instruction, the United Way of Southeast Louisiana's Prosperity Centers designed to help them fine-tune their budgeting skills and improve their profits and viability. Both programs are aligned with our explicit focus on equity and creating more, more equitable New Orleans for us all. I mentioned before the Volunteer Income Tax Assistance Program, so in this program, we offer families free tax prep, and I'm proud to tell you that since the inception of that program, we have returned over $64 million to the region, helping struggling households get paid tax prepares and keep more of their hard-earned dollars in their pockets. Responding at the speed and need, Councilwoman Moreno mentioned our response to crisis, just as we always do, we respond when a disaster happens, following Hurricane Ida, we returned over $5 million to our area residents and community partners, and more recently, we provided immediate aid to Orleans Parish residents affected by tornadoes, walking door-to-door with supplies within 12 hours after the storm's passing. But we also recognize that just raising funds won't solve our problems, we have to advocate for systemic change, and while we're proud to be boots on the ground, with our boots-on-the-ground responses, we're also driving systemic change through our dynamic advocacy efforts led by Charmaine Cassiope sitting next to me. I know many of you are well aware of our progress that we've made in Baton Rouge, and it's been referenced earlier, thanks to our partners, many of which are in the room. We continue to see significant progress in our early education space, helping to pass the Orleans Parish Millage in 2022, and securing $44 million in ECE program, and programming in 2023. We're also proud to report on our continued success in advancing domestic violence legislation, including the dedication of $7 million for domestic violence services just this last session. And Councilwoman Jeruso will be proud to see this, um, we also support the launch of the New Orleans Mental Health Collaborative, and you're very familiar with this, specifically to help address the mental health crisis in our city, and the result of that was a two-year, $1.9 million SAMSSA grant specifically focused on youth mental health and trauma, we could not have done that without your support, and I want to specifically thank Councilwoman Jeruso and Councilwoman Moreno for financial support of that endeavor. So here we are, um, this has never been about just United Way, I often say United Way is a concept born 100 years ago, we're not bricks and mortar, and we're not a staff or board, we are an entire community, and we're committed to that idea that it takes all of us, working together with shared goals and a unified approach, to create more, more change collectively than we can on our own. Now, we know the challenges will persist, but the continued support of United Way and our partners will provide the region with the tools, the systems, or processes, and the resources to take on these issues, as a result, nonprofits will be able to build capacity and create impact more effectively, and residents will have the supports and opportunities necessary to be healthy, educated, and economically stable. And as I close, we are on the threshold of the next century, the importance of partnerships cannot be overstated, together, we've achieved remarkable things, and together, we will continue to create opportunities and overcome challenges, I'm excited about our future and the future initiatives that we'll embark on collectively to ensure a brighter, more resilient New Orleans for us all. Once again, I want to thank you for your support, your dedication, and your belief in the power of United Way, here's to a century of positive impact and driving change together for many more years to come, thank you again.
Thank you, Michael. We appreciate all of your work, I'll get some comments from the councilmembers, Councilmember Thomas.
Well, I, I, first of all, thank you, Councilmember Moreno, for acknowledging the 100 years, I think, Mike, the last time you saw me, I had my 100-year pin, uh, pin on, I want to thank you, the board, uh, the many women in the audience, and of course, we know who the, who the United Way lady is, uh, from her show on WBOK, uh, United Way and all of your providers, right, it's like, I don't know if people understand how important and necessary, uh, it is, you know, for kids like us who grew up in communities that didn't provide all the services and all of the needs, uh, it was United Way agencies that filled those needs, and when you talk about disasters, uh, times of despair, uh, I personally remember standing on the corner of Willow and Napoleon after Katrina, when United Way had a list of people that were unaccounted for, and when we would launch, we would launch with that list, uh, I remember the Johnsons on, I think it was a Marlin, a, a General Persian, and they had called the United Way because their family was looking for them. When we, those of us who were from here, we didn't need, uh, street signs to know where we were, so when we were, were launching during Katrina, when we got to the Johnsons' house, he had just had heart surgery, and his wife was 81, he was almost 90, the United Way had them on their list for being unaccounted for. What we knew was that they were trying to get into the attic. If you were here for Katrina, if you knew anything about Katrina, 99% of the older, older people, when we got to the house, if they were in the attic, they were not alive. But we were able to get to them before they got in the attic, uh, United Way saves lives, you remember us standing on the corner after Ida, before I came elected, but just as a citizen, working in our community, and I think the United Way took over that whole neighborhood and that block, and that neighborhood came back, and it's, it's restored, so thank y'all, uh, for what y'all do, as, as a, from a family who use United Way services, to someone who recommends people to United Way services, and you know, Mike, um, I'm kind of an expert in the ALICE report, I use it on my show, I think that and TCA's report on object poverty should be a case study and a foundation for anybody who's in office or who's in public service, because if you know the ALICE report, and if you know that TCA report on object poverty, you know what it's like to be in New Orleans, God bless y'all, and let's keep doing it, the United Way.
Councilmember Green.
Thank you for the work that the United Way of Southeast Louisiana has done over these many decades and now this century, um, it makes a difference in our city, and I also have an opportunity to refer organizations and refer people to the services that you provide, it makes a difference in our city. Sometimes we focus maybe a little bit too much on the negative in our city when we have positives going on, and this is an example of the positives today, yes, certainly, we're celebrating also a carnival season, which is part of New Orleans, which is part of the good side of New Orleans, but also our philanthropy and our willingness to give to others as part of our traditions here in the city of New Orleans, and the 100 years that United Way of Southeast Louisiana has been doing the work that you do is an example of why our city is, in fact, a great city. We have many challenges to overcome, I appreciate watching and working with you to address the issue of poverty in our city, because we can certainly be a much better city, and that's a priority for us to address, but are we moving in the right direction, yes, we are, and partially, it's because of the work of United Way and even the organizations that are here gathered today, and they'll hear about it from us, especially from me later on, but thank you for being a very important part of a culture of New Orleans that doesn't get recognized a lot, and that's the culture of giving and philanthropy in our city, appreciate the work that you do, and also want to say Charmaine's enthusiasm is contagious, contagious, we appreciate that, and she's a great spokesperson, in addition to the spokespersons for United Way, but thank you for your work.
Thank you.
King, you got it. Thank y'all, everything that I want to say has been said, so just thank you for the work that you do throughout this city and the region, thank you.
Well, Michael, I can, I can tell you that you and I have sat in some rooms together to talk specifically about homelessness, um, housing, setting up a flex fund so that you all can help us and the community can help us and our unhoused folks, and I just welcome that partnership, you know, you and I text all the time about, uh, making sure that we're moving things forward, and, and I really appreciate the partnership specifically on that issue, but when you think about poverty, and how you've helped folks from birth, early childhood education, through adulthood, through tax prep and the Prosperity Center, and through being an aged adult, you really touch everybody at every season of their life, and I just really want to thank you and your team for making sure that at any time, at any point in time, we can turn to you if we're in need, and we can refer people to you who are in need, and, and your spirit of giving, um, Michael, not only yours, but everybody on your team is just so evident, and you really, literally glow with it, so I, again, just want to thank you for our ongoing partnership together as we make New Orleans and the region a better place, so thank you.
Good morning, um, when I was listening to you, I thought about the old proverb about if you want to go fast, go alone, but if you want to go far, go together, and that, to me, epitomizes the work that United Way does, is that it's not alone in doing its work, you have partners throughout the community, throughout the region, who make that work possible, but those partnerships are really based on the relationships and the people that you have, who are both a part of the United Way, who are your partners, and I, I just, very quickly, Michael, you didn't say it, but I do want to highlight this, as part of the Mental Health Collaborative, what we have identified with United Way is that the, the lower ninth ward, New Orleans East, is chronically underserved, you also have the highest amount of Medicaid patients in that area, so what we're working towards now is marrying all the things that you talked about in your presentation with ALICE, with trying to get people better resources, with trying to have the appropriate amount of accommodations and meeting, uh, as the mayor would say, people where they are, so I, I want to thank you, but, but as importantly, thank your entire team, Mr. Sloan, Charmaine, Mary, Keith, all the people who are in the audience, who are your partners, I see, um, Ron, you know, you, you guys do such good work because you do it together, and I, I don't think you can stress that enough, that at times, we may think we're our own island, but United Way proves that's not the case, thank you so much.
Thank you, well, once again, congratulations, let me read the proclamation, it says, "Be it proclaimed by the City of New Orleans that the Council recognizes United Way of Southeast Louisiana's Centennial Anniversary in Orleans Parish, we call upon all residents to join in celebrating this momentous occasion and recognizing the positive impact United Way of Southeast Louisiana has had on our community," signed by all seven members of the city council, congratulations.
Thank y'all very much.
And, and before we go down to take a photo, it seems to be the day of birthdays, and I just learned that it's Charmaine Cassiope's birthday tomorrow, so happy birthday, Charmaine. All right, let's go down and take a quick photo.
Our second order of business is a presentation honoring NOMTAC for their involvement in the Algiers community and their philanthropic contribution in the city of New Orleans. I'm sorry, we have James Henderson, President of NOMTAC, and Theo Sanders, Financial Secretary. Founded in 1951, the crew of NOMTAC, New Orleans' most talked-of club, began parading on the West Bank in 1970, the inaugural parade has six floats, six bands, six marching units, one horse group, and a motorcycle quad, quadrant. Today, this crew is comprised of over 625 male and female riders, more than 27 floats, 14 bands, and several marching and riding groups, throws include ceramic medallion beads, jug banks, and their signature jug man dolls. NOMTAC is celebrating over 50 years strong in the Algiers, the Algiers Parade will be held on February 10th, 2024, the crew sponsored the Jug Social Club, Inc., has a rich heritage of civic activism, regularly donating funds to local schools, youth groups, and social programs, each year, a group of academic honors students is selected as guest riders in the parade.
All right, thank you.
That's it, Madam Clerk?
That's it, sir.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk, um, we're here to rep, to recognize and, and honor the, the crew of the JUGS, crew of NOMTAC, um, New Orleans' most talked-about club, we're here with their treasurer, Mr. Theo Sanders, Mr. McCorkle, and we have the Ki- the queen this year, uh, Ms. Allen, I'll let them introduce themselves and speak on the, the, uh, the organization, as they wish, just want to highlight, um, since we have the crew of NOMTAC, our Algiers crew, the only, only parade crew in, uh, in Algiers, want to shout out Martin Berman, uh, Charter School, uh, who, they reside in Algiers on, on Apalucin Point. Their, their SGA is here to soak up some of this good, uh, civic lesson, so, uh, without any further ado, NOMTAC, the JUGS, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Councilmember King, thank you all, council, for allowing us to be here in front of you today, it is an exciting time for Mardi Gras to begin, uh, and as we talk about the crew of NOMTAC, the Jug Social Club has been around about 73 years, uh, I also like to recognize our president, Mr. Jim Henderson, is under the weather today, and he's not able to be here, but we do have, uh, a former King, Roy McCorkle, that's here with us, member Arthur Allen, and our queen Sage, we, we'd like to welcome each and every one of us, every one of them to be here with us, we're honored to welcome you to our parade on February 10th, uh, we're, we're looking to bring 29 floats to the sea, to the city of Algiers, to Algiers community, I like to call it the city, uh, but we're, we're excited to have 29 floats, a number of marching bands, and also to have our councilmember, to reign as our Grand Marshal this year, so Councilmember King, we're very honored for you to have, and participate as our Grand Marshal.
Thank you.
But as I, as I mentioned, the Jug Social Club has been around about 73 years, uh, we are celebrating our 53rd parade, uh, our, our king, Carl Coleman, uh, will reign as King of NOMTAC, uh, Sage Allen will reign as our queen, uh, we're, we're super excited for what Mardi Gras brings. will reign as our Queen. We're super excited for what Mardi Gras brings. You know, as you mentioned, as was mentioned, New Orleans' most talked-of club have been known to bring a number of people to Algiers from all walks of life. Our city, we're happy to participate in the economic development of our city and doing just what we do to celebrate Mardi Gras. So thank you very much for the acknowledgement.
Mr. McCorkle?
Nothing.
Queen?
Hi, everyone. My name is Sage Allen, and I proudly serve as the 53rd Queen for the Crew of NAMTAC. I'm happy to be here and to represent my community as an Algiers native. Thank you for this opportunity.
So Ms. Allen, can you tell us what school you attend?
Yes, I'm currently a junior at Spelman College in Atlanta, Georgia.
All right, all right. Just want to highlight the great work that our young people are doing. Mom, Dad, anything you want to add? And also want to shout out our Algiers Clerk for Court, Ms. Lisa Diggs. So at this time, we'll let our councilmembers, we'll start from, we'll go from my left, your right, so we'll come from Madrussa.
Well, good morning, everybody. You know, we went to another crew luncheon yesterday, and what really struck me was, I think all people get focused on the parades, but they forget all the other things that the social clubs and the organizations and the crews provide. And that's a chance for people to be together, to have fellowship, to network, to get to know different people who live in different places, and really to strengthen the bonds that we have with our community. And so I just want to thank you all because Councilmember King has been a champion for Algiers. I don't know if he can say the word Algiers enough in any council meeting, but he tries. And I know we are so proud of the work that you do and how much you mean to the entire New Orleans community. Thank you all so much.
Thank you. This is my favorite meeting of all meetings, of all council meetings, because we get to celebrate you and we get to celebrate Mardi Gras. And it's so good to see you, not only during the Mardi Gras season, but during the entire year and working in the community. And congratulations on Spelman. I have a lot of dear friends who've graduated from Spelman, and I know that's quite an accomplishment. So, Queen, congratulations on being the Queen and becoming a graduate of Spelman, and good luck on all that you do. Congratulations, Grand Marshal, on being the Grand Marshal of the parade and on 73 years, which is a huge accomplishment. I can't wait to see you in 100 years. So congratulations and happy Mardi Gras.
Councilmember Green?
Congratulations and happy Mardi Gras. And congratulations on the work that you've done over the years to grow. I have so many friends who are members of the Jugs and also Calvin Rousseau, for example, really good lifetime friend. This weekend, I was in Washington for the Washington Mardi Gras. I missed my Zulu King and Queens party. I missed the NAMTAC coronation. I'm not doing that again. I had plans to go a year before. I tell you, it's not quite like being here in the city for the excitement that was experienced this weekend. But thank you all, NAMTAC, for what you do, for the professionals who are in your organizations, for the contributions that you make and the way that you've kind of grown over the years and put Algiers even more on the map, is always on the map, even more on the map, such that people are coming from throughout the region to attend the events that you sponsor. So thank you very much. And also, congratulations to you. It is great to celebrate youth in our city and the great things that are being done. So great to see you all and looking forward to seeing you again on the 10th.
Thank you.
Councilman Thomas?
To President Henderson, Mr. Sanders, King and Queen, and all of the Royal and Regal Members of NAMTAC. You know, NAMTAC matters when you're on one side of the river and people are saying, hey, man, we got to hurry up and go get our spot for NAMTAC, no matter where they come from in this city or no matter where they come from in this region. Nothing against any other parade, but in our community, the one thing you hear about NAMTAC and the men and Jugs is that that's our family parade. It has always been a safe space for us in our culture. And Councilmember King, thank you for this recognition. And for me, some of y'all know it's personal, because when I didn't have a title and when I was going through one of the most difficult things in my life, y'all thought enough of me to make me Grand Marshal. I didn't have to be honorable this or honorable that, but y'all thought enough of me and my family. And if I had done anything to say, hey, brother, you still matter. And I will never forget that. I use that as my motivation. I think too often we don't see the little things in life that make a difference in our entire life. So I love y'all. Tell PA I still ain't got my jacket back, but it probably don't fit me because I was just coming back home for vacation back then, right? But love y'all. We appreciate y'all. And Councilmember King, what a notable acknowledgement. And congratulations to you as Grand Marshal, man, because it's a big deal, Papa.
It is. It is. Thank you. NAMTAC is a big deal for the West Bank, not just Algiers. I've never seen...
Yeah, that's right.
The West Bank shuts down for NAMTAC. If you haven't been, you're missing a treat, no matter where you catch it, whether it's on holiday, whether it's by St. Mary's Place, by the pawn shop, on Newton, LB Landry, under the Bridge. Under the Bridge is another world, I'm telling you.
That's another world.
And this new tradition that has happened between Etna Car and LB Landry, like a mini battle of the bands on Newton Street, they start the parade for like a half hour and the kids just go back and forth. And they should charge admission to see it. It's beautiful. It's really a family event. They're police on the route, but you don't need any because everyone knows everyone. We police ourselves. It's a great event. I encourage everyone who can make it to make it. I know the Zulu Ball is the night before. In my younger days, I would go to Zulu Ball all night and get like 30 minutes of sleep and wake up and go put the barbecue grill and the pots on the lot. I can't do that anymore, so I believe in Zulu Ball about 12 to get some sleep. And I just want to say, really, like, there's a feeling Saturday morning in Algiers that the streets smell different. You can smell the propane. You can smell the seasoning and the charcoal. It's really a different... It's a great experience. So I encourage everybody that can make it to come out and see what everybody's talking about with the most, New Orleans' most talked-about club. So thank y'all.
Yeah, it rained on Frank Wilson in there, so I don't want it to rain on you.
I just checked the weather. Zero percent change.
Hey, man!
Thanks again, everyone. And please come out on February 10 and come see the Algiers Mardi Gras.
Absolutely. We gave them the proclamations at the ball Saturday, so we'll just come down and take a real picture. Thank you.
Councilmembers, we're ready for the third order of business. A presentation, the Honorable Elroy James, Zulu Social Aid and Pleasure Club President, Clarence Becknell, Zulu Historian, King-elect Melvin Labat and his Queen-elect Angelique Rocher.
As the members of the Zulu Social Aid and Pleasure Club leadership and its royalty come forward, I just wanted to take this opportunity, as they gather, to just express appreciation to the organization for what it does in our city of New Orleans, whether it be the 2,500 toys for the Toys for Tots, the scholarships awarded to Zulu maids and to others, and to the other social aspects of the organization that help to make our city a better city. I'm going to put a little pressure on and turn it over to Mr. James and just say that as we look at you all, we are so proud. And I'm so pleased to be the councilmember in which the Zulu Social Aid and Pleasure Club's headquarters is located. I appreciate being on the calendar. It's a busy calendar. Mr. Robinson, I don't know how you do it. You make them all, too. Everybody makes them all. But thank you very much. From what I've seen in the short period of time that I've been the councilmember for this district, the contributions that you make are extraordinary and appreciated. Judge Elroy James.
Councilmember, before we allow this, we need to suspend the rules to put 30 minutes on the clock because we have somebody right behind y'all. So we want to give each of y'all y'all time.
All right, so move to follow the correct procedures. I move to suspend the calendar to allow for additional presentations.
Moved by Green, seconded by me.
Members, please vote your machines. Aye.
Aye.
Everybody? All right, third order.
Aye, aye, aye.
Judge Elroy James.
Good morning. Darren Meyer, Director of Public Relations for the Zulu Association Pleasure Club. It's a pleasure to be here again this morning. With Zulu, we call it Zulu Day in City Hall. We've already been to the mayor's office earlier this morning, and we're here at the City Council to present our 2024 royalty. Before we do that, I would like to take a point of personal privilege to ask all the men of the Zulu Association Pleasure Club in the audience to please stand up. All the men of the... As you can see, we've been here for 115 years. We're moving, we're going strong. We do a lot, year in, year out. But as they say in New Orleans, this is our time. So this is our time. The carnival time is our time. And I'm now going to turn it over to first our president, President Elroy James, and then our board chairman, Oscar Rainey.
Good morning to the members of New Orleans City Council. It is certainly an honor for me to again present to the city of New Orleans, Zulu for the 2024 carnival season. My friend Freda King, I'm going to sit back and listen to all the palatudes about the children-oriented events we have and the family-oriented Mardi Gras celebration that we were put on and all the great things about Zulu in a few minutes. But I want to suggest that as we prepare for Mardi Gras 2024, our councilmen Oliver Thomas have heard these remarks previously that I gave at the opening ceremony for Mardi Gras at Blain Kearns Mardi Gras World. And I think it's important that I share those remarks again before the City Council and the men and women of the city of New Orleans, particularly, so much is made about the Zulu Association Pleasure Club and the great splendor that we do quite well during carnival season. And again, we will, we're poised to do the same. This year, we are opening, closing our carnation ball with R&B sounds of Shaka Khan, I mean, Confunction, Johnny Gill, and Neo. And yes, those are stellar entertainments and are entertainers in the R&B space. And we are certainly proud of it because no one does it as better than we do. And we are proud of that. But what we don't do often enough that I am poised to do because of what the member bestowed upon this organization with the election of Melvin Labat, who has worked tirelessly in the philanthropic space and chaired our Toys for Tots Committee for the last five years, six years that I've served as president. And because of his efforts, he, we have been able to deliver over 6,000 bicycles in the hands of needy children in our communities, 300 electronic devices, and hundreds and thousands of toys. But not only that, the brothers of the Zulu Association Pleasure Club is always looking to drive and fill gaps in our community. I'm proud that this year and last year long, the membership again stepped up and answered the call and will be putting 38 scholarships in the hands of the young ladies who would be representing this organization as Zulu maids. This year was 38, last year was 38. The year before that, it was about 34. And these members are digging in their own pocket on top of dues and assessments and saying, let's continue to fill the gaps of our communities. But we didn't stop there. We don't stop there. We have a Zulu, Junior Zulu's program where these brothers, the members of the Zulu Association Pleasure Club, are identifying needs with respect to Black and Brown boys in our communities and service mentors. And we are not stopping there. During the holiday basket time, we're delivering over 200 baskets yearly and feeding families in their most vulnerable times during the holiday season. So our organization, which is comprised of all volunteer work, understands that Mardi Gras is important to the city of New Orleans. It is an economic engine for the city of New Orleans. It's important that we maintain the cultures, the culture of Mardi Gras, particularly in the Black community. But the Zulu Association Pleasure Club understands the needs of our community and is always looking for opportunities to do a little bit more. So I'm honored to represent the organization for the last six years, and we're poised to continue to do it for the next 115 years. And I must thank the New Orleans City Council members and ladies for always standing lock, arm in arm, shoulder to shoulder, as this brotherhood identifies needs and continues to drive value in the community. So I'm looking forward to seeing you Friday night, February 9, as we enjoy the great sounds of R&B artists and crown our King, Melvin Labat, and his beautiful Queen Zulu 2024 for the carnival season, Angelique Rocher. But also, I look forward to seeing you on the banks of the Mississippi River as we drive economic development in the space of Black and Brown minority-owned and small-owned businesses in the city of New Orleans. And Zulu will continue to stand and do what we need to do in our community. Thank you for having us on this morning.
Good morning, Council. First of all, thank you all for forting me the opportunity to speak. As the president just stated, we are 365-year-year organization. And the things that the Zulu Association Pleasure Club does, yes, we do have over 800 members that contribute to the activities that goes on within the New Orleans community and the surrounding areas. But without the support of the City of the Council, as well as the mayor, this recent New Orleans Foundation grant, the Culture Economy Office, we couldn't do some of the things that we do here in New Orleans. And as it's been mentioned, we as Zulu got it right when it comes to Mardi Gras. We start celebrating Mardi Gras on Thursday evening at maids rehearsal. Friday night, we king our royalty, King Zulu-elect Melvin Labat and his lovely lady. But then comes Monday, Lendigra. We put on an economic engine for the city of New Orleans, which just happens to be the George V. Rainey Lendigra Festival, which I'm proud to say my father and my sister Gwen's father, my sister Monica and my sister Jackie's father, for what he's trailblazed and done for the city. And then Tuesday morning, bright and early before the sun comes up, we begin to prepare ourselves to give away the greatest treasure during Mardi Gras, and that's that golden Zulu coconut. So with that being said, we got it right. We know what we're doing. We've become professionals over the last years within this administration in executing Mardi Gras. So thank you all for what you do for the Zulu Association Pleasure Club.
And with Zulu protocol, it's only appropriate that I now announce our Carnival Activities Chairman, Dennis Robinson, Jr., to present our 2024 royalty.
Good morning, Council. As always, it's always an honor and a privilege to come before you to present our 2024 Royal Court. Every time I come to City Council or City Hall, I always feel like I'm at home because professionally, for the last 30 years, I've been right next door in the sheriff's office, and I have been up and down City Hall hallways forever. But to be in the position to present... But to be in the position to present Zulu's Mardi Gras every year, all the responsibility, I just want to thank everyone for giving me that opportunity to prepare us. My job, it seems hard, but it is real easy because you see all them gold coats that's out in the, in the views back there, have my back, and with the help of all my assistants, we're able to put on Mardi Gras every year in the spectacular fashion that you see it. But just to tell you what we're going to do, I have our 2024 Royal Court today. I will let everyone introduce themselves. We have our king and our queen and our characters for this 2024 Mardi Gras season, and we're going to start off with our King-elect, Brother Melvin Labatt. He'd be up first. Thank you.
Good morning.
Morning.
And thanks for the invite. I've been on the other side, we're working with Brother Dennis, but today being here as King Zulu-elect 2024, this is probably the third time I haven't cried this year, you know, but I'm not ashamed of it. I'm very proud of it. I'm very proud that my peers selected me to be King Zulu 2024, and I have so many great words to say for this organization that I belong to and for my president and for my chairman of the board and for my brothers. And as I listen in, we had united way here this morning. If you know me, you know I'm about the community is what I'm about. And I listened to the president say about the great things we do, but it's incumbent on all of us in this room and outside this room to make a difference in our community. Zulu, we're going to work hard to do our part, but we all need to maybe be that change agent to make that happen. And I'm grateful for being here. I'm looking excited, I'm excited for our ball coming up February 9th and the parade on the 13th. Thank you. God bless you, hail Zulu, and happy Mardi Gras.
I will again say thank you so much for the invite. As a Louisiana native and a person who has benefited from the generational impact of New Orleans through my father and my mother, I moved home about two years ago to recommit my energy to New Orleans, and I could think of no other more significant way than representing the esteemed organization that is the Zulu Social Aid and Pleasure Club as their queen select for 2024. I say that as a person who grew up within the organization. Both of my sisters were maids, my mother is a former queen, I was a maid, and I understood very well exactly what the honorable Elroy James said this morning, what the chairman said this morning, and what the king-elect said this morning, is that basically if we don't do it, who will? And so it is my privilege and my honor not just to represent the organization and thank you for that and entrusting that to me, but to also know that it represents the commitment to service, the commitment to culture, tradition, and engagement within the community that is the exact reason why New Orleans is such a great city. So thank you so much for allowing us to come before you this morning, and hail Zulu, happy Mardi Gras.
Hail Zulu.
Are we going to keep it rolling with our big shot for 2024? I'll let all of them introduce themselves. Big shot 2024.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Shane Patrick Williams Jr. I was elected 2024 Zulu Big Shot of Africa this year. It's an honor to be sitting before you guys this morning. It's an honor to be elected at this character. I hope I did a good representation of this thing for my Zulu organization and my brothers. Can't wait to see you guys Mardi Gras Day. Hail Zulu, happy Mardi Gras. Thank you, guys.
Zulu Ambassador 2024.
Good morning, everyone. Ronald C. Johnson, 2024 ambassador. It's an honor and a privilege to stand here and represent the Zulu Associated Pleasure Club as your ambassador this year. Looking forward to Mardi Gras Day as we parade the streets and paint the city maroon and gold. Hail Zulu.
Province Prince 2024.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Jay Marks, and I will represent the Zulu Associated Pleasure Club as the 2024 Zulu Province Prince. Thank you, guys, for the invite. I've always seen this room on television, but never with it being within these walls. And also to Councilman Green, you missed a good Province Prince group party on Friday as well. That being said, thank you, guys, again, and hail Zulu and happy Mardi Gras.
Zulu Mayor 2024.
Good morning, good morning. My name is Mark Aaron Varets Sr., and I'm representing the Zulu Mayor of 2024. First and foremost, I'd like to thank you all for inviting me here, and I look forward to fellowship and partnering with you on Mardi Gras Day. My float will be 19, so when you see me on 19, say, I remember you from the council meeting, give me a coconut. What I'll do, but most definitely, I appreciate you for inviting me here. Hail Zulu, happy Mardi Gras.
And our last characters, our Zulu Mr. Big Stuff, Brother Lucius Watts.
Good morning, council. Thank you for the invite. My name is Lucius Watts III, and I am Mr. Big Zoo, Mr. Big Stuff 2024. I look forward to seeing you all Mardi Gras Day on the parade route. And you guys, if you know what Mr. Big Stuff goes by, you know what to say. Thank you, hail Zulu.
And as always, Councilman Green, we have gifts for everyone when we do our presentation and we turn it back over to you.
I appreciate it greatly, and I'm going to go and ask our council members, starting with my right, for comments, and I do want to say to Brother Marks, you're right, I know I missed the party. I've seen the, I've seen the highlights, I've seen the film, and I was in DC. They tried to do it in DC, but boy, they just don't know how to do it. They don't even know how to do the toast. It was just hail king, and they just drank. No, you gotta sip it. You have to get to it. You have to get to it. You have to work your way there. But, you know, it was, it was an experience. I'll be there next year without a doubt. So Councilman Thomas.
I think like Councilmember Harris said earlier, this is one of the best days to be on the city council, to be in this chamber. We know that legislative matters and the policies of how we govern the city are important. But when you talk about the culture, Mr. President, when you talk about the soul of this city, I don't know that there's a more important date. Y'all know I'm a New Orleans boy, right? Y'all know, many of y'all know Roy Glappion helped raise me. Some people know George Rainey and my mama were classmates. And Mel, you know, Leslie and I are also known for crying too because we sensitive, right? But I've always looked at God has appointed times in history, right? And there's nothing we can do about it. We can try to politicize it, we can try to push it where we want, but there are times in history when things are important that we have no control over. And Sam, y'all have represented well, brother, no doubt. To this court, nothing against anyone who's ever served but Queen Rocher and King Labatt, this is y'all appointed time in history. There's so much angst, there's so much confusion in this world today. I don't know, Mel, who better could serve? Queen Rocher, I don't know who better could serve than a brother who's given his life, his money, his time. And nothing against anybody else who was ever in that position, but if anybody ever deserved to be king, we got us a king. If anybody ever deserved to be characters at this time and the point in time in history, Mr. Providence, y'all deserve it. Yeah, y'all know I'm always at the, I hate that I was in DC because I missed our essence. And for the president and the board, president and judge, I be confused sometimes, I don't know what to call you. John Latoya, you know the history of this group, and Roy Glappion, and George Rainey, and Oscar Piper, they're smiling right now because the level of class and elegance and professionalism, you reap that on every step you make. Hail Zulu.
Council Vice President Morell.
Thank you. It is always an honor to be in the presence of royalty on this day every single year. And Mr. Mel, as Councilman Thomas said, there is no more, no one more deserved to be King of Zulu than someone who has given so much to the city. I can tell you honestly that when I think of New Orleans and what New Orleans is, and I think about the history of this city, the fraught history, I would, I would like to say, because when you think about Mardi Gras, Mardi Gras was not always inclusive. It was not. It was a, it was a party for some people and not for other people. And when you look at the history of this city, the history of Zulu, it was the history of saying, you, we did not have a seat at the table, like Ms. Chisholm said, so we brought a folding chair. And, oh, my line's coming next, trust me, wait for a second. So when you look at history and what Zulu's meant, it has been an unapologetically Black organization that has stood for Blackness in the city of New Orleans. And I want to say, this is going to sound so awkward, but the brothers of Zulu will understand what I'm saying. In 2019, when there was this reckoning with white politicians with blackface, there was an attempt by national politicians to tell Zulu what to do. And this organization stared down pressure from misguided people from around this nation and said, you don't get to tell us how we do our Mardi Gras. You do not know, understand our history, you don't understand why we do what we do and why we'll continue to do what we do till the end of time. That is what it means to be a Black organization to Mardi Gras in the city of New Orleans. You took Mardi Gras to a new level, to heights of which it never saw, and you defined Mardi Gras. These old crews that have existed since the beginning of time, like many things happened in the city, they might have been the ones that started it, but you own it. When you talk about Mardi Gras Day, Mardi Gras Day for New Orleanians is watching Zulu come down the street. Mardi Gras Day is about saying, did you get a coconut or did you not show up? And I am so happy and so pleased that every year you allow this council to be part of your traditions because those traditions go back far beyond me even being alive and will go well beyond when I'm dead. So thank you for being here, Mr. Mel, letting us share your day. Thank you, brothers of Zulu, for being here every year, doing things year round, and you are a model for every other carnival organization. It's not just about the party, it's about service, and you guys serve our community. Thank you.
Preach, Vice President Morell. Preach. President Moreno.
Good morning to all of you. It's so great to see you. As Councilmember Thomas and Councilmember Harris said, this is one of the best days that we have before the city council, when we get to recognize Zulu and other crews that come before us. Once again, thank you so much for all that you do in our community, and I can't even count the many ways that you all have helped the city council and helped the city and helped people in New Orleans when they were in need. Mr. Mel, I had a great time and opportunity in talking to you during the news conference, and congratulations to you. I hope you have a wonderful, wonderful reign through 2024. Queen Rocher, I have to recognize you. So what I love so much about Zulu is the fact that you all put forward some of the most amazing women in New Orleans to serve as your queens, and you've done it again this year with Queen Rocher, an attorney, someone who's been involved in entertainment and in politics. And from what I understand, you're even working with Marvel now, which is amazing. In fact, Council Vice President Morell is a huge Marvel fan, so that I'm sure he's going to be very excited to hear about. But I think also interesting too is how you've taken a path that actually someone on my staff has also taken, and that's working for former Senator Mary Landry. And Sheree Hunter on my team, sorry, who's right here, sorry, I know you're right behind me, who's right here, also worked for Senator Landry, and she's a tremendous asset to my team. And obviously, the women that have gone through her office have received tremendous training from one of the best political leaders that this state has ever seen. So congratulations to this amazing, beautiful crew. I look forward to Tuesday, as always. You know where I'm going to be. I'm going to be on the street, right at Galler Hall. You know where to find me with those coconuts. I'll be there waving my hands and I'll help pass them out to the rest of the folks at Galler Hall. I hope you have a wonderful, beautiful day on Fat Tuesday. Hail Zulu.
Councilmember Freddie King.
Thank you, Councilmember Green. Judge Elroy, Judge James, I didn't, I never heard the word palatude, so I looked it up. I'm talking something today, palatudes. To the men of Zulu, the characters, king, congratulations. Queen, congratulations. Zulu is just a bit different from, it's a, it's a different vibe, it's a different brand. The most treasured item for Mardi Gras is that coconut. I had a council member from another city, another state come through and he saw the coconuts, and he was just in awe, and I gave him one. He may as well have like a gold brick in his hand. He was so excited. The most requested tickets that we get. Zulu Parade. I get people calling me to have Zulu Ball tickets. I'm like, man, no, I don't, but I'll reach out and try to get you one. So it's just, Zulu is just like, it's a part of, it's a part of New Orleans. At the Mardi Gras, sorry, at the Queen's arrival, the airport stopped, people from all over the world just stopped and took their cameras out, took their recording, the recorders out and start, was like staring in awe and just started snapping shots and taking video of Zulu. So y'all do a great job representing our city and representing our culture. I'm going to try to catch the parade in two spots this year, Uptown and in front of Galler Hall. I want to get that authentic central city vibe in me for my kids to see that and to experience that. I can't wait to see, see y'all on Mardi Gras Day and hail Zulu. Thank you.
Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Councilmember Green. I can't say it better than Judge President, President Judge said it than the Queen, who's gorgeous and beautiful and just, just such a great example of womanhood. I can't say better than you the impact of Zulu on the community, on District D specifically, on the city and New Orleans. You think about New Orleans, you think about New Orleans as the economic driver of the state of Louisiana. You think about Mardi Gras as the economic driver of New Orleans, and you think about Mardi Gras Day, and you think about Zulu. So I just want to say thank you, congratulations to the king, to all the characters. And listen, I watch at Jackson and Brainard, so you'll see me there. You will not see me at Galler Hall, you'll see me at Jackson and Brainard. If y'all want to come by for brunch, I live off the route, so you'll see me there. I'll be yelling for some coconuts.
Thank you. Councilmember Jerusso.
Thank you. You know, we could pass a resolution and make sure we get the toast right, right? Make sure we do it absolutely correctly. I think I just want to echo what Councilmember Morell said, which is, I appreciate everything nice you said to us, but you're inviting us to your party. And Zulu, I didn't realize 115 years has just been such an ingrained part of the fabric. Queen-elect, you noted about how long it's been part of the community and what that engagement means. And I, and I don't think that should go unsaid and undersold. Again, we, we know, because we see each other so much on a daily basis, whether it's across the street, in the building, somewhere else that we're intertwined, but I think Mardi Gras is a reminder for all of us, both as we celebrate it with our own crews and the way that we do our own traditions, but it's a celebration of the city as a whole. And I appreciate King-elect and all the characters, as well as Queen-elect, making sure that you all are doing so much for the city and not just celebrating the coconut, which is, which is, and by the way, my 2019 LSU national championship coconut is probably one of my most prized possessions, so I'm not giving that away to anybody ever. But I, I think everything that you do for the city on a regular, daily basis is just as important. So thank you for you all, and hail Zulu.
Neil deGrasse Tyson, who's an astrophysicist and also the director of the Hayden Planetarium, was in town last week, and I had an opportunity to present to him a couple of things from the city, a proclamation and a couple of other things. But when I was able to present to him a simple coconut that had the word Zulu on it, that's when his eyes lit up, and it's going to be on his desk at the Hayden Planetarium. He's so proud to have gotten that gift, but it's an example of the impact that you all have now and throughout the nation. So we appreciate your being here today. It's a great day of celebration, and again, I'll be at everything next year. I won't be in Washington. I had to try the Washington thing. Everybody said you had to be there. We got a new governor, we got Drew Brees as the president, but it was not quite like being in town for the exciting weekend, so I'm looking forward to celebrating. We're going to come down and we're going to take a, yeah, oh, you want to, you want to make the presentation now? You want us to come down there and get?
We can do it after.
Yes, we're going to come down for the photo. Yes, we're gonna come down, um, for the photos and we can also do the gifts then. And thank you very much for the gift, we appreciate it. And thank you for members who are here.
[inaudible]
All right, Uncle Norman.
Councilmember, are we ready to continue with the Third Order of Business? Councilmembers, are we ready to continue with the Third Order of Business? All right. Now we'll have the Honorable Lisa Ray Diggs, President of the Mystic Crew of Fimfatel. Dr. Tekeisha Davis, Captain of the Crew Fimfatel. Family and representatives of the late Barbara Lason Keller, Founder of the Crown Jewels, Mr. Crew of Fimfatel Queen, Dominique Bright Wheeler Esquire, Crew of Allah Queen, Queen 92, Dr. Christina M. Christ, Crew of Carrollton Crew, Emile Emily Kyle Saucier, Crew of Choctaw Princess, Monique Sutherland Massey, Crew of Cleopatra Queen 51, Connie T. DeCarlo, Crew of Endemian Queen 58, Sidney Caroline Raymond, Crew of Phoret Queen, the Honorable Kimya Holmes, Crew of Hamana Queen, Dr. Kemp, Kamasha, thank y'all so much, Kamasha Smith Ross, Crew of Iris Queen, Valerie Roy, Crew of King Arthur Queen 46, Guinevere 47, Megan Claire Harwell, By Two, Legions of Mars Queen 11, Grace Elizabeth Babbin, Crew of Mid-City Queen, Abigail Great Peen, Crew of Morpheus Queen 21, Elaine Beckett, Crew of Nefertiti Number Four, Leonardo Juong, Crew of Namtak Queen 53, Sage Judith Allen, Crew of Nyx, Goddess Nyx Number 12, Jeannie Ogden, Crew of Ocean, Queen 25, Pamela Foster, Crew of Ponchatrain, Queen 49, Jaya Leerson, Crew of Pygmalion, Queen 24, Ellen Elizabeth Congimi, Crew of Spartan Society, Queen J.C. Lynn Hopkins, Crew of Toth, Queen 76, Sarah Ann Hamburg, Crew of Tux, Queen 56, Elizabeth Carter, and Crew, and Crew of Zulu, Queen Angelique Rocher.
Uh, Madam Clerk, thank you. Uh, it's, uh, of course, this occasion cannot be special without, the women who are the essence of everything we do. And on behalf of the late Barbara Lason Keller, one of the great women, cultural bears of our time, someone who named me King of the Bug Jumpers, back in the day where we had almost 18,000 people come out, I'll never forget that. And I think that had a lot to do with me being King of the Sidewalks. Again, now, but for Dr. Davis and the Lason family, President Diggs, Gwen, Queens, this is such an honor, right? Because you're not, guys, I don't only keep the tradition going, y'all make sure folk know the role that women have played in the history of our culture. And it, so, so for me, it's just an opportunity to build on what Barbara did. She started this.
She did.
Uh, many years ago. She's one of those people that, she's not here, but she is.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, there's some people whose imprint is so indelible.
Yeah.
Their life is, is so big that even when they're gone, they're not. So, I'd like to turn this over to Gwen and, and the ladies at the desk to really talk about not just how special she was, but how special all of the women are who are here. Gwen Rainey.
Good morning. Good morning. I am Gwen Rainey, the founder of the Mystic Crew of Fimfatel. It is a blessing to be before you, uh, this morning. I heard, I was kinda like in my feelings, Oliver, because I was like, okay, the men are gone first and we are last.
Save the best.
We save the best for last, but then I had to digest it and I realized that my father, the late George V. Rainey, was one of the founders of Namtak. In some way and somehow, in his journey, he journeyed over to the Zulu Social Aid and Pleasure Club. And Councilman Freddie King, I heard you talk about Namtak and the prize that it is in Algiers, and I was sharing with my brother, whether we were working the Zulu Ball, cause there was a time when we worked, Rainey's worked the Zulu Ball, or we were attending the Zulu Ball, we always had to be sure that we were at Rainey's at seven o'clock on Saturday morning to go to work. So, that's how deep the culture is. And I share all of this to say that, sitting under my father is, there was the makings of how, and some beautiful ladies that came together with me to start the Mystic Crew of Fimfatel. I heard that Namtak had 87 years and I heard that the Zulu Association and Pleasure Club had 115 years. But let me tell you, councilpeople, we're here 11. And we're here to be strong, whether I'm dead or gone, the president is dead or gone, the parade captain is dead or gone, but we're here to be strong. And Councilmember Morell, I heard you talk about the history, where it wasn't feasible for black people. And if you think it wasn't feasible for black people, it wasn't feasible for black women. Because carnival was, was owned by the blue bloods, the lawyers and the doctors at that time. And I also heard you say, Oliver Thomas, that there was a time, and our time has come. And it came in 2013. And we're here 11 years strong. And we gonna keep on moving. I thank God for Ms. Barbara Lason Keller, for putting this together, for inviting all the queens from all the Mardi Gras crews. And when she came to me, who was gonna tell Ms. Barbara no?
No, nobody.
Who, who was gonna say no?
I wouldn't.
So, here we are. Happy Mardi Gras, congratulations to all the queens. I didn't see, uh, whether the Queen Select Rocher was still here, but I remember when her mother was the queen to my late uncle Louis Rainey Jr. in 1996. So, there's a lot of history. And that history has carried me and these beautiful women to start the Mystic Crew of Fimfatel. Thank you and God bless you.
I think also Dr. Davis has, perhaps, we can, everyone, please, yeah, please participate. And then Dr. Davis will do the special presentation. President Diggs.
Good afternoon. Protocol has been established, but I would like to personally thank, on behalf of the organization, the City Council for all that they do for the culture of Louisiana and New Orleans. And all of the support that they have given each one of them sitting here, our organization, the Mystic Crew of Fimfatel. I am the Honorable Lisa Ray Diggs. I'm one of the 13 founders, along with our visionary and Dr. Davis. For the Mystic Crew of Fimfatel, I currently serve as the President of the Mystic Crew of Fimfatel. And I would like to recognize all of our members and all of the people that came out to support us. We show up in numbers, we show up in droves, not only for Mardi Gras. We are more than just a Mardi Gras crew, as Ms. Barbara coined. We service this community 365 days of the year. And for me, I serve it in many capacities. And I've done that all my life. So, service is what I do. So, we, as the Mystic Crew of Fimfatel, on behalf of the founders, the Board of Directors, and the members of the Mystic Crew of Fimfatel, we would like to thank the mayor and the City Council for all that you do. Thank you. And now, we have to do this. This is protocol for our organization. I would like to introduce you to one of the best parade captains in the city of New Orleans and around the world.
Good morning. And, um, once again, thank you to the mayor and the City Council for allowing us, uh, once again, to come, uh, and display uh, some of the best that Mardi Gras has to offer in the Mystic Crew of Fimfatel and all of the Mardi Gras queens. Uh, as was stated, my name is Dr. Tekeisha Charles Davis and I have the pleasure of serving, uh, as a founding member and the parade captain for the Mystic Crew of Fimfatel. Ms. Barbara Lason Keller, uh, established this Crown Jewel proclamation because in her words, "There are no former queens, they are crown jewels." And we should always recognize what queens bring to the spirit of Mardi Gras. Uh, I am pleased to be sitting, uh, with her legacies. And, uh, of course, uh, her son has passed away, but also part of her legacy, um, who are a part and continue to be a part, uh, of our organization, as well as with, uh, our current Queen 2023, Dr. Monique Jones, and our 2024 Queen Select, Dominique Bright Wheeler Esquire, and our 2024 Grand Marshall, the Dolly Rivas Eglon. Uh, we are extremely pleased, uh, to be here, not just with them, but as Ms. Barbara, uh, challenged us and encouraged us to do, but celebrate all of the Mardi Gras queens. This is the only ceremony where we celebrate the queens. And all of you, whether, whether male or female, no matter how you identify, know that where women go, we all go. There is a quote that says, "If you educate a man, you educate a man. If you educate a woman, you educate a community." Our women that stand behind us as queens are beautiful and regal, but they are leaders in many, many facets, as you all stated, for Queen Select Zulu. And so, we are excited to be here today. We want to extend, uh, a point of privilege to allow the legacies of Ms. Barbara to speak about, um, their mother. to speak about their mother prior to allowing our queen and queen select to speak.
Good morning, and thank you again for this special time of acknowledgement. My mother didn't, a lot of people think that she started her community service when she came to City Hall. But she started her community service when we were little on Hunter's Field, as part of tambourine and fan. And the culture is ingrained in us. And my mother embodied equity and inclusion before it became a catchphrase. Where there was no equity, she stood up and said, this needs to change. Where there was no inclusion, when she was invited into the room, she brought others in with her. And in some rooms, she sent them, and she didn't go because she wanted to make certain that there was representation. So thank you again. And part of her dream and vision for starting the Crown Jewels was to make certain that the women were acknowledged as a part of the Carnival celebrations. So thank you again, as you stated, Ali, as we call you, because you're family, that she just knew that this was important. And her mark on this community, as we get calls weekly about honoring her and continuing her legacy in different organizations. And as long as we breathe and her grandchildren breathe and her great-grandchild breathes, her legacy will continue throughout this community. Thank you.
Queen Monique? I'm sorry, darling, were you gonna say something? Queen Monique?
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Dr. Monique Jones. I am the Queen Twenty Twenty Three for One More Day. It has been an honor and a privilege to serve in this capacity. As stated before, the Mystic Crew of Fem Fatale is more than just a Mardi Gras crew. It is an organization full of ladies from all backgrounds, and we really stand on service. And so it has been an honor and a privilege being able to be the face of this organization. And I look forward to crowning Queen Select Dominique Bright Wheeler tomorrow night at our annual gala.
Queen Rainey.
Good afternoon. It's an honor and a privilege, yes, to be here before the city council. I want to thank you for the invite, thank you for including us all. I also want to thank, you know, Ms. Barbara Lason Keller, because I remember when she said, oh, let's go to the city council for crown jewels, never ever thinking that I would be a crown jewel. And just reflecting on, you know, just being an African-American woman to be named Queen Select of the Mystic Crew of Fem Fatale is just an awesome honor and a privilege. And remembering as a little girl, watching those parades, and I'm talking about in the seventies and the eighties, and being in the parades and watching them, and always staring at the queens and how beautiful they were. I'm not sure I ever really paid attention to the queens, I'm gonna be honest. Because as a young girl and a woman, you look at the queen and her crown.
We did too.
Yeah. And so I said this to my sisters, my femme sisters, our MKFF leadership, our founder and visionary, our president, our parade captain. It's an honor and a privilege to serve as the Queen Select Queen of One More Day for Fem Fatale. And so I just want to thank you all for the acknowledgement, the recognition, not just for me, but also for all my beautiful queens behind me, my sister queens. And I just want to say happy Mardi Gras, and I hope to see you all in the grandstands on Sunday, sharing us all. Thank you.
Ms. Dolly.
Good afternoon. I do have a big voice because I'm a retired teacher after thirty years in Orleans Parish in theater, dance, and arts. And we know how important it is to have the arts and keep the arts in the schools and reach all these children. But I want to thank the Mystic Crew of Fem Fatale for inviting me to serve as their twenty twenty-four Grand Marshall. It is definitely a privilege and an honor to be recognized. Thank you.
Thank you. And our royalty, both Queen Monique spoke about crowning tomorrow night, Queen Select Dominique Bright Wheeler. We would like to invite all of you to attend, to witness the regal royal crowning of Queen Dominique Bright Wheeler tomorrow night. We have gifts for you all today that also include those invitations. We hope that you will join us for this very magnificent event. We heard from those who went before us that they think they put on the best party. We really put on the best party. We all know who planned the birthday parties, the Christmas parties, the Halloween parties in your house. So we do put on the best party. And when I say we, it takes all of us. And so I do ask that our board of directors, I know that our board chairwoman, Lisa Higgin, is here, our lieutenants, and all of our members will please stand because it takes all of them to put on the Mystic Crew of Fem Fatale's extravaganza. With that, we will turn it over to you.
I have a personal privilege.
President Diggs.
Say one thing before, like Dr. Davis said, it takes all of us to put everything on. And I would like to acknowledge the staff that sits behind you guys.
Absolutely.
Because they do the groundwork, and they are there, Johnny on the spot for each and every one of you. And we also have one of our own members, or a couple of our members that are part of the staff. So I would like to acknowledge and recognize you. And Ms. Lena, she's the grand dom.
Barbara Lason and Lena Stewart and many of the people that really make things happen. We can never pay them for what they do. They're part of our history, they're also part of our future and definitely part of now. Councilmember Jerusalem.
Before, I'm sorry, I was a little premature. Because we do have our queens of other Mardi Gras organizations represented behind us. And we would like, if it is acceptable to you all to extend the privilege to say a few words
We're gonna pass out to them.
Prior to getting their proclamations. And we'll ask them to introduce themselves. We'll start with Queen Harmonia.
Well, it's afternoon, so good afternoon, city council, and thank you to the Mystic Crew of Fem Fatale for extending this invitation. I'm Dr. Kamasha Smith Ross, and I serve as the reigning queen for the Crew of Harmonia. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Jeannie Ogden. I am the reigning queen for the Mystic Crew of Nyx. And I want to thank all of you from the Mystic Crew of Fatale for inviting me to this crown jewel proclamation and to let me join all these beautiful queens today.
Thank you. Thank you, queen.
Good afternoon. My name is Monique Sutherland Massey. I am Princess Chata this year, our eighty-ninth year. I would like to thank you ladies for inviting us and honoring us in this very, very special way. Thank you.
That one's a little too short. Good afternoon to the council. I want to thank the Crew of Fem Fatale for inviting us to this, especially my classmate. Thank you, Dr. Davis. My name is Judge Kim Yahones. I am the twenty twenty-four Queen of Farret. And I'm also the president of the Crew of Themis, which is a subcrew in the Crew of Farret.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm Megan Battoon. I'm proud to represent the Crew of King Arthur. This year, I'm portraying Queen Guinevere the Forty Seventh. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Good afternoon. My name is Sage Allen, and I serve as the fifty-third Queen Select for the Crew of Namtak. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. I'm Jade Carol Mason. I'm the twenty twenty-four Young Men Illinois Club queen. And I'm proud to be here and grateful that I was included. And because this is, I'm the first queen that's not riding, like, we don't have a parade or anything. So I appreciate y'all for that, and thank you.
I'm sure you will one day.
That's right, that's right. Our future femmes, councilmen.
Did you want to acknowledge your Essence guests right now?
Actually, I will acknowledge Essence Festival of Culture. I did not see Hakim here. But I do want to acknowledge that through partnership with the mayor's office, we have been excited to partner with Essence as our special guest. We all know the economic engine that Essence Festival of Culture is to the city of New Orleans during the summer. They are endeavoring to continue to be much like we are, more than a Mardi Gras crew, more than an Essence Festival, and partner with us to be a part of the Mystic Crew of Fem Fatale's parade. This will be our third year that we will be partnering with them.
Thank you. Councilmember Jerusalem.
Well, good afternoon. I wanted to start again by saying how much I love Ms. Barbara, just what a driving force she was. I remember coming here about twelve years ago, so I was about thirty-five, married, in the middle of my law practice, had kids. And the first words out of her mouth were, little Joe. That's who she was. And so I can't think of any better legacy than her family and then what she created through Fem Fatale and all the work that you continue to do. And the fact that you continue to not only uplift her legacy, but continue to make sure that women get the spotlight that they deserve during Mardi Gras. I appreciate your words that men think we know how to plan, but the women are the ones who really do the best organization, and we know it. So we appreciate you all being here so much today for all the work that you all have done. And I hope all of you have wonderful rides, festivities, and great days as Mardi Gras approaches. Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Harris.
Well, thank you. You've already heard me say this is my favorite day. And to see so many of my favorite people right before me, it's mind-blowing. Gwen, you know I love you. Ms. Barbara's children, you're here, and I love you. Judge, Ms. Mason, who is a friend of Judge, you know, the daughter of Judge Omar Mason. Dominique Bright Wheeler, who has served as a mentor and a shining bright star. Just to see so many beautiful women, and beautiful black women especially, in front of us today. We really did save the best for last. Oliver, you said that I cried the most, and this actually really does bring a tear to my eye because I just love this day, I love seeing you, and I can't wait to celebrate with you tomorrow for the crowning of Queen Dominique. I'll see y'all tomorrow.
Councilmember King.
Thank you, Councilmember Thomas. As long as this happens and Fem Fatale rolls, Ms. Barbara's legacy will continue. So I really enjoy that this day, her legacy is honored. And throughout the year, everything that Fem Fatale does, her legacy is honored. So all the queens, members of Fem Fatale, you all look great today. I was very excited to see so many of our queens in one room, under one roof. I'm very excited to have a couple of girls and to see women honored on Mardi Gras. During the Mardi Gras season, Mardi Gras there is a big deal. And Ms. Rainey, you see y'all eleven years in. And the amount of, I guess, roads y'all have covered, the amount of, in those eleven years, is amazing. Because I would say that like the second or close to the first model requested stand tickets is definitely Fem Fatale.
If I could add to that, we started with fifty-two members, and now we have fourteen hundred and...
Seventy-nine.
Seventy-nine.
So y'all covered a lot of ground in a short amount of time. Congratulations, and I hope all the y'all rains are great. Thank you.
Councilmember Marino.
Okay, it's afternoon, right? Good afternoon to all of you. So great to see you. And it's always, you know, a pleasure to have you come before the city council and to see all of these amazing, strong women. Thank you for pursuing the legacy of Ms. Barbara, who, of course, we all knew so well, in bringing strong, dedicated women to the city council and showcasing them in front of the people of New Orleans. And to all of the queens, it's wonderful to have all of you before us, you know, listening to, you know, how we talk about our queens and how we look at them as they're coming down the avenue. And it's like, oh, my gosh, there they are in their crown. And it's just such a magnificent, just awe-inspiring feeling that we get, right? And while all of you all are queens, and we were actually gonna do this right afterward, but now I'm just kind of thinking through this, I actually think I should do it now. So we do have someone in the room who is definitely a queen, okay? Definitely a queen. She is an honorary muse, and so it's not really a queen, but that is the queen from muses. So that's Margaret Orr. Margaret, can you come up and also stand with them? Yeah, just, yeah, if you could just stand with the queens, Margaret, and just introduce yourself. I mean, we know who you are.
That's the weather lady.
Exactly.
Y'all, I'm a meteorologist.
Yes, weather lady, come on.
I went to school for this. And WDSU, let me just put it out there, the most accurate weather forecast. So wait, you know, and you brought that up, Oliver, so you know, I just had to interject that. So wait, I am the honorary muse of muses, and I can't tell you how thankful and honored I am because happy are those whom the muses love, right? And the muses love all of you. The muses love New Orleans because we, well, did you know that we have streets named after all of the muses? Except we mispronounce all of them. So what is Calliope? It's Calliope. And Terpsichore? Terpsichore, those are the muses. We've got nine of them who are the daughters of Zeus. Who is Zeus? Zeus is the god of thunder and the sky. So y'all need to talk to him, and don't blame me when we have thunder on Saturday. So, yeah. You know, I've been working out the forecast. I just have to say, as a child, my first parade, it was, throw me something mista. Now, there are more women parading than men. That first parade that I went to as a child, maybe six, I don't know, I did not catch a single pair of beads. I was in tears. And now, I'm going to be giving out, now, it's hard to say if it's the most coveted because I know there's Zulu.
And the compact.
But I am going to be giving out the glittered, bejeweled, amazing shoe for muses. And it is such an honor to do that, but wait. Can you see? They are sparkly and beautiful. Did you see them, Helena? Yeah. JP, did you see them? Eugene? I just want to make sure y'all saw them because they really are pretty.
We love you, Margaret, we love you.
You know, I love you back, all of y'all. What I have seen over the years, and I'm finally admitting to being seventy, so, yeah, I could be your grandmother, how Mardi Gras has changed, how it is inclusive. It is truly the gumbo of New Orleans.
God bless Dart, they may tell.
Yeah, you're right. Where we all celebrate life. We celebrate the wonders of New Orleans, and we have so much to offer. And we just got to put that out to the world. That's my two cents.
All right, Margaret, thank you.
And as Margaret, as Margaret said, those are the muses, but this is New Orleans. It's Burgundy. You can say Burgundy. And when our favorite meteorologist, I never get it...
Meteorologist.
Yeah, you know, I love it when you're rough with me. In the studio once, and Margaret is such a great meteorologist, they had predicted it was gonna rain, and I said, I said, well, Margaret, it didn't rain. And she said, it did somewhere or somebody. So they're always right. It just didn't rain on me. God bless you, we appreciate you. Give Margaret another hand. Ms. Rainey, you had said something earlier about order in life. And I like to write my little limericks, and it gave me a thought about something, about how right you are.
And I wrote that... Well, I mean, I thought I was...
Oh, no, oh, you wanted a turn?
I was waiting my turn, but I mean, I guess I'll just take my turn.
No, I'm sorry, Councilmember Marino, I mean Morell.
I'll be brief.
No, 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 please forgive me, man, please.
I am renowned for being the brief one up here, so I'll be brief. I'll be brief. And you guys can't talk, so you can't object to what I'm saying.
Will you be Eugene brief or brief?
Well, no, no, I'm not gonna be Eugene brief. We don't have time for Eugene brief. I'll tell you all right now, I'm not gonna be brief. I don't need to beat around the bush. All I want to say is...
All I want to say is, when you look at what we have here today, the legacy of Ms. Barbara, it is so tremendous when you look at the history of Mardi Gras, how much of that history revolves around families and families' attachments and their influence on what Mardi Gras is. I think it's important to note that Fem Fatale exists because Ms. Barbara said, "I don't care there's a cap, we need more parades." So when we're talking about the fantastic moment we have for today, we talk of the jewels, the queens of Mardi Gras, it's about women in leadership who do not take no for an answer.
Yes.
As I recall, there was even an okey-dokey moment where they thought y'all were rolling in 2016. They said, "No, if you don't roll in 2015..."
Six months, we had to roll.
And rather than complain, you saw for what it was, and you rolled in 2015. So I also want to add, Gwen.
Yes.
You are your father's daughter. And when I see the trials and tribulations you went through with Ms. Barbara, not taking no for an answer, I know he is so happy with what you've done and what you will do because you have always been a mentor to me, as you know. You've always been someone who I've looked to for guidance on very difficult decisions. And your leadership with Ms. Barbara, with this organization, and with bringing women who are in Mardi Gras to the forefront. Because remember, for a long time, women were just like the arm candy to the king of the parade. And what you've done with this event each year has said, "No, no, no, these are leaders. These are queens in their own right and must be honored separately." So thank you for all your work. Thank you for your work every year and keeping us honest, and I appreciate you. See you short.
And Councilmember Morel, I'm sorry, I was just trying not to get to Eugene.
You know, let me tell you.
Councilmember Green.
Well, I'll tell you this, Councilman Thomas, if you want me to be brief, don't bring me these distinguished women who are doing these great things in our community. Don't bring me elected officials, attorneys, and business owners, and young women, meteorologists and the like. But if you bring them to the council, I can't help but say how proud I am to be a New Orleanian, but also how proud I am to see you all here and to be in the council chamber while you all are here. It is a great day, crew of Fem Fatale and our sister queens. It is a great day in the city of New Orleans. Barbara Lason Keller, I ran for office, y'all might know this, a couple of times and lost. But whenever I lost, Barbara Lason Keller said, "That just wasn't your time." She would say that, and you know she would say that, and she was right. And I was elected to the city council, and I'm pleased with what we've been able to accomplish over the couple of years that I've been a council member. But she was always there as a strong mayor of Central City, committed to economic development. I was the former head of economic development under Mayor Moreau when Aretha Castle Healy needed some work. And Barbara Lason was there with the Central City Housing Corporation to make sure, and also just the work in general with the political side, to make things happen. So thank you for your mother's legacy and for what she did and her continuation, even though she's not with us, of adding to the legacy of our city. So Councilman Thomas, I want to thank you for recognizing today. I didn't say as I close yet. I didn't say as I close. Well, when I say as I close, then I'm going to be like a Baptist preacher. I got two closings. But no, I'm really proud to be here today and just want to thank you all. My daughter is a third-year medical school student, and when I send her the photos, let me tell you, the photos that she's going to ask me about, and she's going to want to talk about, are the photos that include you all that I've taken from up here. Who was that, and how can I get involved? So when she comes back to the city of New Orleans, because I'm bringing her back here, she's going to be very involved. But thank you for all that you do. It makes a difference, not only during this season, it makes a difference eternally throughout our year. We appreciate it very much. Thank you.
First of all, I apologize for racing through this, but wanted to be respectful to everyone's time. But it's Mardi Gras time, right? So they're really in any time. You know, the clock doesn't mean anything.
Nope.
Work means as little as it ever does, and it's our time to use this time to come together. Gwen, when you talked about order in life, I wrote a little something, so maybe we could understand. I think you helped us understand. There are many notable and worthy things that are worthy of being seen, but the only way to really see a king is through the view of a queen. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. I'd just like to share this, if you don't mind, Oliver. You brought up the point about Dorothy Mae Taylor. And a lot of people don't know this, and it's too bad I don't have the pictures. But when that ordinance came, I was then trading, I was a bond trader at that time, and I was working for Leg Mason Howard Wheel. And I had the opportunity to ride on the trader's float. And so I say that to say that I was the first black to break that glass ceiling under Dorothy Mae Taylor.
Amen, amen. Well, we can never forget Dorothy Mae Taylor. We wouldn't be where we are now if we did, if we did. Dr. Christina M. Chris? Dr. Chris? She's not here. Emily Kyle Saucier? Monique Sutherland Massey, Crown Jew. Prince Chakta? Connie DeCarlo, Queen Cleopatra. Sydney Caroline Raymond, Queen Endymion. Any of the queens are not here, but they're being represented. Dominique Bright Wheeler, Esquire, Queen Fem Fatale. The Honorable Kimya Holmes. Dr. Camasia Smith Ross, Queen Harmonia. Valerie Bimroy, Queen Iris. You can clap for her. She'll feel it. Megan Claire Harwell Bitwane, Queen Iris. Bitwane, did I say it right? Bitwane? Bitum? Congratulations.
King Arthur.
King Arthur. Gwes Grace Elizabeth Babin, Legion of Mars. Abigail Grace Bean, Queen Mid-City. Elaine Beckett, Queen Morpheus. Lenora Juncheon, Queen Nefertiti. We just rolled together Saturday. Sage Judy Allen, Queen Namtad. Jeannie Ogden, Goddess Nyx. Pamela Foster, Goddess Oshan, Oshun, rather. I was king of Oshun once. Jaya Millatt Leerson, Queen Ponchatrain. Ellen Elizabeth Congemi, Queen Pygmalion. See, we got a lot of queens. J.C. Lynn Hopkins, Queen Sparta. Sarah Ann Hamburg, Queen Ta-ta. Elizabeth Carter, Queen Tux. A. Angelique Roche, Queen Zulu. Dr. Courtney Villary Jones, the inaugural queen, Nandi.
Nandi.
One. Jade Carol Mason, Queen Youngwyn, Illinois. And you're going to have your own parade one day, baby. The greatest queen, mayor, elected official, public servant. I always tell people, the best people God put on this earth are the ones who put themselves second, none other than the late Barbara Lason Keller. And Dr. Davis is going to accept this proclamation for their partner, Essence. It says, "For the Essence Festival of Culture, their party with a purpose, promoting and celebrating and exploring health, wellness, spirituality, entrepreneurship within the African-American community. This council acknowledges them for their partnership with you and your crew." Hakeem Holmes, Vice President of Essence Festival. This is for our brother, Hakeem. And for Caroline Wanga, in recognition for their relationship with our culture as well as the Essence Festival. Thank you, guys. One big round of applause.
Wait, real quick. Hang on one second, one second.
Councilmember.
One last one. This one's for Margaret Orr, the honorary muse 2024, the crew muses. This one's for you, Margaret.
Councilman.
The meteorologist.
Councilman Thomas.
Yes.
I have one thing, one last order of business that we missed out. I would like to recognize another one of our founding members, Ms. Anne Marie Allen.
Oh, absolutely.
She also serves as the vice president, current vice president and co-captain of the Mystic Crew of Fem Fatale, Anne Marie Allen, and as well as Ms. Denise Washington, who helped form the Crown Jew with Ms. Barbara Lason Keller, Denise Washington.
Anne used to walk me to school when I was a little boy.
Don't tell her age.
Let's take our pick.
All the queens.
Councilmembers, we're now going to page 86.
Page 86.
At the bottom of the...
Ladies and gentlemen, if you could exit the chamber so we could try and get out of here in a reasonable hour.
Thank y'all for being here. We love y'all.
We're at the bottom of...
See you soon. Sorry, Madam Clerk, go ahead.
We're at the bottom of page 86. We have motion M. 2459 by councilmembers King and Moreno, directing the City Planning Commission to conduct a public hearing to amend and re-ordain ordinance number 4,264 MCS, amended by ordinance number 26,413 MCS as amended, the comprehensive zoning ordinance of the city of New Orleans to amend Article 19 to establish a new interim zoning district to be named the Convenience Center Interim Zoning District, IZD. The intent of the district area of applicability and limitations on usage shall be as follows. A.
Madam Clerk, you don't, you're going to interpret the whole thing.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
So, thank you, thank you, Madam Clerk. We're actually going to withdraw this and introduce a motion on ordinance on first read. But I just, I invited the mayor of Gretna, Mayor Constance, and the council member, Councilmember Smith, to discuss the importance of what we're trying to do, which is to bring a convenience center to the West Bank. Going to be a partnership with the Algiers, with the city of New Orleans and then Algiers, and with the city of Gretna. So just to kind of highlight the importance of this, I asked the mayor and the councilman to come and speak. So the floor is yours, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Smith.
Thank you so much, truly. I appreciate the opportunity, Councilman King. It's been an incredible relationship for the past year in discussions over possibilities at the foot of the West Bank. So I appreciate the opportunity to speak to the council members today. Councilman Rudy Smith is also here with me. It is his district that we are adjacent to from the Algiers line, and so he is here with me. About a year ago, maybe about two years ago, I've been working with a developer, Mr. Bowie Nguyen, who has developed the hotels at the foot of the West Bank Expressway at the Gretna Line. The two hotels that were first built there about seven years ago, that is the Courtyard Mary the Courtyard Marriott as well as the Homewood Suites. There is a third hotel that was slated to be constructed. It's a Residence Inn by Marriott, um, and Mr. Bowie Nguyen called me about a year and a half ago and said, "I've heard that the Hendy site is going to be reactivated, so I am going to pull back on the third hotel." I don't really know what that means, um, being right adjacent to, uh, what he's proposing as the third hotel, as well as the possibility of a small conference center at the foot of the West Bank Expressway. At that point, I called councilmen at the time, and we looked further into what was, um, the plan of action. And through the course of the last year and a half, I've bent his ear multiple times, um, expressed to him the importance of the West Bank Expressway as we enter it from the high-rise and as we cross the Crescent City connection, and as we greet people at the foot of the Expressway and how important I thought this development could be, um, to not just the Algiers and to his district, but to the City of Gretna and the entirety of the West Bank as a whole. The councilman for Jefferson Parish is also aware of the project, um, as far as the hotel and the conference center, and was extremely supportive of that and would love to see that continue. So, through the course of our relationship, we looked at where can we engage a drop-off site and, and try and come together and collaborate and work together on this? And so, we have done a lot of, um, a lot of exploration. Our Public Utilities Yard, as you may or may not know, sits at Burmaster at the foot of, um, the City of Gretna, where New Orleans meets Gretna on Burmaster. And we recently purchased some additional property there so that we could expand the public utilities, um, services. During that course of exploration, we also looked into a, uh, transfer site at that location, which would sit at the property line of New Orleans and Gretna. It would engage, we began original engineering, um, looking at just ten percent plans of the amount of space that it would take and the resources that we would need. And we began that about three or four months ago with our city engineer. We have looked at, um, what is needed in comparison to, um, what you may not be familiar with or may be familiar with, the Jefferson Parish Transfer Yard, which sits, sits, um, close to Ames Boulevard and La Palco Boulevard. And that is what, um, our garbage contractor and our city engineers would believe to be what is needed, uh, for capacity based on population of Algiers and the City of Gretna. It's a transfer center that, um, hauls or pulls between three hundred and three hundred fifty pulls per month from that transfer center. It is not only accepting today, um, bulk waste, but also has, um, ability to accept tires, used oil, and other, um, paint, paint, um, products and other waste products that are difficult to dispose of. That would be also a part of this transfer site. It is, um, on the dollar of the City of Gretna for development. I'm not asking for any, any, you know, financial obligation from the City of New Orleans. It would be a part of our contract with, um, the city. Unfortunately, to speak to dollars and cents is premature today because this is the year we are going out for bid and request for proposals on a new contract. Our garbage contract ends this year. We are looking to have this transfer center to be operated as a part of our englobo contract for, um, pickup and disposal of the entirety for our garbage services. Um, I'm happy to answer questions, um, and I'm happy to give as much information as I can at this point in time. But the big picture is, I'm looking forward, I think it would be a tremendous collaboration for us, um, while we're divided parish lines, we're one West Bank. I think it would be tremendously, uh, important that we do what we can to invigorate the foot of the bridge and the economics of the West Bank Expressway. And we believe wholeheartedly that Algiers and Gretna could benefit financially from the development that's possible there at the foot of the bridge.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Smith?
Yes, I'd just like to piggyback off of what the mayor said, and, um, it's going to, the way I see it, it's a win-win situation where we can raise the quality of life in the area. Uh, the proposed incinerator there would be right across the street from a school and also residential area, so, uh, that's just not something that we want. If you can convert it into commercial and real, real estate, I mean, a commercial and real estate, uh, it would be tremendous, uh, boost to the area and would be in connection with the present hotels and the new hotel, and also with the Oakwood Shopping Center there. So, it would be something that as you come off the ramp off the high-rise, it would be something that would be have great curb appeal rather than have a negative appeal if it was an incinerator. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rudy Smith. We have Councilmember Morell followed by Councilmember Thomas.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, Councilmember. I appreciate y'all, appreciate y'all being here today. I think that it's important for us to acknowledge that when you're talking about the West Bank community, and the mayor and I have worked together for years when I was a senator because I pretty much represented the length of the West Bank, that it is really a holistic community where everyone really does truly try to work together and try to be good neighbors. And just as if there were developments that would negatively impact Algiers and neighboring Gretna, this is an instance where it's so important for our community across the West Bank to be in conversations because when we can work together to secure a necessary transfer site without negatively impacting our neighbors, and further, like you said, council member, commercial development on that site benefits Algiers and Gretna versus having a transfer station at that site, which would be to the detriment of development for Algiers and for Gretna. And if we can find a way as an entire West Bank community to work together in collaboration to address the obvious need for a transfer station, but also promote commercial development that would help both our communities, we should absolutely do everything possible to make that happen. So, thank y'all for being here today. I really appreciate it. I appreciate Councilman King's leadership on trying to bring everyone together to find a win-win solution, and I look forward to supporting this measure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
I think this is the same issue Councilmember King, you and I spoke about several months ago, right? Yeah, and, uh, it's just good to see you, uh, taking the lead on this piece. It always makes sense to work with our neighbors to work out the best possible solution for everyone, so I'm just glad that Councilmember King and Moreno are, uh, co-sponsoring this to make sure that something gets done, uh, to help do what's best for everybody. And Madam Mayor and Councilmember, thank y'all for what y'all do for y'all service and y'all people. Y'all represent Woodstone as one of the best cities in America, so God bless y'all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, again, we're withdrawing this from, from the agenda. We will introduce it on first read and vote for it formally at the next council episode. Madam Mayor, Councilmember, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you so much, and I just want to say, you Orr, you should be commended for your effort. I am so proud of you and thank you for working along with us. We've had several meetings together. I respect you and your, Algiers is, should be grateful to have your leadership, so thank you.
I appreciate it.
West Bank, West Bank God.
Thank you very much.
Archbishop Shawgrad.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I appreciate it.
Thank y'all so much.
I don't think there's been many shout-outs in this, uh, chamber, so, uh, Mr. Grand Marshall. Thank you, Madam Clerk, with that.
Councilmembers, we now need to go to page eighty-five. At the bottom of the page, Resolution R. twenty-four forty-nine by council members Morell, Moreno, Jeruso, King, and Thomas. Joint application of Delta State Utilities Number LLC and Entergy New Orleans LLC authorizing Delta State Utilities to operate as jurisdictional natural gas local distribution company. Resolution and order establishing a period of intervention and other procedural requirements for the consideration of the joint application, docket number UD twenty-four oh-one.
Uh, thank you, uh, thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there any representatives from Delta here today? I didn't see any. Oh, there they are. Come on up for a second. For those who are watching and did not watch the utilities meeting, um, this is simply the first step in the procedural schedule, um, to look into the potential sale of Entergy, Entergy New Orleans's gas assets to Delta States. This is, I thought it'd be nice to do purely introduction, just to say who you are, who you represent, but this begins the utility committee and the council doing the procedural schedule to review the sale, so just an introduction would be sufficient at this point.
Sure. Uh, my name's Ryan King. I'm here on behalf of Delta States Utilities. Uh, Delta States is a portfolio company of Bernhardt Capital Partners, who is working on this transaction with Energy. We're excited to further invest in New Orleans and these, uh, gas utility assets and look forward to working with you all through this, uh, procedure and working with Kira's staff.
Okay. Well, thank you. Are there any comments? I don't see any. Okay. No comments, I'll move to adopt the, the resolution. Second by Councilmember Jeruso, please vote your machines. Five yays, no nays, the measure's adopted. Thank you for being here today, I appreciate it.
We're now on top of page. We're going to page twenty-one. Twenty-one. We have a legislative grouping. Councilmember Jeruso, I'm going to read them all into the record, and we'll vote on each one separate.
Yes, ma'am.
We're on page twenty-one, a legislative grouping. A HDLC appeal of Douglas L. Cornic for Crash Car Wash Blues LLC requesting to appeal a historic district landmark commission's decision of denial of the application for demolition for the property located at fifty-five sixteen Chappatula Street. We have motion M. twenty-four forty-three by Councilmember Jeruso granting the applicant's request for property located at fifty-five sixteen Chappatula Street. On page twenty-two, another legislative grouping. HDLC appeal of Douglas L. Cornic for Car Wash Blues LLC requesting to appeal a historic district landmark commission's decision of denial of the application for demolition for the property located at fifty-five eighteen Chappatula Street. Motion M. twenty-four forty-four by Councilmember Jeruso granting the applicant's request for property located at fifty-five eighteen Chappatula Street. On top of page twenty-three, legislative grouping. The HDLC appeal of Douglas L. Cornic for Car Wash Blues LLC requesting, uh, appeal the historic district landmark commission's decision of denial of the application for demolition for the property located at fifty-five twenty-four Chappatula Street. Motion M. twenty-four forty-five by Councilmember Jeruso granting the applicant's request for property located at fifty-five twenty-four Chappatula Street.
Thank you. Before Ms. Burke gets started, because these three matters are related to one another, I'm going to consolidate them for speaking purposes, and my understanding is there's two people here live speaking opposition. I have five cards from the opposition, but they're going to offer three people, so what I'll do is I'll offer everybody three minutes who has cards. So, in other words, rather than having two minutes stop, two minutes stop, two minutes stop, we'll take everything up at one time for public comment, and then we'll vote on each item seriatum. Does that make sense? Yes. I have three minutes for each speaker. Thank you. Ms. Burke?
Fifty-five fourteen dash twenty-four Chappatula Street are three contributing rated historic structures located in the Uptown Partial Control Demolition Review District in the Uptown National Register Historic District. Car Wash Blues purchased fifty-five fourteen dash sixteen and fifty-five eighteen dash twenty Chappatula Street in two thousand and seven for a total of four hundred and ninety-five thousand. They later purchased fifty-five twenty-two dash twenty-four Chappatula Street in two thousand and twelve for four hundred thousand. Currently, the certified assessor's data lists the combined value of the properties as approximately one point two million dollars. The historic structures make up over half of the value, coming in at six hundred and eighty-five thousand. Until the past year, these charming historic structures provided eight housing units in Uptown New Orleans, a much-desired area of the city. Despite all of this, the property owners, Car Wash Blues LLC, have for the past decade neglected the buildings. Since two thousand and fourteen, when the city council denied the demolition of fifty-five eighteen dash twenty and fifty-five twenty-two dash twenty-four Chappatula Street, the owners seemingly deferred all care or maintenance of the properties until they were deemed unlivable by the tenants, according to their representative, Doug Conkey. Currently vacant, the property owners would like to demolish the structures to continue the concrete paving of the Uptown Car Wash in order to expand their custom automobile detailing concern. While these buildings have unfortunately been surrounded by the Uptown Car Wash property, directly across Chappatula Street, three similar structures of the same era and Eastlake style remain in excellent condition, along with two mid-nineteenth-century cornered commercial properties at either end, resulting in a fairly intact historic walkface. While it is unfortunate that the Uptown Car Wash property and extensive paving that goes along with it surround what remains of the original historic fabric, that is certainly no justification for the destruction of the buildings that remain. Chappatula Street is not a veteran's highway, nor should we be keen on making it so. At their meeting of December sixth, two thousand and twenty-three, the New Orleans HDLC voted unanimously to deny these demolitions, as should the city council. These historic structures are in fair condition and can easily be renovated and returned to commerce. Approving their demolition would reward cynical negligent property owners operating in bad faith. The HDLC encourages the city council to uphold the HDLC denial of demolition.
Thank you, Ms. Burke. All right. So, first up will be Ms. Nolan Wheatley. You'll have thirty minutes, thirty minutes, three minutes. Well, I guess all the other things took thirty minutes, so that's where my mind is. Um, and then Ms. Johnson, you'll have three minutes. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Marynell Nolan Wheatley with the Preservation Resource Center of New Orleans, nine-two-three Chappatula Street. Blight is a citywide problem, and dealing with neglected properties should be a top priority. The row of vacant buildings in the fifty-five hundred block of Chappatulas could and should be restored. The PRC has been monitoring the situation since the HDLC denied the application for demolition at their meeting on December sixth, and we have appreciated the information provided by HDLC staff, councilmember Jeruso's office, interested residents, the owner's representative, and the neighborhood participation process. The three appeals being discussed today have put everyone, including the city council, in a tough position because the vacant row has become a long-term nuisance. So, considering alternatives to demolition can easily be misconstrued as an attempt to save blight. But we can't ignore what we know about the origins of this situation. We know that the owners have had these properties for over a decade. We know that soon after purchasing the properties, they applied to demolish them. We know that after that was unsuccessful, they neglected the properties for years until the condition of the buildings became bad enough to again present demolition as a solution. A negligent owner is responsible for this hit to historic housing, housing that this city could use, and we continue to be concerned with rewarding negligence. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Johnson?
Susan Johnson, twenty-eight twenty-two LePage Street, Historic New Orleans Neighborhoods LLC, Town of Calhoun Watch LLC. I'm not paid to be here. I want to point out that co-owner John Drennan has worked without a permit three times on doubles to dorms for developer Marcy Surphus from Southern California. He was cited. He was cited just twice on 1200 Block of Pine and the 1800 Block of Ottoman Street. I know this because I'm the one who reported him. So, bad actor right off the bat. As for 5500 Block of Chapatulas, blight, demolition by neglect is a business strategy. And we have seen overturnings of, we have seen overturnings by appeal of HDLC decisions recently. Jim Brown, 1031 Annunciation appealed to the council on October 5, 2023. St. Mary's Dominican did it with 771618 Colapiss appealed on September 7, which is up for a conditional use today. This, these were granted by the city council and as Louisiana Landmarks Society pointed out, naming this issue of overturning of demolitions as an endangered site in 2023. HDLC denies demolitions, city council overturns them. I'm sorry, ladies and gentlemen, but, but in overturning these such demolitions, which decisions by HDLC, which is a very stalwart body of, of experts, you are becoming, or you risk becoming, part of the development team. And I wish you would consider this because it's not good for the city. Okay? And there's a reason for the HDLC. You're hindering the mission of the HDLC with this constant thwarting
Thirty seconds.
Of, of their decisions, okay? Architect Daniel Samuels went and looked at the buildings about a month ago. They're in good condition, except for the roofs. They were in good condition when they were purchased in 2007. And the first two, and then it's demolition by neglect and in granting this appeal, you are rewarding bad actions and again, becoming part of their team.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. That's your time. Mr. Burnside, you want to speak?
I have a deep urge to talk about demo by neglect because it affects my neighborhood a great deal, but I don't know enough about the 5500 block of Chapatulas to directly speak to that issue at that spot. I will say the city doesn't issue enough code enforcement fines and infringement on demo by neglect. It seems to be sort of ignored. What I will say is that if we're demoing eight housing units at this particular location, then part of granting this waiver or overruling HDLC should have been, and I would argue still could be, a commitment on the part of developer to create eight affordable housing units, either on that larger site somewhere or somewhere in the city. Because as we demonstrate again and again, housing is treated poorly in this city. And we replace housing with childcare centers, we replace housing with bars, we replace housing with law offices. Housing seems to be sort of the go-to get rid of and replace options. And if we believe we have affordable housing crisis, and if we believe poor people should not live under bridges, then perhaps developers who have an economic incentive to change housing into something else should be encouraged to help supply alternative housing somewhere at some place.
Thank you, Mr. Burnside. I tell you one place where we agree is that code enforcement moves too slowly on enforcement and things it ought to be doing, and I'll be talking about the ordinance I filed when we defer it today. All right. So in support, Dion Parker, Corey, I'm sorry, I can't read your last name, Richard Cortezes, Doug Conkey, and Michael Winsburg. So whatever order you guys want to go. Mr. Cortezes?
Thank you, Councilman Jeruso, council members. I'm gonna be semi-brief. So, Richard Cortezes, 201 St. Charles Avenue, on behalf of the owners. Council members, first of all, let me just state this. The, the premise for the denial by the HDLC or their recommendation to deny the ability to demolish these properties is based on a belief that the area would be altered if these dilapidated structures were removed. Their logic, I think, is incorrect. This area already has high commercial and industrial traffic. We all know that. The master plan in the CZO allows for this use, as well as the intended use and expansion. And talking, and to talk about altering the character, the subject dilapidated properties already abut a car wash. They're surrounded by a car wash and industrial use. Across the street is a bar, two blocks away is a, is a strip mall, a bank, a restaurant, a lumberyard. There's some industrial uses within a block. I would argue frankly that it would be derelict to force people to live at this site, given the traffic, the high commercial use, and lord knows the environmental impact to folks living there. Also, to Mr. Burnside's point, I agree that the housing shortage is obviously a problem that the city faces. The owners of this property have offered to donate the properties at another safer, better location for use for residential. It is inappropriate to have residential at this site, which is a former industrial site, highly commercial, highly trafficked. And so they're offering to move the properties or the salvageable parts of the property to another location. So again, I would ask that you overrule the error of the HDLC and allow the responsible business, which has never been cited, to continue its responsible business. Thank you.
Mr. Cortezes, can you hang on one second? Councilmember Harris has a question.
Yep, Mr. Cortezes, good to see you. Who have you offered to make the donations to or the salvageable parts? Do you have an entity that you specifically approach?
Actually, my understanding is that they had those conversations with the PRC. Now, they can correct me if I'm mistaken, but it's the PRC. Mr. Conkey, you may want to address that, but we have actually communications that suggest that. And, and, and I'll be on the record here to tell you that we've offered, and we're offering, the salvageable parts of the property to the PRC.
What is the timeline of the demolition and any agreement that you can come with the PRC? Because the PRC has actually taken me up on our offer to salvage portions of historic property before. So is there a timeline on demolition where y'all might come to that agreement? I'm not trying to hold this up.
We can come to that agreement, but, but, but I can just tell you, I can attest to you on the record right now that we would work on that agreement. I would ask that you allow us to move forward with the demolition. But I mean, we've made that gesture and we will continue to make that gesture, and we will continue to work with them on the, on, on giving them the, the salvageable parts of the property.
Yeah, I mean, listen, I, I think that's a good result if, it sounds like the demolition's gonna go through, but I, I do think that y'all should probably work together to try to take the part off.
Absolutely, we're more than happy to do it.
That can be salvageable, or move the buildings to an area, work with Habitat to see if they can possibly take the building.
Absolutely, we're happy to do that. I'm on the record to, to commit to that on behalf of the owners.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Conkey, Mr. Winsburg, Dion, and Corey.
Hello, Doug Conkey, 8518 Oak Street. That conversation took place at the HDLC meeting, where HDLC said they don't want to move houses anymore because they get damaged in transit. So just to clarify that. When this was filed, I spent the better part of two weeks getting signatures in and around the neighborhood. I did not have a single person oppose the process. They were all interested in getting the blight out of the neighborhood. We have the support on our petition of every property owner in those three blocks of Chapatulas, but two that are vacant houses, I couldn't locate the owners. Then there's a short-term rental owned by an out-of-state owner, and the assessor does not have a current address. Otherwise, every tenant and every owner in those blocks supports this petition. So I've done a lot of research. I don't need to take your time. I'm here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Mr. Conkey, the next step, if the demolition is granted, is to move forward with conditional use. Is that correct?
We filed for building permit for the new tents, a re-subdivision to consolidate the five lots into one, the conditional use and the demolition permit. We filed all of those simultaneously as we were directed.
Yeah, I mean, the reason why I'm asking is because Mr. Cortezes just made an assertion that he wants to help with the salvageable materials. The conditional use is extraordinarily important to me as a way for neighbors to continue to weigh in and have their voices heard.
If I might, since 1953, this property's been sound light industrial, until 2015, when the city changed it to HUMU. It's, the use of that is very, very restrictive. We have to get a conditional use because the car wash itself would no longer be permitted. So it's there.
All right, thank you. All right, Mr. Winsburg, Dion, Corey.
I'm in support, but I, I don't have any.
You have any to add? Okay, thank you. Is Dion Parker?
Good afternoon, council. Dion Morel Parker here. I live at 5610 Laurel. I don't have any opposition into the destruction of the property. I think it's in deplorable condition as well. It's who wants to live by a car wash in their backyard? So I don't have any opposition, and my family's from the neighborhood, been there all our lives. Okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, Corey?
Hi, my name is Court Burlingame.
Oh, sorry.
No problem. I'm a resident nearby, 232 Nashville Avenue. I've lived there for about a year. I walk to and from the store, my dog as well. I see the houses, they're just in not good condition. I'm in support of getting rid of them. They're standalone with businesses with a car wash around them, plus all the sound from the trains and everything there. I can tell you by living there, it's not enjoyable, and I can't see why somebody would want that either, especially with the car wash right around it. They're just not in great condition. I support, you know, demolishing them and, you know, doing something else with the property.
Thank you very much. All right, colleagues, I know we've been here for a little bit, but I do want to talk some about this because I feel like some of the comments that have been made have been gratuitous and incomplete, and so I'd like to make sure the record is as clear as possible. Mr. Conkey noted, and I want to point out that based on the petition he gave to us, that most of the people who live in the area near here are in support. The green dots are obviously supportive, red dots not. I will add, we got one person on Eleanor and one person on Joseph last night who said they were opposed. I don't think that's reflected on the map, but in the interest of full transparency, I do want to note that it is not complete unanimity, but you have a lot of people who say that they are okay with this. As PRC pointed out, it is not lost on me that these structures are in poor shape, and I also worry about rewarding bad behavior with a demolition. With that said, I also have to look at the evidence that there are no open MPM cases and ultimately weigh who is being punished if we leave these blighted structures up. Is it the developers, owners, or is it nearby residents and businesses? If we were to allow these structures to sit vacant and rot until the city must declare them IDC, then we have to go through that process, which Mr. Burnside pointed out, takes a long time and is not easy. And I have to worry about whether or not these structures become dangerous in severe weather. You may say that sounds like a pipe dream, but we saw this situation play exactly out at 1230 Webster. And, and based on the history of what I have to weigh and worry about, that is a consideration for me. To add, I also agree with the comments that were made, next slide, that this is a commercial corridor that is bordered by industrial zoning districts. Here are some of the photos we took just this past week, and this is not the front end of a charming little neighborhood. Chapatulas in this area is heavily commercial. Next. I'd also like to point out that the existing zoning is historical urban mixed-use abutted by maritime, industrial, and commercial. And that means that is heavy use, that is, that is compatible with commercial use. I've heard that this could be affordable housing or desirable housing, but A, nobody's shown where the money will come from to make that happen. And B, next slide. HUMU is a commercially zoned district, which means these could be converted to commercial short-term rentals. And in a city where I feel like we hear all the time that we want to make housing available for people and not for short-term rentals, all the developers or applicants have to do is turn around and get a commercial license, and it's vested and it's theirs in time. My understanding, I would like a commitment on the record, Mr. Cortezes, that the owners are filing a deed prohibiting short-term rentals. Yes? Can you say it out loud? Sorry.
Yes.
Thank you. And the last thing for me, and I mentioned this when speaking with Mr. Conkey, is they must obtain the conditional use to expand the car wash. We've made it clear the conditional use will come with the provisos. And neighbors who were originally opposed to this have ultimately said they'd rather have a say in what goes on in their neighborhood. And having a conditional use process with provisos that neighbors weigh in on is something that they view as being important to them, rather than saying, "Well, just go develop it any way that you want to." We will obviously continue to work with the neighbors first and foremost, and anybody else who wants to be a stakeholder. And then as Councilmember Harris pointed out, we obviously want to see if the houses themselves can be moved, and if not, the salvageable materials. So that's it for me. Any online comments? None? All right. Well, then with that, I would move for approval on our first item. Yeah, 1B, motion 2443. Second by Councilmember King. Five yays, no nays. All right, we'll move to item 2B now. Motion 2444. Just wait for the machine to catch up. I'll move for approval. Second by Councilmember Thomas. Six yays, no nays. And next, item 3B, motion M 2445. Again, I'll move for approval. Second by Councilmember King. Waiting on one more. Six yays, no nays. Thank you all very much.
Councilmembers, we're now going to page 56. We have a legislative grouping, zoning docket 324, City Council.
Madam clerk, I'd asked respectfully if the issue for the counter grouping for Chief Sanchez can have come up. If there was objection to that, no one didn't let me know, but I guess that's the way it is.
Okay, well, I was going to go to 17 and then go to yours.
Okay, all right.
All right. Zoning docket 324, City Council motion M 23528, requesting a conditional use to prevent a small childcare center in an HURD2 historic urban two-family residential district on square 32, lots 11 through 14, in the 5th Municipal District bounded by Olivier Street, Alix Street, Pelican Avenue, and Valette Street. Municipal address is 342 Olivier Street. The recommendation of the City Planning Commission being for approval, subject to five provisos. We have motion M 2457, Councilmember King, approving the applicant's conditional use request for property located at 342 Olivier Street on zoning docket 324, subject to five provisos by City Planning Commission.
CPC, thank you, Anna Clark.
Thank you, council member. This is a proposal to use the first floor of the Knights of Columbus Building in Algiers Point as a childcare center. The planning commission supports this. This is a good use of, of what really is an institutional building already for community-serving purposes. We heard speakers in support at the planning commission meeting. We did not hear any neighborhood objection. And based on that, the planning commission recommends approval with those provisos.
All right, we have the comment card. Liza Drennan?
Hello, I'm Liza Drennan at 727 Patterson in Algiers Point. I'm here to represent. Uh, hello, I'm Liza Drennan at 727 Patterson in Algiers Point. I'm here to represent the Crescent School to move into 342 Olivier. Um, I just want to say thank you for all the help so far, and if you have any questions, I'm here.
Any questions, any comments from the, any online comments? Do you have online comments?
Yeah, I mean, at some point I need.
Online comments?
How many?
Four.
Okay.
First comment is from Logan Roberts. I'm writing in support of conditional use for the Crescent School. The Crescent School and its founders are an integral part of the Algiers Point community and an asset to the community. I support their continued growth in Algiers Point and their expansion into the new building.
Ms. Anita, are they all in favor?
Yes.
Okay, well, just put them into the record, and I'll move to adopt. Second, by Councilmember Morell, six yays, no nays. Motion's adopted, thank you.
Councilmembers, we're now going to page 81. We have motion line over M2437 by Councilmember Thomas by request. Councilmember, we need to suspend rule 57.
What page are we going to?
81, thank you. Uh, move to suspend the rules, please. Motion to suspend.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember King, motion received on suspension of the rule. All in favor?
Aye.
Let the record record then. All against.
We have motion, uh, motion line over M2437 by Councilmember Thomas by request, adding the President of the Council as a signatory to the contract between the City of New Orleans and Connor Group LLC, and authorizing the President of the Council to sign the professional services agreement between the City of New Orleans and Connor Group LLC, Exhibit 8.
Uh, Madam Clerk, first of all, uh, and thank you guys for coming again. This was actually heard at the committee meeting, but because it wasn't a quorum, we couldn't get a formal vote, uh, to move it forward. So that really, if we had had that, I don't even see why we would have to hear this again, but it was heard, but heard at the committee meeting without a quorum. Any questions from any Councilmembers at that? I would move adoption. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Second by me, first by me, second by Councilmember Harris. All in favor, please?
Aye.
Aye, it's have it's order. Guys, thank you all so much.
Thank you.
And thank you for waiting.
Councilmembers, do you want me to go to the consent agenda or continue in land use?
Land use.
All right, all right. We're now on top of page 24. The HDLC appeal of 1426 St. Bernard Avenue has been withdrawn. We received a letter from the applicant.
In order.
We have a legislative grouping, the HDLC appeal of Christopher E. Johnson, Architect, LLC, AIA, and Corb Lee, G A, Owner-Principal, requesting to appeal the Historic District Landmark Commission's decision of no action regarding the renovation for property located at 1331 Nashville Avenue. And on top of page 25, we have motion M2446 by Councilmember Jeruso, granting and approving the applicant's request for demolition for property located at 1331 Nashville Avenue.
Thank you. Ms. Burke?
1331 Nashville Avenue is a contributing, contributing rated structure located in the uptown partial-control demolition-only review district. FEMA research dates the construction of 1331 Nashville Avenue to approximately 1885 to 1895.
Claire?
The building first appears on the Sanborn Fire Insurance Map in 1909. The original primary facade was a two-bay single shotgun with a front porch and side bump out at the rear. On the 1951 Fire Insurance Map, the building appears to have retained its front porch en massing, with the exception of the rear corner addition. At some point in the later part of the 20th century, the front porch was enclosed and the entry sequence was moved to the rear side porch. The current proposal restores a portion of the original front porch and encloses the side porch. While the proposal returns the entry sequence to the primary facade of the building and restores a portion of the front porch, continued alterations to the building will further erode the architectural integrity and significance of the structure. The HDLC recommends that the front, uh, bathroom be relocated and the front porch and facade fully restored. At their meeting of January 3rd, 2024, the Commission reviewed the proposed demolition. Jennifer Green made a motion to deny the application. The motion seconded by Lee Bressler failed to pass, resulting in no action being taken on this application.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Johnson, I know you're here to speak, but can you get a comment for whatever reason? Would you mind filling out another one? I don't have one for you.
I'll fill out a comment card as the applicant. I wanted to be available to answer questions, of course. Uh, my name is Christopher Johnson. I'm the architect of record for this renovation. And I want to say thank you for Councilmember Jeruso's time to discuss this project. We believe that it is in keeping with the original intention of the house to move, or to re-engage the front property line and Nashville Avenue facade to create our front door where it historically was. And we thank you for your vote of, uh, a motion to approve.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Johnson, you have two minutes.
Susan Johnson, 2822 LaPage Street, Historic New Orleans Neighborhoods LLC. I'm not paid to be here. I support the original motion by Commissioner Jennifer Green, as seconded by Lee Bressler. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, as HDLC noted, that, that did not pass. Um, I would say the request would essentially reintroduce the main entrance to Nashville Avenue. While I understand this is a technical demolition request, the end result winds up being a house more closely aligned with the tout ensemble of the neighborhood. Yeah, some French for y'all. Um, and this will remain a single-family property with the same number of bathrooms and bedrooms, so I'll move to approve motion M2446. Seconded by Councilmember Harris, seeing no nays, six yays. Thank you.
We're now going to go to page 57. We have a legislative grouping, zoning docket 424, LaFang Pearl Inc., requesting a conditional use to permit a neighborhood commercial establishment in an H U R D one historic urban two-family residential district on square 77, lot 15A, in the 7th Municipal District, bounded by St. Charles Avenue, Cherokee, Cherokee Street, Hampson Street, and Lower Line Street. Municipal address 7457 St. Charles Avenue. The recommendation of the City Planning Commission being for approval, subject to two provisos. We have motion M2447 by Councilmember Jeruso, approving the applicant's conditional use to permit for property located at 7457 St. Charles Avenue, zoning docket 424, with modifications to the second proviso, which shall be amended to read as follows. Number two, except as provided in 2. D below, the applicant shall comply with the applicable standards of Article 20, Section 20.3. N N. D, the only use permitted within this neighborhood commercial establishment shall be art gallery.
Thank you. Mr. Kroll?
Thank you, Councilmember. This application affects, uh, a historic commercial building at the corner of St. Charles and Cherokee Street. Uh, it's a property that has long had residential zoning despite its commercial, uh, physical character, uh, but it went vacant for, uh, several months and, and lost its non-conforming commercial status at this time. So this current proposal is a request to restore its commercial status through not a zoning change, but a conditional use, uh, while retaining the underlying residential zoning. Uh, the proposal is to use it as a photography studio, which is perhaps the least intense commercial use imaginable, uh, and would restore it, you know, to have a build, a, a use, I should say, that, that matches its physical character. Given that, the Planning Commission finds that to be an appropriate use of this neighborhood commercial establishment tool and recommends approval.
Thank you, Mr. Kroll. Mr. Palet, do you want to speak, sir?
You have two minutes.
Good afternoon. My name's Joshua Mann Palet. I own a gallery for fine photography, which is currently located at 241 Charter Street in the French Quarter. But I'm having the opportunity to move up to St. Charles Avenue. I promise you, it's going to be a great site. I've been in, I was born in New Orleans. I've been in business since 1975. Will continue to do great work at our new location.
Thank you, sir. Um, all right, so members, uh, Councilmember Harris just leaned over to me and said, "Is this the property that's been abandoned for so long?" And the answer is yes. This is the third conditional use request for this property over my six years in office. And this is the first request where the neighbors have given their full-throated support. As Mr. Kroll explained, this is a conditional use request to relocate a gallery for fine photography. The gallery will follow a typical 10 a.m. to 6 p.m. schedule, accepts show openings three or four times per year. As Mr. Kroll said already, this is about one of the least intensive commercial uses you can have abutting in a neighborhood. To ease neighbors' concerns, we've also added a proviso limiting the conditional use to an art gallery, so it can't be a bait and switch. Not that you would ever intend that, but let's make so. And also, I want to thank the applicant, famed photographer Joshua Mann Palet, his wife Paige Palet, for working with the neighbors for such a long time. So with that, I will move to approve, uh, motion 2447. Seconded by Councilmember Harris. This is an exciting thing for the neighborhood and the district. Six yays, no nays.
Councilmembers, we're going to page 20 for the beginning of the regular agenda. We have a legislative grouping, a communication from Winston Fior, Director of Land Use and Constituent Affairs Liaison, Councilmember Freddie King III, District C, transmitting the Mayor's Office of Economic Development's recommendation of disapproval and requesting the scheduling of a public hearing for the following restoration of tax abatement application. RTA application renewal of 939 Auberville Street has been deferred to February 22nd. RTA application 1001 Canal Street, 1015 Canal LLC. Resolution R2453 by Councilmember King. A resolution approving RTA application 1001 Canal Street, 1015 Canal LLC.
Thank you, madam, Madam Clerk. Uh, we have some comments from, they'll be coming from, uh, Hammy Hollum, John Williams, and Mr. Richard Cortezis coming that up.
Apologies, Councilman. I was multitasking. Let me grab my notes real quick here. Thank you. Apologies, Council. Thank you again. Um, Councilmember, this RTA is related to a project on Canal Street. It's actually a very highly distressed area. Um, it's on a block that was disseminated by the disaster of the hard rock, you all may recall. Um, the, the, the project constitutes what's going to be is a major renovation of a four-story building from the ground floor up, uh, with commercial tenants on the ground floor. It's not going to be commercial short-term rentals. It's going to be a hotel and commercial retail on the ground floor. What's great about this project is that the current pre-improvement appraisal of this property is approximately about $7.9 million. After the renovation, the appraisals that we have, and this can be confirmed by the Office of Economic Development and the Restoration Tax Abatement Office, will be approximately $27 million, threefold. Estimated $15 million in construction investment with 12, a little over $12 million in direct construction costs, per the permit value that's on record with the city. This project is 100% locally owned. The owners are here and the architects here. Hammy Hollum and John Williams is the architect. Will create 41 construction jobs, 100% Orleans Parish, 19 permanent jobs, 100% Orleans Parish, and 2.4 million in additional sales taxes. The other thing that's really incredible about this, and it's a little bit unprecedented, is the DBE participation. The DBE participation, which has been confirmed, is 49.6. It's been verified by the RTA office that approximately 8 million of the 12 million will be in DBE contracts going to local DBE hires. The project meets all the goals of the RTA guidelines.
Thank you, Mr. Cortez. About that 50% DBE is, it's a pretty good number, and, uh, that's over $8 million to DBE contractors. So at this time, make a motion to adopt. Seconded by Councilmember Morell. Five yays. The motion is adopted, thank you.
We're now on page 25. We have a legislative grouping, HDLC appeal of Danielle C. Almond, Director of Project Management, Persona Triangle Signage Lighting Facilities Services, requesting to appeal the Historic District Landmark Commission's decision of denial to install new channel letter sign on a raceway for property located at 714 Canal Street. We, where's the, under suspension. We have motion M2451. We're drawing up. We're on page 25. Right. So we're withdrawing motion M2451.
And Madam Clerk, we'll need to suspend the rules to add the new motion.
Yes.
Um, so I'll go ahead and move to suspend the rules. I need a second.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember King. All in favor?
Aye.
And now we'll need to move to add it to the agenda. So I'll go ahead and make that motion once the computer catches up. Seconded by Councilmember King. All in favor? Yes, ma'am, thank you. All right, six yays. So the, uh, new motion is added. Eleanor, will you go ahead and brief us on, uh, this HDLC report?
Uh, while the HDLC understands that the owner does not wish to install this proposed sign directly onto the newly constructed storefront beam, the owner and the project architect could have contemplated this issue when designing the storefront, as signage was always going to be proposed at this location. All new signage along Canal Street has followed the design guidelines of the HDLC for signage, as the HDLC, the DDD, and the City of New Orleans work to improve the character and appearance of the historic Canal Street corridor. Approving a raceway at a single location at this point would make it difficult to deny them for others in the future installations, and is unfair to previous businesses that have worked to meet the design guidelines of the HDLC. At their meeting of January 3rd, 2024, the Commission reviewed the proposal and voted six to one to deny the application.
Okay, thank you, Eleanor. Um, Madam Clerk, I understand that you need to read the new motion into the record. Okay, let's do that, and then we'll get to public comment.
We have motion 2466 by Councilmember Harris. Be it moved by the Council of the City of New Orleans that the appeal of Danielle C. Almond of the Central Business District, Historic District Landmark Commission's denial of the application to install a new channel letter sign on a raceway at 714 Canal Street is hereby granted, subject to the proviso contained in the subsequent paragraph. Accordingly, the Central Business Historic District Landmark Commission's decision is overruled.
Okay, Councilmembers, I know this has been confusing, but what we were going to do was to deny the placement of the signage as denied, but because the applicant and Eleanor and my team worked together, they have come to a solution architecturally to meet the HDLC guidelines to install the signage on the building. So that's what the substitute motion does. So it's a win for everybody. And I see you shaking your head, and I assume that you are Danielle Arnard?
Danielle Almond.
Okay, you have two minutes.
First of all, I want to thank the Council and apologize. This is something that could have and should have been worked out in the HDLC review meeting that was scheduled the first week of January. Unfortunately, our local representative was unable to attend that meeting and chose not to notify the home office that he was unable to attend, or I would have come to New Orleans that week and appeared before them. So I want to apologize for taking up the Council's valuable time on this. And I also want to thank you, uh, for helping us to work this out. We will, we will and are willing to do anything necessary to meet the HDLC guidelines, uh, to get this thing up. Um, our client, it's sugar, really just wants to sell lots and lots of candy and pay lots and lots of sales taxes and add some sweetness to Mardi Gras.
Wonderful. That's, that's great. Wonderful, that's, that's great. Our next speaker is Jared Cohen, who I understand is the owner of the building.
Thank you, Councilmember Harris, it's a pleasure to meet you as well. I don't think we've had the pleasure of meeting in person, maybe in passing, but, but thank you. Liz, with your team, has been amazing, and working with HDLC to bring this over the top, and so we sincerely appreciate it. You know, I think, just speaking on behalf of Canal Street broadly, I understand you just approved the RTA, and we'll be coming before you for the same thing as well on our project. You know, raceways, we appreciate the concern from HDLC, but there's many, many other problems that we need to address on Canal Street, and this is the least of our problems, so thank you so much for, for working with us. I thought I was going to be coming here to plead to overturn this, and so I'm, I'm very happy that we could get this done, thank you.
Now, this is, I thank you, and I thank your architects. Eleanor, I thank you, and most importantly, I thank Elizabeth Holman from my team. This is what a real win for everybody looks like, and so with that, I'm going to go ahead and move to adopt. Seconded by Council President Moreno, all in favor. All right, so go sell some, I need one more vote. Five yeas, go sell some sugar and make some money. Yay.
The extension request of 500 piety has been withdrawn. We have zoning docket 8223 has been deferred to February 22nd. We're now on top of Page 27. A legislative grouping, zoning docket 8623, JR Foss Enterprises LLC, requesting an amendment to Article 12, Section 12.2.2.3 of the Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance to allow drive-through facilities to operate in conjunction with fast food restaurants in addition to pharmacies. The recommendation of the City Planning Commission being for modified approval. We have motion line over M2432 by Councilmember Harris, approving and granting the applicant's amendment request on zoning docket 8623.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, will you please brief us on the report?
Sure, I'm going to brief you on both this and the next item as they're related. Basically, the, the next item, which is for a drive-through facility on, on Canal Street, brings up a, kind of a quirk in the zoning regulations in the HUMU mixed-use district, where they do not allow for fast food restaurants to have drive-throughs. In general, that's a good intent, these districts are historic, they're densely developed, but the fact of the matter is that there are also many drive-throughs that exist, both at this location on Canal Street and, and elsewhere, that need to have some ability to modify or reuse existing facilities. And so, we're proposing the changes to the regulations in the HUMU district that allows for existing drive-through facilities to be repurposed, expanded, modified through the conditional use process, and along with that, recommending approval of the property specific application for this site on Canal.
Thank you, and thank you again for working with my team. This is an existing drive-through, I'm going to go ahead and move for item number 9B. Can I get a second? Seconded by Council President Moreno, all in favor. Seven yeas, thank you.
We're now on top of Page 28. A legislative grouping, zoning docket 8723, JR Foss Enterprises LLC, requesting an amendment to ordinance number 26,0762 MCS zoning docket 9415 to permit a fast food restaurant with drive-through facilities in an HUMU Historic Urban Neighborhood Mixed Use District and the HUC Historic Urban Corridor Use Restriction Overlay District located on Square 303, Lot 19A, in the Second Municipal District bounded by Canal, North Tonti, North Miro, and Iberville Street. Municipal address is 2321 through 2323 Canal Street. The recommendation of the City Planning Commission being for approval. Motion line over M2433 by Councilmember Harris, approving and granting the applicant's amendment request on zoning docket 8723.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, this is just the accompanying motion to allow conditional use for chicken and sides to utilize the existing drive-through. I've moved, I need a second. Are there any online comments? All right, all in favor, thank you. Councilmember King, seven yeas, thank you.
We're now on Page 29. Legislative grouping, zoning docket 8923 has been deferred to February 22nd. On the top of Page 30, motion line over M2436 has been deferred to February 22nd. As well as on Page 32, amendment to motion M2436 by Councilmember Jerusso has been withdrawn. And so... No, they're not doing that. We're now on top of Page 33. We have a legislative grouping, zoning docket 9023, City Council motion M23479, requesting an amendment to Article 21 of the Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance to consider regulations for hours of operation and density for parklets that are on blocks that are not zoned commercial or mixed-use from corner to corner, and to consider amending the district column associated with the permitted temporary use for parklets in Table 21.3, the recommendation of the City Planning Commission being for approval. And Councilmember has motion M2454. This motion has, it's on the agenda, and the public has had time to look at it, so I will not read it into the record.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, Councilmember Harris.
Yeah, just as usual, my husband owns, owns a business that owns a parklet, so I need to recuse myself.
All right, thank you. CPC?
This is a proposal to loosen the regulations around parklets to provide opportunities for additional parklets. Basically, it has five requests. Number one is create a parklet special exemption process to allow two additional parklets per block face for a possible total of three parklets per block face. The City Planning Commission supports this change with the addition of approval criteria that can inform decision-making for individual applications. Request two is to remove restrictions on residential zoning on both sides of the street. CBC recommends retaining the existing restrictions that do not allow parklets where there is residential zoning on either side of the street to protect residential quality of life. The third request is to allow a given business to have both a parklet and a sidewalk cafe that's not currently allowed. A business can have one or the other. The Planning Commission supports the change, provided that all requirements about size and location for both parklets and cafes are met. The fourth request is to allow micro breweries and micro distilleries to have parklets, as do restaurants and bars, and the Planning Commission supports this. A brewery taproom is not materially different from a bar, and so there should be consistent treatment as it relates to parklets. And then finally, there's a request to change the hours of operation allowed for parklets. The Planning Commission recommends retaining the existing restrictions which align with those of sidewalk cafes and food trucks. So in total, we recommend modified approval of this.
All right, thank you. Our stakeholder engagement on the future of parklets has been exhaustive. This text amendment motion balances the goals of parklet proponents and skeptics alike. In order to accommodate parklets that come online during the pilot program, with the exception of those in a French bar, this amendment permits up to one parklet per block face on the blocks that include residential zoning on either side of the street. This amendment also provides for up to three parklets per block face with council approval, but only one block, but only on blocks that are entirely non-residential, from corner to corner on both sides of the streets. With this, a move adoption.
Councilmember, we have one online comment?
I do apologize, though. Well, first, any online, any comments from the desk? Seeing and hearing none, no?
I've got a comment, just a question for CPC. As part of that approval process, do you guys take into account what the parklet will actually look like?
Yes, so, so number one, the approval applications will come directly to council.
Okay.
There are design guidelines that have been adopted, that have been created by a consultant with, at, at the best of the Office of Economic Development. If an individual parklet is adhering to those design guidelines, they can just go ahead and get a permit. If the parklet is not adhering to those design guidelines, they have to go through a designer view process administered by the Planning Commission. So in either case, there's really a control on the design of the parklet so that there is a quality design.
Well, because, I mean, obviously, I'm sure you guys have heard of the City Planning Commission, there certainly is, and I, I do support the motion in front of us, but there certainly is a lot of concerns with quality control in that you see people who have invested to make kind of an outdoor patio space which seems more secure and more aesthetically pleasing than the people who kind of put up glorified traffic cones and a picnic bench. And I guess from, I know typically from City Planning Commission, you guys push for consistency in that approval process, whether it be at the council or the City Planning Commission, as we move forward and look at consistency, what is the basic design supposed to be? Is it just kind of still the whatever you want to put up, or are there some basic guidelines that y'all put in place?
No, there, there are basic guidelines. What you're referencing predates the current design standards. But essentially, there's a publication that essentially gives a kit of parts, an average design should have this element, that element, and the third element, so that there is a cohesiveness in terms of design, materiality, and functionality, and, and to really address what you've described, which is something that looks sort of, you know, very ad hoc to replace that with a more thought-through, consistent design scheme. So those regulations are in place. To date, there's been very, there have been very few new parklet applications, so there hasn't been quite the uptake of it that, that we've expected to see, but the regulations are in place so that as new ones come online, there is appropriateness in design.
Right, I mean, like I said, I support what Councilman King is bringing forward, because I do see people who have invested in building the more aesthetically pleasing sort of secure structure parklet versus kind of what we saw initially, which was cones and a patio. And I think that bringing consistency to going forward with what we're going to do with parklets if we're going to have them, that expectation that if you're going to basically utilize the space, it has to be brought to a certain standard, I think that'll bring consistency to what we see with parklets across the city.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, well, the online comment?
This is from Lindsay Littlefield, who says, "I strongly oppose approval of this amendment as this council does, has done very little else to maintain the residential character of our neighborhoods. It would be nice if any of our council, city council members at least pretended to care about stopping Freddie King from converting every square inch of this city's residential neighborhoods into commercial areas." That's it.
Just for the record, there was a meeting with the overwhelming majority of people supporting this idea. So with that, I make a motion to adopt. Seconded by Councilmember Morell. Five yeas, one recusing, thank you. This is a councilman? I'm sorry, six? Councilman Green?
I just wanted to, um, wait.
He didn't come up in terms of vote at all. So six yeas, one recusing. Councilman Green?
That's all right, council, well, no, I'm going to say it. I just want to applaud you for the time that you've taken on such an important issue and your consideration of residential and commercial interest in making sure that the citizens had an opportunity to submit their recommendations. And I know that you are very concerned about the integrity of our residential neighborhoods, and I look forward to continuing to work with you on issues such as this, for example, just as a council member, because I know of your concern relative to residential neighborhoods and maintaining them well. Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Green.
We're now on Page 43. A legislative grouping, zoning docket 9123, ABC NOLA LLC, requesting a zoning change from an HU Historic Urban Two-Family Residential District to a C1 General Commercial District located on Square F, Vindham Place, Port Lot 8, in the Sixth Municipal District bounded by South Norman C. Francis Parkway, Grape Street, Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard, and Vindham, Vindom Place. Municipal address 1601 through 1603, South Nor, Norman, South Norman C. Francis Parkway. The recommendation of the City Planning Commission being for denial. We have motion line over M2435 has been withdrawn.
Order.
We're on top of Page 44. We have motion M2452 by Councilmember Harris, approving the applicant's zoning change request for property located at 1601 through 1603, South Norman C. Francis Parkway, zoning docket 9123.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This motion would approve the request to change an HURD1 Historic Urban Two-Family Residential District to a C1 General Commercial District. The purpose of this zoning change would be to allow for office space. According to the applicant, approving the zoning change would save the site from remaining in its dilapidated state, and there are commercial establishments in close proximity to this site. Stephen, will you brief us on the CPC report?
Sure, so, so you captured a lot of the background. This is on the edge of a C1 district that applies along Earhart and Martin Luther King. It is a residential property, and so in evaluating this, the Planning Commission is tasked with looking at this through the, both the lens of its master plan, which gives us a residential designation, and its spot zoning policy, which does not support sort of the one-off rezoning of properties. And both of those considerations lead to a denial recommendation. The Planning Commission also heard a significant amount of neighborhood opposition to this. I think there were concerns about increased paving, concerns about increased commercial activity, and the like, and so, given those comments, the Planning Commission recommends denial of this application.
Thank you, Stephen. I have three comment cards. Do we have any online comments, just so I know? Okay, so the first is from Jacob Glover, and everyone has two minutes.
Great. Good afternoon, councilmembers. My name is Jacob Glover, I'm one of the owners of the, the property here on Norman Francis. There's a number of issues regarding this request I'd love to touch on, but in the interest of time, obviously, I'd like to just dial into a couple of the criterion under Article 4, Section 2E, which as I'm sure you all know are, are intended to sort of set the framework for decision-making on this type of request. So the first question I'd like to dial into is, does the proposed amendment provide a more workable way to achieve the intent and purposes of this ordinance and the master plan? I think we, we absolutely satisfy this criteria. There's a number of sort of sub-criteria below that, so I'll just key into a few of those. The first one being to promote efficiency and economy in the process of development. I think we absolutely accomplish that here. To provide functional public utilities and facilities, again, absolutely yes, our proposal is to take a ground floor space, which has been gutted since Katrina, and return it to commerce as a public facility. And the last one is to preserve and enhance the value of structures, and again, I think it's easy to say that this amendment will facilitate preservation and enhancement of the structure. The final, and I think perhaps more pressing, issue I'd like to touch on is the issue regarding public health, safety, and welfare. So I'd point out, I would point out that within 200 feet of this property, you know, standing in the front yard across the street to the left is a used car lot. At the end of the block on our side is a gas station, directly next to us is an office/retail business, there's also a truck rental place. But I think most concerningly, there is a, directly next door to us, the site of a former dry cleaner, which as I'm sure most of you are aware, they were in operation for 20 years, the likelihood of PCE contamination is, is basically certain. Obviously, that's a known carcinogen, it attacks the nervous system, does a whole bunch of nasty stuff, so that's our other great concern here. So in my view, a rejection of the proposal is an assertion that we must develop residential housing here, and we feel that that forces us to expose families, tenants, residents to unnecessary health risks.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Paula Singleton, you have two minutes. And then following Ms. Singleton is Michael Burnside.
Good afternoon, I'm so happy to be here and present in front of you. Mr. Glover owns that property, and when he discusses that property, he mostly talks about what's going on to the north of that property, and there, there are businesses down there, but that business, there's a nursery- And there, there are businesses down there, but that business, um, that, there's a nursery next door that has run quite efficiently, and now he wants to change the bottom of a residential home and make it a C one. But once it becomes a C one, it sits beside, uh, three other C ones, and I'm pretty sure they'll get together and sell that property, and I will be living right beside four C one parcels. And I just think that is very unfair to me. He wants to cement the backyard on the south of me. This fellow, he, his backyard is cemented. The back of my property sits on the ground, and already we have some draining issues with, uh, uh, water coming into our yards on that street. But it is a beautiful neighborhood, and the zoning commission said no, that he could not do this. Plus, the bottom end of that house could easily be used for an office without it having a zoning of a C one, which would make it into a liquor store, a CVS, a pharmacy, anything. So why hasn't he gone on and just, you know, uh, fixed it up and, and renovated it? Well, it's because a friend of mine tried to purchase this building before they purchased it, and the realtor told him that the first floor has asbestos. So it would have to be abated, or it would have to be demolished. So it's easier to just change it into a C one, and then you partner with the three C one parcels to the north, and now you have four. So when he gets ready to retire and leave New Orleans, all four parcels will be sold as a unit. Because at this point, to the left of me, the north, that property is already, uh, a nursery. This guy is in his sixties, so he's close to retiring. He's done what he wanted to do in New Orleans. He's a nice guy, Mr. Tim Martin. I like him quite well. He did nursery, uh, work at my house. But just as the zoning commission said, it will take the neighborhood one step at a time. Their renters at the top of his property are nice couples, some kids who moved here from Baton Rouge, and I met their parents, and they live there. They're living there quite comfortably. But very, very soon, once it's switched into a C one, then they will have to move because he still will not be able to, uh, renovate it without abating it. And so it's been unrenovated for over a year.
Thank you, Ms. Singleton. That's your time.
Thank you. I don't know if I've been clear or not.
No, thank you. We, we got it. Mr. Burnside?
So I, I think, uh, this is very similar to the situation that was happening over in Mr. Geruso's district, where you have buildings that are dilapidated, been dilapidated for years since, like, in this case, Katrina. And once upon a time, they're residential, and nowadays, they're either surrounded by commercial, or they are commercial, or whatever. And, um, I think we as a, we, you as a council need to come down on code enforcement for demos by neglect. If people buy a house that once upon a time housed human beings, choose to lock people out of the private property, and then choose economically to allow that property to rot over a decade, they need to be fined or otherwise held accountable, just like the Plaza Tower guy needs to be held accountable. Because while we have homeless people living under a bridge, we have a lot of empty buildings. We have a staggering number of empty buildings, and we're not letting human beings into them. And we may not be allowing them into them because of asbestos or other good, you know, reasons that we all want to agree on. I don't, but most people do. Um, but a lot of the reasons are just strictly economic. You can make more money not housing poor people. Therefore, why would anybody house poor people? It's a circular argument, right? So we're gonna demonize the drug users under the bridge, and we're not gonna go after the guy who owns sixteen oh nine in my neighborhood, who with a low-income tax credit with Louisiana Housing Corporation, has established an eligible basis of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a duplex that's a modular house that was put up in two thousand and six, because it's too complicated and we don't do white-collar crime. But we need to start.
Thank you, Mr. Burnside. Um, I will note that we've had several emails in support of this zoning change. I'm gonna go ahead and move. I need a second. Any questions from the dais? Councilmember Geruso seconds, all in favor? I got, I need one more. Five yeas, thank you all. Six shays.
Madam Clerk, I don't know why my, uh, machine isn't adjusting to, to the roll call, but it's not. It was earlier, but it's not now.
It's personal.
So it's passed by six shays. Thank you all.
We're on page, at the bottom of the page, legislative group in zoning docket ninety-two twenty-three has been deferred to two twenty-two, as well as motion M twenty-four sixty deferred to two twenty-two. On the bottom of page fifty-two, we have motion M twenty-four sixty-one has been deferred to two twenty-two. On top of page fifty-three... We have a legislative group in zoning docket ninety-four twenty-three, Lee's Professional Properties, requesting a conditional use to permit a hotel over five thousand square feet and floor area in an H U M U historic urban neighborhood mixed-use district located on square one fifty, lots B twenty-three and twenty-four, proposed lot twenty-three A in the fifth municipal district bounded by Test Street, Homer Street, Red Allen Way, and Noonan Street. Municipal address is eight twenty through eight twenty-eight Test Street. The recommendation of the city planning commission being for approval, subject to several provisos. We have motion M twenty-four fifty-five by councilmember King approving the applicant's conditional use request for a property located at eight twenty through eight twenty-eight Test Street, zoning docket ninety-four twenty-three, subject to seven provisos by city planning commission.
Madam Clerk, can you temporarily pass over this? Let's go to the next item.
We'll go to page fifty-five. We have a legislative group in zoning docket one twenty-four, Gail Crawford Del Correl, requesting a conditional use to permit a neighborhood commercial establishment in an H U R D two historic urban two-family residential district on square seven oh nine, lot seventeen, in the first municipal district bounded by Sel- South Telomaca Street, Canal Street, Cleveland Avenue, South Janeway Street. Municipal address one thirty, South Telomaca Street. The recommendation of the city planning commission being for approval, subject to one waiver and one proviso. We have motion M twenty-four forty-one by councilmember Harris approving the applicant's conditional use request on zoning docket one twenty-four, subject to one waiver and one proviso set forth by the city planning commission.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This motion would allow for a neighborhood commercial establishment in an H U R D two, um, an H U C, uh, area. The site is currently zoned residentially, but it was previously zoned for office space before the adoption of the twenty-fifteen CZO. Stephen, will you brief us on the CPC report?
Sure. Well, well, you captured it well. This is a, uh, residential-style building that, uh, despite its design, had until twenty fifteen a commercial zoning. Uh, it, it received residential zoning, uh, since twenty fifteen. The proposal is by Soul Saving Our Urban Landscape to use the site as office space for its operations. Um, there were many speakers in favor, uh, at the planning commission hearing, supporting both the work of Soul, but also the use of this property for this purpose. And, uh, having heard that, the planning commission is supportive and does recommend approval.
Thank you. I have one, uh, comment card by our friend Paul Kramer. Yay, good to see you.
Hi, everyone. Thank you. It's great to be back. I'm Ms. Paul Kramer. I live at twenty-two forty-four Kildere Street, um, representing the organization Soul, or sustaining our urban landscape, which has planted and is planting tens of thousands of trees throughout New Orleans, is a very efficient and effective nonprofit organization, and we thank councilmember Harris for moving this along expeditiously. Also note that the, uh, owner of the property, Ms. Gail, is here. She didn't fill out a card, but, uh, she thanks you for the approval. And, uh, once again, uh, thank you very much. Good to see you all.
Good to see you. Good to see you. Um, I miss the suit, though, Paul. Well, listen, this, um, this will provide critical office space for Soul, an organization that has done great work throughout our city. I know councilmember Green has worked with them, as well as my office, and I'm very excited that they've found a home in District B. I know they will work closely with nearby neighbors to ensure a smooth transition into their new office space that minimizes impact on the neighborhood. And if we need to add provisos in the ordinance to mitigate that impact, we can work together with Soul and the neighbors to do so. Are there any comments from the dais? Any online comments? All right, I've moved. Seconded by council president. I need one more vote. Councilmember Thomas is a vote, five yeas. Thank you. Good to see you, Paul. Good to see you, Soul.
On top of page fifty-eight, a legislative group in zoning docket five twenty-four, Walmart Real Estate Business Trust. Oh, mm. Give me a minute, please. We're on page fifty-nine. We have a legislative group in zoning docket six twenty-four, Tonavive F L C, requesting a conditional use to permit a neighborhood commercial real estate, uh, commercial establishment in an H U R D two historic urban two-family residential district on square one twenty-nine, lot twelve, in the seventh municipal district bounded by Oak Street, Adam Street, Hillary Street, and Zimple Street. Municipal address seventy-six thirty-four Oak Street and eleven twenty-five Adam Street. The recommendation of the city planning commission being for approval, subject to two provisos. We have motion M twenty-four sixty-two by councilmember Geruso approving the applicant's conditional use request for properties located at seventy-six thirty-four Oak Street and eleven twenty-five Adam Street on zoning docket six twenty-four, subject to two provisos by the city planning commission.
Thank you. Mr. Corle?
Thank you, councilmember. Uh, this is a request, uh, for a conditional use to allow a residentially-zoned historic commercial building in the Carrollton neighborhood to be used, uh, as a coffee shop. It is to be home of a neutral ground coffee shop, which is relocating to the site after decades at another location uptown. This particular building has been vacant for over twenty years, is, and is in disrepair, and, uh, its occupancy is not only a win for the business, but for the neighborhood, which will see, uh, a renovated, uh, occupied building. Uh, so given all of that, uh, and the positive public feedback that the commission received, the planning commission recommends approval.
Thank you. All right, um, I've got a bunch of comment cards here, so I want to address the people who've been waiting. If you guys are, you're more than welcome to come speak, you've been waiting here for so long, but I'm gonna move to approve it. So, uh, let me just note for the record who's here, so that way people have it as public record. Aliyah Hires, Adam Cohen, Michael Tru, Ashley Beach, David Clements, and it looks like Caroline Williams, all in support. Um, Mr. Burnside, you want two minutes to say that you're moving to District A and how wonderful coffee and photo galleries are?
Councilmember Geruso, Jim Singleton used to say, "You want a speech or you want approval?"
That's right. That's right.
Well, approval hinges on agreement at some point, and speech allegedly helps build consensus, so we'll see how it all comes out. But, um, being a tea drinker, I'm naturally anti-coffee shops. I believe anybody that owns a coffee shop should just be shot. No, well, maybe not. Um, so Neutral Ground has a, just laying it out there, you know, you gotta take a position, you gotta make a stand. Um, so, American Revolution starts with disrespect for tea, dude. Okay. Um, you know, it's revisionist history, and we're gonna write it how we want to.
Bless you, Mr. Burnside.
Um, I got a friend that works at the Neutral Ground, so maybe I should reassess myself or whatever it is that, uh, that the parklet people have to do. But I want to point out a couple of things that may start being a little drumbeat. Once again, we're shifting out of housing, right? We have a building, it's been vacant for twenty years. We have not penalized the owner for twenty years, right? And it may or may not have been damaged by Katrina, I don't know, may have been damaged by neglect, don't know. But once again, we are not using housing for housing. It's economically incentivized to use housing for anything else under the planet except housing. And so the reason poor people don't have housing is because the poor housing isn't good enough to unlock the door and let them in, so the building's left vacant for twenty years, you're not allowed to rent it, and then when it's put back into a higher and better use, the higher and better use is not housing. So part of the problem is that we're not penalizing people for letting their bu- buildings rot, just like we're letting Plaza Tower rot. And we gotta figure out a way to stop this, because what we're gonna do is demonize everybody under a bridge, and we're gonna say that if you're under the bridge, you're bad. If you're bad, you're gonna be punished. At the same time, we're gonna take people that own houses and lock them up and call them good.
All right, do you have any online comments? None? All right. This is a request to rehome historic Neutral Ground Coffee House. It originally operated on Daniel Street for over forty years, but ceased in April twenty twenty-three after the building was sold. There is proposed musical accompaniment during operational hours, and no alcohol will be served at this location. Obviously, there's people today who are very excited about this move. The Neighborhood Association has given their full support, not received any opposition from nearby neighbors, and I would just say that if you want healthy, good neighborhoods, you need community places like this to help support the people who live nearby. So with that, I'll move for approval, seconded by councilmember Harris. Five yeas, counting councilmember Thomas. Thank you all very much. Thank you all for being here.
On page sixty, zoning docket seven twenty-four has been deferred to February twenty-second. On top of page sixty-one, legislative group in zoning docket eight twenty-four, H M P Properties LLC, requesting a zoning change from an H U R D two historic urban two-family residential district to an H U M U historic urban neighborhood mixed-use district on square nine, one ninety-five, lot P or lots five and six, in the first municipal district bounded by Terpsacor Street, York Terp Street, Portania Street, and St. Charles Avenue. Municipal address fifteen eighteen Terpsacor Street. The recommendation of the city planning commission being for approval. We have motion M twenty-four forty-two by councilmember Harris approving the applicant's zoning change request on zoning docket number eight twenty-four.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Stephen?
Uh, thank you, councilmember. This is a property, uh, on Terpsacor between St. Charles and Portania. It, uh, has a paved parking lot. It, uh, according to the applicant, uh, was used by a dry cleaner previously. Uh, it had commercial zoning until twenty fifteen. Since then, it has had residential zoning despite having the, in the midst of other commercial districts, both on either side and across the street. Uh, and the property owners is, is seeking to really, uh, reconcile the zoning with the commercial history of this property, uh, given that this would sort of fill in a, a gap within an existing commercial zoning district, given the physical character of the site. The planning commission is supportive of that and recommends approval.
Thank you, Stephen. Mr. Burnside? I am drinking tea, by the way, Mr. Burnside.
Representatives should cater occasionally to their constituents. So, um, Stephen and I disagree on this quite a bit. On this one, I did my homework, and I sent an email to your office on the subject. Um, so one of the recesses on the city planning commission was Mr. Steg, and that's because Mr. Steg's law office is involved in this. There's no use that's going to change. It is a parking lot now, it will be a parking lot in the future. Uh, it's a little bit questionable why, uh, zoning change is necessary, or even in the city's interest. Um, so I did some math, and only seven percent of the current lot is actually zoned commercial, and like ninety-two, ninety-three percent zoned residential, and the future land map, the Flum, right, has all of it as residential. So the idea that it has to be changed from residential to commercial now seems odd because there's no use for it, and it doesn't seem to represent the future that is planned by the Flum, and we all worship the Flum, all hail the Flum. Um, and finally, um, once again, we are taking land that was at one time housing, because there is a house directly across the street, uh, and turning it into everything under the sun, including parking, instead of housing.
Thank you, Mr. Burnside. Any online comments? I've moved. I need a second. Seconded by council president Moreno, all in favor? Everyone's in favor? Thank you, Stephen. Thank you, Mr. Burnside.
We're now on top of page sixty-two, All Matters. The legislative group in street name change four twenty-three has been deferred to two twenty-two. Motion line over M twenty-three five sixty-six has been deferred to two twenty-two. On top of page sixty-three, a legislative group in unfinished business for reconsideration resolution R twenty-four thirty-eight by Councilmember Morel, Moreno, Jeruso, Harris, King, Green, and Thomas, representing the organizations selected to receive grant funds from the New Orleans Recreation and Culture Fund and the amount awarded to each. This matter was adopted as amended on January eighteen, twenty twenty-four. The sponsor has requested reconsideration of this matter, reason being to introduce a substitute resolution. So, we need to vote to reconsider.
Ladies and gentlemen, I would move that we vote to reconsider. Seconded by Councilmember Jeruso, please vote your machines. All right, five yays and no nays. Is this five? Five yays, no nays for reconsideration. Ladies and gentlemen, there was a necessity due to some developments outside of our control that some of the awards be reallocated. One was an overage in the amount that was the maximum available. The other is that an organization that had previously received money is no longer in existence. So, these are just corrections to make sure the money is reallocated in a way that provides resources to organizations that can provide and utilize those funds. So, with that, I would move that we move to reconsider. Now we're voting on the new resolution, correct, Madam Clerk?
Right, I have to read it though.
Okay.
So, we have substitute resolution R twenty-four thirty-eight by Councilmembers Morel, Moreno, Jeruso, Harris, King, Green, and Thomas, representing the organizations selected to receive grant funds from the New Orleans Recreation and Culture Fund and the amount awarded to each. At-large Division One Helena Moreno, the amount is thirteen thousand six twenty. At the top of page sixty-four, at-large Division Two Jean-Paul J P Morel, total grant is five thousand. District A Joe Jeruso, and his goes all the way to page sixty-eight. Total grant fund is five hundred thirty-five thousand. District B Leslie D Harris, total grant zero. District C Freddie King, his total is three hundred sixteen thousand. District D Eugene J Green Junior, eighty-eight thousand one ninety-five. And District E Oliver M Thomas Junior, total grant is twenty-seven thousand eight fifty.
All right, I will move adoption of the new resolution. Seconded by Councilmember Jeruso, please vote your machines. Six yays, no nays. The motion's adopted. Resolution is adopted.
We're now at the bottom of page seventy-one. We have artness calendar number thirty-seven, thirty-four thousand two seventy-seven has been deferred to February twenty-second. On top of page seventy-two, we have a legislative group in artness calendar number thirty-four thousand three eighty-five has been deferred to two twenty-two. Motion line over M twenty-three four twenty-six has been deferred to February twenty-second. On top of page twenty-three, motion line over M twenty-three four twenty-seven has been deferred to February twenty-second. On top of page seventy-four, we have artness calendar number thirty-four thousand four ninety-seven by Councilmember Thomas by request. This has been deferred to February twenty-second. Artness calendar number thirty-four thousand five thirty has been deferred to February twenty-second and referred to the Economic Development Committee. On top of page seventy-five, we have artness calendar number thirty-four thousand five thirty-three by Councilmember King, and artness to temporarily waive certain fees, permit fees, and requirements within and around Tremay Recreation Community Center, located at fourteen hundred St. Charles Street, New Orleans, Louisiana, in conjunction with the Old and New Style Fellas Annual Parade Event on Sunday, April twenty-first, twenty twenty-four, from two P M. to six P M., to specify the duration and boundaries of said waiver, and otherwise to provide with respect thereto.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Burnside?
Well, this is gonna be a brutal way to make the statement, but it came in my mind as I walked up here. Zero is not a number. I don't know that I can believe I'm gonna say this out loud, because I don't believe it's true a hundred percent of the time. Standing here right now, zero is not a number I respect. Even the Bible that the widow tosses in are two mites, right? The idea of participation matters. You gotta put some skin in the game in order for it to actually matter. To have things completely free exists, air is completely free, God doesn't charge us for breathing air. So, I have to be careful about how far I want to walk down this road, but we're human beings, and we engage in social contract. And the social contract is that if somebody is actually paying, then some of the rest of us should step up and help with the act of paying, and not just dump everything on the shoulders of the few. It's one of the problems with the nonprofits in this city, is that they don't pay any day on property tax, and therefore, they don't support the stormwater sewage. The storm, I misspoke about the sewage, they don't do the stormwater fees, they don't help with the stormwater management. And so, too much of it's on the shoulders of too few. And that comes to rest with the Shell Pilot. Again, we are giving them police, we're giving them fire, we're giving them E O S, and they're giving us zero. Even if they gave us twenty percent, I probably would just bite my tongue and take it. But the idea of zero is not good, and it's a small matter here, but it's the psychological truth echoes through many different venues. And I think that anybody can pay ten bucks, anybody, I was homeless, could pay ten dollars if I wanted to. Somebody can pay more than zero.
I'm making motion to adopt, seconded by Councilmember Harris. Five yays, no nays. Motion's adopted, thank you.
We're now on top of page seventy-six. Artness calendar number thirty-four thousand five thirty-four has been deferred, but Councilmember Jeruso would like to speak on this matter.
Yeah, members, remember, this is about code enforcement trying to create an actual timeline and definitive nature, as Mr. Burnside's pointed out, for buildings to be demolished. Heeding kind of the counsel that I've received from the other end of the dais, code enforcement said that they thought that this was too broad, and I will admit, in a place or two, we want to work with them to make it happen. But what I told them is I was willing to wait to make sure that we had something that was potentially more agreeable, as long as we knew there was a finite and final way for demolitions to occur, and it didn't happen completely at the discretion of code enforcement. What I got back was a complete gutting of the ordinance supported by all seven council members, and instead says that they're gonna create a priority list of demolitions. Well, that should exist already, and I don't know why I have to ordinance that. And then, number two, that the director of code enforcement shall retain discretion to stay a demolition, and thereby proceed down the priority list, and then they list things in potential illustrative fashion. That's just not gonna cut it. It's unfair to the residents, and it's Department of Code Enforcement, not the Department of Unlimited Discretion. We need to move forward to help people. Councilmember, I saw the news this morning about the house on America Street. I know we all have blighted properties that have gone on for too long. I'm willing to cooperate and try and work to make sure that we have something that is feasible, but I'm not willing to say that we are gonna continue to punish residents who play by the rules, who do things the right way, who live next to blighted property, and they have to suffer indefinitely, either because you have people who play different cards to pull at the tug, pull on the heartstrings of people, and get the can kicked down the road indefinitely. So, I look forward to working with all of you about how, if we need to amend this, but the bottom line is, at some point, everything, everything comes to an end. And under this regime, there is no end. And somewhat facetiously, if code enforcement says they don't want any discretion whatsoever, then let's just repeal the whole title. You can have, you can have no rules at all. I mean, is that really what we want to do? Is say that there's no guardrails at all, and that, and that every single thing, the ball can be moved at any time? That doesn't make any sense. So, unless any of my colleagues have anything else to add, my plan is to move forward with this and the dashboard at the next meeting, keeping everybody engaged, continuing to try and work with the administration, and trying to keep the lines of communication open. But the bottom line is, I think we all agree, given the fact we're all co-authors, that there has to be some finality at some point. Thank you. Councilmember Green?
I am certainly with us in terms of wanting to see there be a more definitive schedule relative to demolitions, and you know how I feel about the demolitions in terms of their impact on the persons who live around them. I'm dealing with a couple of properties in our district where it's so easy to get a temporary restraining order and get ninety more days, and then come up with a plan that gives you a bit more. I look forward to working with you to determine if there's anything that we might be able to do in state law to facilitate what we're trying to do. Because we, you know, it reaches the point where it goes beyond code enforcement sometimes, and it's just simply so easy, it seems, to get something that still allows that blight to be on the property. But I look forward to working with you. But I just wanted to mention that in terms of the law, that I hope that we can work together and maybe address this state law too.
I'm happy to work with everybody to make sense for residents. Councilmember Thomas?
You mentioned the property on America Street, and so I think maybe this is the moment to actually talk about something good happened this morning. I specifically want to thank Councilmember Green and Councilmember Moreno, who participated in the healing for the loss of what happened with the family there. I know they were pushing early to try to get their property removed. It was part of a crime scene, they had to go through a process, but thankfully and preferably today, I want to thank Lenny Sylvester and the America Street Group, they have been absolutely a blessing to that family and that community. But we can't help, we can't bring back the lives. Maybe we can't help the family get over, I know we can't help the family get over this loss, but the removal of that eyesore is a big step in the right direction for that neighborhood and for that community. So, thank you guys for your support.
Thank you, councilmember. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
We're now gonna go to the top of page eighty-six. We have resolution R twenty-four fifty, our councilmember Morel by request, ratifying and approving the twenty-twenty-four Healthy Homes Rules in accordance with section two dash one thousand of the Code of the City of New Orleans.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Members, as many of you are aware, last year, we passed a very robust change to how we were gonna deal with renters and rental property through the Healthy Homes Program. Through the budgetary process, this council fully funded the Healthy Homes Program, and through a robust public engagement process, we have now promulgated rules to regulate that Healthy Homes Program. So, this is simply, this council ratifying and approving the Healthy Homes Rules in accordance with section two one thousand of the Code of the City of New Orleans. Is there any public comment? If you're hearing none, is there any online comment? All right, I will move. Do I get a second? Seconded by Councilmember Moreno, please vote your machines.
Mr. President?
Six yays, Vice President?
Sorry, sorry.
Vice President, the president's next to me now. Six yays, seven yays?
I have.
Seven, right. Seven yays, no nays.
No, I have to abstain.
Okay, sorry. Six yays, no nays, with one abstention. All right, let's move. We, we took it out of order, Mr. Burnside, which is, it's item forty-three on page eighty-six, so we went out of order. I apologize if that wasn't clear. It's okay. Thank you.
We're now gonna go back to page fifty-three. We have a legislative group in zoning docket ninety-four twenty-three, Lee's Professional Properties L L C, requesting a conditional use to permit a hotel over five thousand square feet in floor area in an H U M U historic urban neighborhood mixed-use district located on square one fifty, lots B twenty-three and twenty-four, proposed lot twenty-three A in the fifth municipal district bounded by Tesh Street, Homer Street, Red Allen Way, and Nunash Street. Municipal address eight twenty through eight twenty-eight Tesh Street. The recommendation of the City Planning Commission being for approval, subject to seven provisos. We have motion M twenty-four fifty-five by Councilmember King, approving the applicant's conditional use request for property located at eight twenty through eight twenty-eight Tesh, zoning docket ninety-four twenty-three, subject to seven provisos by the City Planning Commission.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, and members of the council, I've been advised that by our council that I should explain the reason for my recusal on the last before we move to the next item to vote. And it's simply because I own a property management company, we'll have to enforce some of the regulations, and it could potentially be a conflict of interest, that's all, just to be on the record.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Green. Thank you, Madam Clerk. C P C?
Thank you, councilmember. This is a proposal for a new construction hotel in the Tesh Corridor in Algiers. This particular structure, which would face Tesh, is to be a three-story structure with eight hotel suites, about six to five hundred square feet in area. It will neighbor in another hotel structure that is the subject of the next application. Together, the two hotels will fill in this void in the corner of this, at this corner in the Tesh Street corridor, and really contribute to the vibrancy of the corridor. The planning commission is supportive. I'll also note that the design, there were some comments at the C P C meeting about the design of the structures, because it's in a local historic district, H D L C will need to approve the design, so that does ensure appropriateness in design. So, for this one, planning commission recommends approval.
Thank you. This conditional use would bring back development to a prominent corner in Algiers that has been vacant, that has been a vacant tire dumping ground for far too long. This is a true mixed-use development, retail and office space for local businesses, long-term apartments, and a limited number of hotel rooms. The owner is an established local developer with a lot of potential to improve, to improve New Orleans. Developer, developers' team has been working closely with neighbors to carve out provisos that will help preserve quality of life for those residents living in the immediate vicinity. These provisos are still being finalized, so we will, we will be publishing the full list as an amendment to the corresponding ordinance. One is up for adoption next month, one is up for adoption next month. I'm coming out of line, Madam Clerk, I do apologize. We do have two comment cards that are in support of this, Mr. Ryan LaSalle, LaSalle and Zach Smith, so I do apologize.
Good afternoon, council. Zach Smith, one thousand South Norman C Francis, on behalf of the owner, Mr. Joey Lee here, and his wife, from Lee's Professional Properties. Thank you, councilmen, want to thank your staff, want to shout out to the neighborhood. We've had pretty, pretty tremendous collaboration from where it started to where it's, it's ended, and it continues to be ongoing. Your words couldn't have said it better, and this is a reactivation of a corner that has seen its fair share of tire dumping. Everybody's always asking, can we bring something to Algiers? Can we bring something to Algiers? And Mr. Lee, right here, is bringing stuff to Algiers, so thank you so much. We'll hold off on any comments on the next one, since it's all related.
Okay, any online comments? None? I move to adopt. Seconded by Councilmember Harris. Five yays and no nays. The motion's adopted, thank you.
Fifty-four. Zoning docket ninety-five twenty-three, Lee's Professional Properties L L C, requesting a conditional use to permit a hotel over five thousand square feet in floor area in an H U M U historic urban neighborhood mixed-use district located on square one fifty, lots A and B or one and two, proposed lot A one in the fifth municipal district bounded by Red Allen Way, Tesh Street, Homer Street, and Nunash Street. Municipal addresses four oh one through four oh five Red Allen Way. The recommendation of the City Planning Commission being for approval, subject to six provisos. We have motion M twenty-four fifty-six by Councilmember King, approving the applicant's conditional use request for properties located at four oh one through four oh five Red Allen Way, zoning docket ninety-five twenty-three, subject to six provisos by City Planning Commission.
C P C, thank you, Madam Clerk.
This is the second of the two hotels constituting this development. This one is slightly This one is slightly larger and would feature ground floor retail space, second level residential units and then third floor hotel units. As with the other one, this is going to help restore this corner of the Tesh Street corridor and the planning commission recommends approval.
Thank you. I make a motion to adopt. May I get a second? Second by Councilmember Green.
I had a comment.
I do apologize, Councilmember Thomas. Councilmember Thomas has a comment?
No, just to thank you as the sponsoring council member, but to thank Mr. Lee and his brother and his family. That's that next wave of local developers and businessmen and the C3 partnership with Zach, man. I know there's more than just hope for the future. There's a solid foundation for the future. So a lot of folk, Joey, don't know, y'all work behind the scenes, you give a lot and you do a lot. But on behalf of all of us here and all of the kids and families that y'all help, man, and thank y'all for bringing your money back home, bro. Thank you. And tell, and tell your brother I say what's happening. Thank you.
Thank you, and again, stress the local part. So five yeas, no nays, motion is adopted, thank you.
We're on page 58. A legislative group in zoning docket 524, Walmart Real Estate Business Trust, requesting a conditional use to permit a fast food restaurant with drive-through facilities in a C3 heavy commercial district and the 5SC suburban corridor use restriction overlay district, lot 2-8-1 on square ES-1, Section C, Elmwood subdivision and the 5th Municipal District bounded by Berman Highway, Berman Avenue, Binder Boulevard and the Dona Canal. Municipal address 4001 Berman Highway. The recommendation of the City Planning Commission being for approval subject to eight provisos. We have motion M 2458 by Councilmember King approving the applicant's conditional use request for property located at 4001 Berman Highway on zoning docket 524, subject to eight provisos by City Planning Commission.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. CPC.
Thank you, Councilmember. This is a proposal to construct a new Panda Express fast food restaurant on Berman Highway. It would be an outparcel facility that would be one of a series of fast food restaurants in front of the Walmart on Berman Highway. This is exactly the sort of location where this sort of regional serving auto-oriented commercial development should occur. And so the planning commission is supportive and recommends approval. We did not receive any comments in opposition to this as well.
Councilmember Thomas?
Thank you, Councilmember King. This is part of Walmart, Walmart Real Estate Holdings. It benefits them in terms of this business leasing and rebuilding their franchise on that lot. So it shows that our willingness to work with Walmart. But what I would like to ask Walmart and other developers and businessmen like that is to respect us by also, when you're in our community, make sure that your lots are clean. Make sure that your carts are gathered, the same way you do in the Walmarts and the surrounding parishes. So with Councilmember, you're doing them a big favor today and they're going to benefit from it. But we should also benefit from it, not just from the products they sell, but how they maintain their lots, their property and how they maintain the areas adjacent to the property. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Green. I make a motion to, I'm sorry, Thomas, make a motion to adopt. Second by Councilmember Green. Five yeas, no nays, motion is adopted.
We're now on top of page 77. Ordinance calendar number 34,535 has been deferred to February 22nd. Ordinance calendar number 34,536 by Councilmember Thomas and ordinance to amend and reordain Section 1755 of the Code of the City of New Orleans to establish a maritime speed limit of five miles per hour for vessels traveling in portions of Shepherd or Pass and otherwise to provide with respect there too.
This is an effort, especially when you talk about maritime law, to prevent potentially dangerous situations, to have a speed limit that hopefully actually the Coast Guard and the maritime industry follows. With that, I would move adoption. Moved by me, second by Councilmember Green, vote your machine. Five yeas, no nays, and the calendar ordinance is adopted.
On top of page 78, ordinance calendar number 34,535 has been deferred to February 22nd and referred to the Budget Committee. On top of page... On top of page 79, ordinance calendar number 34,538 has been deferred to February 22nd and referred to the Budget Committee. At the bottom of the page, ordinance calendar number 34,539 by Councilmembers Jeruso, Thomas, Green, Moreno, King and Harris by request and ordinance to amend and reordain Section 2-33 of the Code of the City of New Orleans to increase the number of Tulane University scholarships awarded by the Mayor of the City of New Orleans each year and otherwise to provide with respect there too.
So before we vote on this, Office of Youth and Families here to present a little bit and answer any questions everybody have, I don't want to steal any of your thunder, so I'll let you speak, let you speak first.
I don't want any thunder being stolen, absolutely not. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for listening and also for hosting the Martin, Martin Berman Student Government here. It was, and thank you, Councilmember King, for giving them king cake. They're hyped up now. So yes, my name's Anna Maria, Deputy Director with the Office of Youth and Families. We have had the pleasure of managing the Tulane mayoral scholarship program since, since we started the office. And basically, you know, it's been in the charter for a hundred, a couple hundred years to have these five scholarships that a committee, and it's all spelled out in the ordinance, a committee composed by two public school representatives, a principal or somebody designated by the principal, a private school principal, two people in higher education, a council appointee and a mayoral appointee. The last few years, it has been Paul Harang for council and myself for the mayor, the mayor side of things. And basically Tulane runs that show. Young people have to apply and be accepted into Tulane before they are qualified for the scholarship. And they just check a box saying they want to be considered for the mayoral scholarship. And then the committee meets at the beginning of March, this year it's March 1st. And we hunker down for hours until this is generated and a list is ranked per council district. And then the committee basically proposes who should get the scholarship and they're ordered. And then that goes to the mayor and usually goes by the recommendations of the selection committee. In the event that people turn it down, because sometimes that happens, these kids are accepted into everywhere, they then, she then goes on, or the person, the mayor goes on to the next person. There was one year where nobody from B, so we had two people from C. And then last year, we had a full slate, one from A. In December, Tulane contacted us and told us that they want to double the scholarships. So instead of five, 10. And since this is in the charter, it needs to be obviously amended and they would like for it to be effective for this year. The committee is scheduled to meet in March and we are looking forward to picking 10 people.
Thank you. So to summarize very quickly, Tulane decided to go from five to 10 scholarships. The kids who apply have to be from New Orleans.
They have to attend a New Orleans school.
Have to attend a New Orleans school. They have to be accepted already to Tulane. And there is a committee, as you described its composition, that picks kids from around the area. You're trying to have two from each district.
You have to have representation from each district. In the event that there isn't somebody, you then go on to the next person.
Yep, well, thank you for Tulane for making that commitment.
Yes, thank you very much to Tulane. And I believe they submitted a comment that I don't know if it went through.
I, I, yeah, we have, I have, Ms. Ardell's here. She said she's happy to answer any questions in case we have that. But I will tell you that I've moved, it's been seconded, it's 5-0, so I think we're, unless anybody has anything else, we're ready to approve.
Oh, my gosh, this is so exciting.
It is exciting. Thank you all very much.
Great day for New Orleans.
Thank you. Thank you, Moreno.
Thank you.
We're now on top of page 80. Ordinance calendar number 34,540 by Councilmember Thomas and ordinance to temporarily waive certain fees, permit fees and requirements within and around the Pete Sanchez Multipurpose Center 1616 Fats Domino Avenue 70117, New Orleans, Louisiana, in conjunction with the God Our Fathers Baptist Church pastors anniversary on Sunday, February 18th, 2024, from 12 noon to 4 p.m. to specify the duration and boundaries of said waiver and otherwise to provide with respect there too.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Because this is a issue related to NOR facility, the chair has asked that we allow to, it's appropriate, five minutes for appointed personal privilege. Mr. Carl Washington.
Woo, you guys have been busy. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Lisa Williamson, own property at 2801 Pike Street. But in the area of NOR, I come with a few words and it's about unity. Unity in my community and that's the Desire community. A house divided in itself cannot stand. And that's how I feel about my community as it relates to the park and the park being taken care of. Here is something that I propose in, in lieu of this disunity, right? To have a courageous conversation with leaders to seek some understanding about how we can come together and truly authentically take care of the Desire community. Wow, guys, I just heard y'all give Tulane 10 scholarships. And then the park in Sampson, that's a whole different story.
It's very important that that not be, that not be on the record.
Here is what I have to say in my five minutes. Excuse me.
Yeah, Councilmember, why don't you let, yeah, Councilmember, why don't you, yeah, but Councilmember, why don't you let her finish? And then you always have the floor.
So here is what I have to say, thank you. My name is Lisa Williamson, Chaplain, Captain, United States Army, retired, 34 years. I am an Iraq War veteran and I deserve to be heard. I have been fighting in the name of New Orleans for 34 years. And now I'm here in the name of my community. That's it for unity.
No, no, I was just correcting.
Here is my, here is my tape. This is what NOR means to me and I'm going to try to get this out for y'all in five minutes. NOR means to me Penn Park, Betty Jean Parker and Sampson Park. Great childhood memories, swimming every summer, swim teams, we always won in the Desire, Betty Jean. Volleyball teams, community activity, we always came together and did things. Sampson Park was the center of the community. You smiling over there, OT, I know you know that, right? Well, that hasn't really been happening. Okay, just a little bit more. Recreation is a way to learn valuable skills. And I know I'm preaching to the choir on that one, right? I'm just here to remind you of that, because we need some help over there in Sampson. Little bit more. You acquire self-esteem, unity, setting, settling disagreements, always in a learning state, conquering fears. This is NOR, I'm talking about NOR, right? And feeling and knowing that adults really, really, really care. Yeah, that's what NOR meant to me, it did. And so this is what it produced. All these things, of course, with the loving, the loving guidance of my mother, my father, my six brothers and my four sisters, I will be number five and number 11. I am a retired Army chaplain, a clinician. I have a bachelor's in computer science. I came from the Desire Housing Project. NOR was everything for me. I have a master's in divinity, is what I needed to become an Army chaplain after I was a non-commissioned officer, a leader of soldiers. I may be D in education. I was diagnosed with cancer in 2019, breast cancer, don't feel sorry for me. I don't have cancer anymore, so it stopped me on that doctorate degree, but I shall finish. In the meantime, I'm working on a master's in social work so I can continue to serve my community that is so freaking traumatized and y'all know that, y'all know that. But NOR is the center of that in Sampson Park. This is the same opportunity I want our children to have, to develop into human capital, to live a quality life and to learn how to help the next generation to achieve those same things. And that's what I'm here for. That's what I came up here for. I didn't come for no argument, my Councilman Green, you're my councilman for my area. I came up here for a courageous conversation to say our park is not being taken care of and we need some help. Director Larry Barabino is negligent in his leadership to provide those quintessential programs that support for Sampson Park. He has never attended an event at Sampson Park, Larry Barabino. We, the Community, Desire Community Association, don't even know who he is. How do you care for people you don't know? You don't. Out of sight, out of mind. Where is the funding? We requested a meeting to discuss some new leadership at Sampson Park and Mr. Barabino responded by telling us to accept and support the decision that he made for the new leadership. There is a history of disunity in our community and I'm here to help resolve that, that Mr. Barabino may not be aware of. So as leaders and gatekeepers, gatekeepers, myself and Coach Washingtons and citizens of New Orleans, we deserve a conversation. We deserve to be heard before decisions are made about our community. Thank you.
Mr. Washington.
How y'all doing?
Fine, we're doing fine.
In a minute. Y'all all right? I'm not here to attack anyone. I'm not here to even make no loud noise. But I am here to do the people's business. Many of you all may know I've been doing the people's business for over 30 years and that's the community and the youth. However, I am told to, to mention that as, as elected officials prepare to run for office, that you've been put on notice. Please don't take that negatively, negatively or personally. When, when we say put on notice, it's been a long time. And what we mean by put on notice and why the people are disheartening and, and, and mad and confused. Let me just speak to the African-American leadership. Eight billion dollars came to this city. That's with a B. We can't name not one African-American company with a million dollar contract. We can't name 10 to 15 people make $150,000 legally. That's eight billion. Let me go a little deeper. 1977 till now is 47 years. African-American mayors have been in the office for 40 of those years, minus Mitch. Forty-seven years. About 54 African-American city councils combined for over 160 years. I did the numbers, I'm not just talking, I'm not just talking. Black folks been leading the city, money been coming to the city. So when you all start talking about you're going to run and you're going to do this and you're going to do that, we want to know what you're going to do different from the last 47 years. So I'm here, I'm here to speak on Mr. Larry Barabino, his discrimination against the other facilities. And you all may have heard Willie Hall and that's all. And I'm sorry, I'm sorry to be here. Y'all haven't seen me in a while. 16 years ago, I came to the same podium to discuss the same issue. came to the same podium to discuss the same issue with Mr. Larry Barabino. He was terminated for only catering to Willie Hall. There are parks all over this community that need support. Can't put all your money and all your resources to Willie Hall, because you're the executive director, or you're the C E O. Number two, I sent you all e-mails, and I dropped packages off to you all. And Mr. Barabino owes a apology to the community, particularly the elders who signed that petition, who said, "We're not gonna allow you just force somebody on us." He didn't even- he didn't even respond to that. He was, in particular, an eighty-year-old lady, Ms. Rose, and if you all don't know Ms. Rose, you haven't been in the community. She is the president of the park. She is the president of the community. When we were revitalizing that park four years ago, Ms. Rose got up on top of a ladder and was trimming trees. We've been building this- bought this park for four years, and for a petition to go out to say, "Uh, Mr. Larry Barabino, don't force this person on us. Let's- let's- let's think of something else." His reply was, "We gonna work with this guy," because he'd been there three months. He was in the Navy. No disrespect to this gentleman. You can't come in the community three months, and we've been there years doing the work, and all of a sudden you wanna come run your program and run what you wanna run. That's disrespect. It's a disrespect for Mr. Larry Barabino to not even acknowledge the elders. Needs to apologize. There's a petition. It's not me. It's not about me. And thirdly, also mention about the money. There's, I'm gonna say allegedly, three organizations coming from that roof. Drive Nine, Zai for Change, Giving Hope. Why they have to use Sampson data to get funding? Why T nine and Drive can't have their own team and get funding? It's division. It's dividing the community with Mr. Larry Barabino is doing. It's already a deprived community. The night war received the most damage and got the less, the least amount of resources. It's a divided community, been divided for the last forty, fifty years. And it don't look, and it don't look like, it don't look like Uptown. We fight for our community. Y'all know, y'all know, I've been putting in the work. When y'all hear me and I come before you all, it's about the night war. It's about Sampson. It's about the community. It's about the park. I don't come you all for nothing. Zero. So-
Thank you.
Maybe, maybe you all can bring Mr. Larry Barabino in and have him ask some of these questions about why he's partnering with this organization in the community and benef- getting and reaping all the benefits. If they were getting the money and they were so concerned why we had to put up the money for the banquet, I personally spent seven hundred dollars for a banquet. We don't get no money. We not get no money. We love our park, and I'm coming in the spirit of the ancestors. The Bob Roy's and the Joe Morgans and the bozos, the people built that park. They built that community. So we can't have a C E O who- who comes back a second time. He was fired the first time for the same thing, and you bring him back to do the same thing again, and now he wants to divide the community again, because he's in a position. We not having that. So I'm coming to you all. I'm not shouting. I'm not throwing no blame. I'm not throwing no shade. We come to you all for support. People come here all the time, complaining, screaming, kicking. They've had a situation where a man died. Rest in peace, Mr. Tootie Montana, right here, complaining and passed away and died. So we come to you all. We come to you all for y'all's support and to help us. And when we don't get the help, then it'd be like, okay, well, then when y'all come, when y'all come talking about y'all running, we gonna say walk, turn back around. It's no disrespect. I'm not even emotional. I'm passionate. I put my life on the line. I put my money on the line. I went back in the community where I came from and bought a house and a lot and built the park. We built the park for the last four years. Larry Barabino didn't come with no paint, no brushes. We painted. We redeveloped a park, and all of a sudden he wants to come and put his- his people in position to run the park and disrespect the community? Mr. Larry Barabino have lost touch. Mr. Larry Barabino need to step down. Yes, I'm not the only one staying there, and I don't want nobody to not have no money. But when you affecting kids, our kids are dying every day because of lack of rec- of recreation, opportunities, training, this- I'm gonna leave with this. I'm gonna leave with this. How much money or beans is being spent on Mardi Gras compared to the youth?
Thank you, Carl.
Thank you all. Thank you for having me. I appreciate y'all. Keep doing what y'all doing.
Thank you. Thank you, uh-
All right.
Uh, Mr. Burnside.
I have a comment at the end.
Yes, sir. Mr. Burnside, yeah.
At you.
So you beat a drum really hard, and you get ignored. You start trying to look for symbols or something that're clanging together. Um, so I've come up here, and I've been here today talking about the widow and her two mites. But physicists learned that forces come in pairs. They come in pairs. They're equal and opposite, but they come in pairs. There's never one force. And so in the story of the Bible, there's more than a widow and two mites. There's Jesus Christ, and he doesn't charge two mites now, does he? God doesn't charge for air either. So here's an idea. Instead of making everybody pay two mites, let's give everybody a free shot at it. Last time I was here talking, Councilperson Green was kind enough to say that he was in favor of free R T A for, at least for kids. I did the math for R T A. I did not do the math for the Nord. I don't know Nord's math. I know R T A's math. Five percent of what it takes to run R T A comes from fares, bus fares and trolley fares, not including the ferry, not bothering the ferry at all, but buses and trolleys. Five percent of what it takes to run R T A comes from the fares. If we cut the fares to zero for everybody in R T A, R T A would have ninety-five percent of the money it has today. So I think it's a legitimate question to ask. Do the city of New Orleans need the fares generated by Nord, or is it a reasonable financial consideration to provide Nord facilities and access for free to all? I've not done that math, but I did R T As, and everybody could be riding buses for free.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Burnside. Uh, to be recognized, Councilmember Eugene Green.
I don't know, Mr. Burnside. Actually, interestingly enough, I think that we favor, a couple of us favor citizens having access to the transportation for free, but, um, I don't know exactly. Well, I'll talk to you in a little while. I don't know where that point was going, but we, that's what we said. So at the end of the day, if we would favor something like that, we might favor using Nord parks for free too, because we don't generate a tremendous amount of revenue, even if we were charging everybody. But, um, I think that we do things such as we're seeing here with, um, some of these parks, because we really, truly wanna see people in our parks, because that's why they exist. But another thing I wanna say is I just wanna be on the record with a couple of things. Um, most important is that the city council did not give money to Tulane to offer scholarships. That was said on the record. That is incorrect information. So for those who might be ready to send texts and emails, we did not give money to Tulane to offer scholarships to ten citizens or ten youth in our community. Tulane was offering five. They had already given five. They given five more. It's a good news situation. It's not something to be talked about at Saturday's community meeting. It is a good news thing. The second thing is I certainly recognize the challenges that exist in certain communities, such as the Desire Community, which have been decades in the making, not only just following Katrina, but even before that. But I would certainly be willing to reach out to Mr. Barabino and see if he'd be willing to meet with the people who are on this petition. There are twenty-nine of them. It's not necessarily signatures, names in an entire community. However, they might be very open to meeting with them, so I'll encourage Mr. Barabino to consider a meeting. But what we do have is we have a letter from two days ago to Mr. Barabino mentioning that someone who was hired to oversee Sampson Park was not acceptable to some members of the community. There's no name mentioned of the person, and there's really an objection that's a little bit confusing. But the bottom line is that I will personally reach out to Mr. Barabino, because that is my district, to see if he'd be willing to meet with these citizens to discuss the reason for his decision-making and whether or not there's an ability to compromise with the citizens. I am pleased to say that within the Desire Florida community, there's been tremendous progress over the last couple of years, and this council has been part of it, making money available for the stadium that is to be built, which is gonna employ people and provide youth employment and recreation opportunities, the work that has been done that moves forward on the Desire Florida Multipurpose Center, which is a great center that needs to be used more. Um, I encourage that kind of use, and we're about to do so much more, including the fact that we relocated residents from the Golden Plaza area after decades of living on top type of to- top of a ty- toxic dump. I'm sorry, too- too many Ts. Top of a toxic dump. But the bottom line is that there's so much more to go. There's a fifty-year rebuilding process involved, and that is gonna involve communications. I'll talk to Mr. Barabino, but I appreciate the council for the work that we've done in an area that has been ignored for too long as we move that area forward. Thank you.
Moved by me, seconded by Councilmember Moreno. Vote your machines. Here, one more vote. That's all right. Councilmember Jeruso says yes. Uh, five yeas, no nays, and the, uh, calendar number is the ordinance is adopted. Thank you.
At the bottom of the page, we have motion M twenty-four eleven by Councilmember Morell adding Councilmember Moreno by request, adding the President of the Council as a signatory to the Amendment Three to the contract between the City of New Orleans, A T and T Corp, and authorizing the President of the Council to sign the Amendment Number Three to the contract between the City of New Orleans and A T and T Corp, Exhibit Eight.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'll make a motion, seconded by Councilmember King. Oliver, can he say yes?
Oliver Thomas.
Councilmember Thomas.
Oliver J. Thomas, Junior.
He's a yes.
At the bottom of page eighty-one, we have Resolution R twenty-four thirty-nine by Councilmember Green by request, authorizing and approving the issuance, sale, and delivery from time to time by the New Orleans Aviation Board in its own pursuit to the provisions of Louisiana Revised Statute thirty-nine, thirty-nine, one zero three four, in combination with other constitutional and statutory authorities supplemental thereto, including without limitation, Chapter Thirteen of Title Thirty-nine, Louise- Louisiana Revised Statute Thirty-nine, one four two one through one four three zero inclusive, Chapter Fourteen A of Title Thirty-nine, Louisiana Revised Statute Thirty-nine, one four 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 through one four five six inclusive, and Louisiana Revised Statute Thirty-nine, five twenty-eight of the Louisiana Revised Statutes of nineteen fifty, as amended of one, not to exceed one hundred forty million dollars of New Orleans Aviation Board revenue bonds in one or more series, in one or more series, and two, not to exceed one hundred twenty-five million dollars, New Orleans Aviation Board drawdown bond anticipation note in one or more series for the purpose described in authorizing resolution as Exhibit Eight, all of which shall be secured by payable from the income, revenues, and receipt derived or to be derived from the properties or facilities administered, maintained, or operated by the board at the airport as permitted in the authorizing resolution. The council does hereby authorize the mayor and the Director of Finance to countersign the Series Twenty Twenty-four bands and the bonds when issued. The execution by the mayor or, in her absence, the appropriate officer of the city, and the estatization of the mayor's signature by the Director of Finance shall constitute due evidence of the approval of such document by the officer executing same by and on behalf of the city.
Could you read that again? I missed something. Right. Because I tell you, that- that wasn't my summary, because that's, my summary would have been much shorter. Uh, Mr. Burnside.
Uh, Michael Rick Burnside, twenty-two fifteen. I'm operating off from memory, and if somebody wants to correct me, I'd be honored to- to be told that I'm wrong and that you're right, and that that's good. Because in my memory, the- the airport has about a hundred and forty million dollar budget, and about seventy million of that goes directly towards debt service. So in my memory, fifty percent of the budget for our airport goes to debt service, which of course is partly paying off the principal, because we build a nice new terminal there, but it's also partly going to interest. And as we move forward, and we talk about growth, we talk about the bio district, we talk about the river district, we talk about construction jobs, and we talk about tax abatements, and we talk about permanent jobs, and we talk about tax abatements. What we never really talk about is the interest or the insurance. So school buses, pre-COVID, were running fifty K a year to run, and pre-COVID, fifty percent of that money was for insurance. It wasn't for the bus company owner, and it was not for the bus company driver. It was for insurance. So a lot of money leaves us. We are an extraction economy. We are extracted all the time, and part of the way money leaves us is insurance, but part of it is interest. And it would be important to distinguish how much we're paying in interest, so that discussions involving economic development don't hide how much of that development's not actually helping us, but is rather helping people that are very far away from us. Because if I read correctly, the river district respectus that was withdrawn, there were going to be bonds issued for eleven and twelve percent, and, uh, somebody somewhere is making some money.
Remember, we built a billion-dollar airport. All right. This is a, we're seeking approval for issuance at any time, not necessarily immediately, of these bond funds. The reason that the council gets involved is because we have certain oversights that are particular to the council. This is one. It's gonna be used, it's gonna be paid for rev- by revenues generated by the airport, and it's for capital improvement projects that are needed, and we may know about a couple of those, but we'll be finding out more during the year, during the Transportation Committee. But again, it's for the ability to issue over time, and it is paid out of revenues of the airport. There's no burden on the city. So I move for approval, seconded by Councilman Thomas. Members, please vote your machines. We have five yeas, no nays. Thank you very much for your support.
We're now on top of page eighty-three. We have motion M twenty-four forty by Councilmember Morell adding Councilmember Moreno submitting the parade positions and start times for the Twenty Twenty-four Carnival Parade season in accordance with City Code Section Thirty-four dash six.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This is Mardi Cross schedule for parades. I move adoption, seconded by Councilmember Jeruso.
I think we should all be added, because we don't wanna be on a different parade schedule.
All in favor, aye. Five yeas, no nays.
We are now on top of page eighty-five. We have motion M twenty-four forty-eight by Councilmember Jeruso by request. Motion stating that the terms of donation be modified as follows. The funds from the long-term lease of the Sophie L. Gumbo home at fifty-six-hundred Loyola Avenue, built with the funds donated by the heirs of Sophie L. Gumbo, shall be used for the care or support of persons with developmental- used for the care or support of persons with developmental, mental, or other physical disabilities, and directing the City Attorney's Office to file such legal proceedings as necessary to reform the donation pursuant to Louisiana Revised Statute Nine Twenty Three Thirty-One to Nine Twenty Three Thirty-Seven in accordance with the terms of this motion.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Any comments from the dais? Seeing none, I've moved. Councilmember Green is seconded. Five yays, no nays. Thank you.
We're now on Page eighty-
Madam Clerk, I just want to say very quickly, I want to thank Liz Brusseau for all of her help in shepherding this, too, please. Thank you.
Page eighty-seven. Motion M-2463 by Councilmember Jerusso, a motion stating that the University Area All Street Parking Interim Zoning District, Article Nineteen Point Four Point Eight Point Fifteen of the Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance as adopted by Ordinance Number Twenty-Nine Thousand Four Fifty-Four MCS on May sixteen, twenty twenty-three, is hereby rescinded.
We're rescinding the IZD because we passed the revised overlay. So I've moved for approval. Seconded by Councilmember Moreno. Five yays, no nays.
At the bottom of the page, motion M-2464 has been deferred to February twenty-second. On top of Page eighty-eight, motion M-2465 has been deferred to twenty, February twenty-second. Councilmembers, we need to suspend the rules to go to ordinances on first reading. Oh, wait.
No move.
Wait, wait. Oh, I'm sorry. We got the consent agenda.
Oh, we didn't meet the consent-
Oh, we forgot the consent. Yes, we need to do the consent agenda still.
Right. Look, I go under the theory, somebody watching this. I want to go in there.
We have consent agenda. With communication from Aaron Spears, Chief of Staff and Counsel, Council Utilities Regulatory Office, this should be marked received. We have a communication from Tabitha Dornar, Executive Assistant President and CEO of Audubon Nature Institute, this should be marked received. On Page six, we have a communication from Brian Whitehead, Executive Director, Municipal Yard Harbor Management Corporation, this should be marked received. We have a communication from Tima Johnson, Executive Assistant, New Orleans Redevelopment Authority, this should be marked received. We have a communication from Cynthia Davis, Department of Safety and Permits, City of New Orleans, this should be marked received, suggested hearing date, February twenty-second. On top of Page seven, we have a communication from Erica Gates, Gates Preservation, four-eleven Andrew Higgins Drive, this should be marked received, suggested hearing date, February twenty-second. We have a communication from Amy B. Trupanier, Director of Personnel, City of New Orleans, Department of Civil Service, Amendment to the Classified Pay Plan Airport, this should be marked received, referred to the Budget Committee. We have a communication from Amy B. Trupanier, Director of Personnel, City of New Orleans, Department of Civil Service, Classified Pay Plan, Executive Retention Pay. On top of Page- We're on top of Page ten. We have a communication from Amy B. Trupanier, Director of Personnel, City of New Orleans, Department of Civil Service, Amendment to the Classified Pay Plan Fire. We have, this should be marked received and referred to the Budget Committee. We have a communication from Amy B. Trupanier, Director of Personnel, City of New Orleans, Department of Civil Service, Amendments to the Classified Pay Plan Safety and Permits, this should be marked received and referred to the Budget Committee. On top of Page eleven, we have a communication from Amy B. Trupanier, Director of Personnel, City of New Orleans, Department of Civil Service, Amendment to the Classified Pay Plan CURE, this should be marked received and referred to the Budget Committee. We have a communication from Jenny Alber, Senior Advisor for Policy and Strategic Initiatives, Office of Business and External Services, this should be marked received. We're on Page twelve. We have a communication from Scott Spivey, Program Manager, Hammerman and Gainer LLC, this should be marked received. We have a communication from Dr. Jennifer Avagni, M.D., Director of Health Department, City of New Orleans, this should be marked received and referred to Quality of Life Committee. We have a communication from Sane Villa Vassal, Director of Mayor's Office of Workforce Development, City of New Orleans, this should be marked received and referred to Community Development Committee. On Page thirteen, we have a communication from Kong V. Vu, New Orleans Police Department, City of New Orleans, this should be marked received and referred to the Criminal Justice Committee. We have a report of Jonathan Harris, Chief of Staff, to the Chief Administrative Officer, City of New Orleans, this should be marked received. We have the report of Carmen Robertson, Acting Deputy Director, Finance and Administration, Lewis Armstrong, New Orleans International Airport, this should be marked received. On top of Page fourteen, we have a communication from Anita Curran, Council Research Officer, New Orleans City Council, this should be marked received. We have a report of the Deputy Director of the New Orleans Historic District Landmark Commission, Central Business District Historic District Landmark Commission, this should be marked received. We have the report of the Deputy Director of the New Orleans Historic District Landmark Commission, Central Business District Historic District Landmark Commission, this should be marked received. We're on top of Page fifteen, the report of the historic, the Director of the New Orleans Historic District Landmark Commission, Central Business District Historic District Landmarks Commission, this should be marked received. We have ordinance calendar number thirty-four thousand five nineteen by Councilmember Harris, adding Councilmember Moreno, zoning docket seventy-two twenty-three. On top of Page sixteen, we have ordinance calendar number thirty-four thousand five twenty-one by Councilmember Jerusso, zoning docket seventy-four twenty-three. Ordinance calendar number thirty-four thousand five twenty-two by Councilmember Thomas, zoning docket seventy-five twenty-three. On top of Page seventeen, ordinance calendar number thirty-four thousand five twenty-three by Councilmember Green, zoning docket seventy-six twenty-three. Ordinance calendar number thirty-four thousand five twenty-four by Councilmember Thomas, zoning docket seventy-eight twenty-three. On Page eighteen, ordinance calendar number thirty-four thousand five twenty-five by Councilmember King, zoning docket eighty twenty-three. On Page nineteen, ordinance calendar number thirty-four thousand five twenty-six by Councilmember Harris, adding Councilmember Moreno, zoning docket eighty-four twenty-three. Those are all the matters on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I've got three cards from MEB. We know who that is. Michael Eric Burnside. You're on Items five fifteen and, it looks like, eighteen and nineteen on the consent agenda.
Michael Eric Burnside can't write worth a crap. So he's on twenty-nine, twenty-three, and one, and on twenty-nine, I just want to say what I've said before. Residentials are precious to me, and having them converted to commercial so that a parking lot can be built is something I'm not in favor of on twenty-nine. Having learned from Councilman Green to say positive things, I want to thank Xavier University and Number Twenty-Three for building a new dorm. I think that it helps for students to be part of a community, and community involves physical proximity, and I think dormitories are really good places for university students to experience their first separation from their parents and live amongst each other and have a good time. So I'm glad that Xavier is building a dorm, and I want to thank them. And finally, in Number One, we bring again to your attention the utility poll that we have been bringing to your attention now for some time. I will point out that come September twenty twenty-four, Mr. Burnside will be in a bucket truck fully expecting to get arrested as he tries to, like, change a traffic light. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Burnside. The consent agenda has been moved by Councilmember Green, seconded by Councilmember Thomas. Five yays, no nays. Now, Mr. Green.
Well, no, just a pointed person of-
Sure.
Pointed person of privilege, and I think all of us would want to participate. Earlier, I did a moment of silence for Dan Packer, Gina Brown, and Shalonda Bush. Some folk may not know Ms. Bush, but she comes from one of the great entrepreneur families in the Lower Ninth Ward. They own many of the stores and gas stations and property in that area. We're all familiar with Gina Brown in terms of our culture, our music, and Dan Packer. When you talk about his contributions to this community, the first African-American executive energy spoke for itself. So I just, you know, didn't know if each of my colleagues would at least like to take a moment to recognize those three, and especially the two we know. Councilmember Moreno.
Thank you so much for recognizing these amazing individuals that put in so many contributions to the city of New Orleans. You know, looking back at some of the times when I knew or even worked with some of them, particularly, you know, Dan Packer after Hurricane Katrina and the impact that he had after the storm. So thank you for that recognition, and you already did a moment of silence for him, but thank you for bringing them up and recognizing them.
We need to suspend the rules, please.
So move.
Seconded.
Five yays, no nays. The rules are suspended.
Ordinance on first readings. Ordinance calendar number thirty-four thousand five forty-one by Councilmember Thomas by request, and ordinance to authorize the mayor of the City of New Orleans to enter into an existing multi-year cooperative endeavor agreement with Gulf Coast Gunbusters to dispose of confiscated seized weapons from the New Orleans Police Department, Central Evidence and Property Section for an additional one-year term as more fully set forth in the form attached here, too, as Exhibit One, as may part hereof and otherwise provided with respects thereto. Ordinance calendar number thirty-four thousand five forty-two by Councilmember Green, and ordinance to temporarily waive certain fees, permit fees, and requirements within and around Hall and Polk located at twenty-five hundred New Orleans Street, New Orleans, Louisiana, seven zero one one nine, in conjunction with the Zulu Social Aid and Pleasure Club on February third, twenty twenty-four, from twelve PM to six PM to specify the durations and bond results, say waiver, and to provide otherwise respects thereto. Ordinance calendar number thirty-four thousand five forty-three by Councilmember Harris, and ordinance to establish a conditional use to permit a hotel over ten thousand square feet in the floor area in HUMU Historic Urban Neighborhood and Mixed Use District on Square five eighty-four, lot twenty-four A in the Sixth Municipal District, bounded by Farad Street, Napoleon Avenue, Jenna Street, LaSalle Street, municipal address twenty-four twenty-eight Napoleon Avenue, twenty-four nineteen through twenty-four thirty-seven Jenna Street and forty-four hundred Farad Street, and otherwise provided respects thereto, zoning docket eighty-five twenty-three. Ordinance calendar number thirty-four thousand five forty-four by Councilmember Harris, and ordinance to amend, ordinance number nineteen four forty-seven MCS, zoning docket zero seventy ninety-nine, to now grant a conditional use to permit a bar in the CBD two Historic Commercial and Mixed Use District on Square two twenty-six, port lot twenty-five and twenty-six, or port lot thirty-five in the First Municipal District, bounded by Carondelet Street, Canal Street, Common Street, and Barone Street, municipal address one thirty-five to one thirty-nine Carondelet Street, and otherwise provided respects thereto, zoning docket eighty-eight twenty-three. Ordinance calendar number thirty-four thousand five forty-five by Councilmember King, and ordinance to establish a conditional use to permit a bar in the HMC two Historic Marina Treme Bywater Commercial District located on Square five oh five through five oh six, lots two three nine and three, or lots A, B two, B one, and three, in the Third Municipal District, bounded by St. Bernard Avenue, Urquhart Street, North Villarisk Street, and Ness Street, municipal address thirteen fifty-nine through thirteen seventy-three, St. Bernard Avenue, and otherwise provided respects thereto, zoning docket ninety-three twenty-three. Ordinance calendar number thirty-four thousand five forty-six by Councilmembers Moreno and Morell, and ordinance to amend and re-adjade Section Two dash sixty-one of the Code of the City of New Orleans to clarify the timing of receipts of documents transmitted to the council and otherwise provided respects thereto. Ordinance calendar number thirty-four thousand five forty-seven by Councilmembers Jerusso and Moreno, and ordinance to amend, ordinance number twenty-nine seven thirty-five MCS as amended in title, and ordinance providing an operating budget of revenues for the City of New Orleans for the year twenty twenty-four to appropriate undersigned funds, balance to the mayor's office of workforce development for the youth force NOLA summer intern program, and otherwise provided respects thereto. Ordinance calendar number thirty-four thousand five forty-eight by Councilmembers Jerusso and Moreno, and ordinance to amend, ordinance number twenty-nine seven thirty-six MCS as amended in title, and ordinance providing an operating budget of expenditures for the year, for the City of New Orleans for the year twenty twenty-four to appropriate funds to the mayor's office of workforce development to provide for use of fund balance to support youth, youth force NOLA in their summer internship program and otherwise provided respects thereto. Ordinance calendar number thirty-four thousand five forty-nine by Councilmember Thomas by request, and ordinance to authorize the mayor of the City of New Orleans to enter into a second amendment to an existing cooperative endeavor agreement between the City of New Orleans and the Children's Bureau of New Orleans relative to providing mental health services to the Juvenile Justice Center through the City Office of Youth and Families, Youth and Families, by extending the currency eight by five additional months and adding up one hundred thousand to the maximum amount of compensation, thereby increasing the maximum of compensation from one hundred seventy-one thousand seven hundred twenty-eight dollars to the new maximum, not to exceed two hundred seventy-one thousand seven hundred twenty-eight dollars, as more fully detailed in the Second Amendment to the Cooperative Endeavor Agreement attached here, too, as Exhibit A and otherwise provided respects thereto. Ordinance calendar number thirty-four thousand five hundred and fifty by Councilmember King by request, and ordinance to authorize the mayor of the City of New Orleans to enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement between the City of New Orleans and the Audubon Commission for the continued design and construction of the Governor Nichols Esplanade Wharf, including the redevelopment of wharfs into park and recreational facilities, creating a continuous riverfront park extending from Crescent Park to the Spanish Plaza, in which will include landscaping lawns, play areas, shade pavilons, indoor and outdoor cultural pavilons, and flexible gathering spaces, in where the specifics of those improvements are more fully set forth in the Cooperative Endeavor Agreement form attached here, too, as Exhibit Eight, and may part hereof and otherwise to respect thereto. Ordinance calendar number thirty-four thousand five forty-one by Councilmembers Moreno, Morell, Jerusso, Harris-
Fifty-one.
Fifty-one, I'm sorry. Councilmembers Moreno, Morell, Jerusso, Harris, Green, King, and Thomas by request, and ordinance to authorize the mayor of the City of New Orleans to enter into Amendment Number One to a previously executed cooperative endeavor agreement between the City of New Orleans and the University Medical Center Management Cooperation relative to the funding of trauma, of the Trauma Recovery Center to provide treatment, case management, comprehensive resources, and support for victims of trauma and their family, to modify the provisions thereof and extend the term thereof for an additional three years, as more fully set forth in Amendment Number One, form attached here, too, as Exhibit One, and may part hereof and otherwise to provide respects thereto. Ordinance calendar number thirty-four thousand five fifty-two by Councilmember Thomas by request, and ordinance to authorize the mayor of the City of New Orleans to enter into Amendment Number Two to a previously executed cooperative endeavor agreement between the City of New Orleans and healing mind NOLA relative to the public purpose of supporting the New Orleans Assisted Outpatient Treatment Program, ability to coordinate physicians to conduct mental, mental health evaluations for prospective AOT participants in compliance with the Louisiana Revised Statutes Twenty-Eight dash sixty-six, and to compensate physicians for the same operating, by operating the AOT programs through the Orleans Civil District Court and working to connect people in need of mental health treatment and appropriate resources through case management and court supervision, to modify the provisions thereof and extend the term thereof one additional year, as more fully set forth in Amendment Number Two, form attached here, too, as Exhibit A and may part hereof and otherwise provided respects thereto. Ordinance calendar number thirty-four thousand five fifty-three by Councilmembers King, Moreno, Morell, and Thomas, and ordinance to prohibit the establishment and operation of a convenience center as defined in a comprehensive zoning ordinance on any, on any property owned or controlled by the city on the west bank of Orleans Parish to prohibit the city from entering into any lease cooperative endeavor agreements, professional and non-professional service agreement, or other contract providing for the operation and development of any convenience center on behalf of the city on any profit, privately or publicly owned property on the west bank of Orleans Parish, and otherwise provided respects thereto. That concludes ordinance on first reading.
Those are all the ordinances on first reading.
Five yays, no nays, Madam Clerk. Thank you all.
Have a good one.
Happy Mardi Gras.